All right. Good morning. We're going to call this meeting to order. This is the, well, actually, it's already been called to order. We're just going to come back from recess, as that's what we did yesterday. And so as we come back from a recess, we will conduct the Pledge of Allegiance. I don't know if anyone has a moment of silence, if anyone would like to. We'll just conduct the Pledge of Allegiance this time and go from there. And, well, I asked Stephen yesterday, so Susan, can you lead us in the pledge?
I'd like allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next, we'll get back to our timed items, and we'll continue on with the public hearing. And with that, I will give Stephen the floor.
All right. Good morning, Board. First up today is the Auditor's Office, Budget Unit 1121, found on page-
Do you want me to go there, or stay here, or where would you like me to go?
I think you're fine there, if you'd like. Yeah.
Okay. And if you'd like to, both of you, please?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It's found on page D16, with appropriations of $1,819,886. And I will turn it over to Kathy Sederland, our Auditor Controller.
Okay. As you know, I'm Kathy Sederland, your Auditor Controller, and I have with me Genevieve Harrington, Assistant Auditor Controller, soon to be the Auditor Controller, and Alicia Phillips, Disaster Finance Response and Recovery. I can't remember what her title is now. She's the Program Manager there. It's changed a couple times, so, and she's here to answer any questions when we get to the Disaster Finance Budget Unit. Okay, so for the Auditor Controller County Clerk's Budget, the Department Overview you have before you lists some of the functions and services and statutory responsibilities of the Auditor Controller and the County Clerk. And as you know, the Auditor Controller is designated by government code as your Chief Financial Officer, and the County Clerk duties performed within the department are in accordance with directives from the Secretary of State. So the functions of the Auditor Controller include financial reporting, general ledger accounting, budgeting, property tax administration, allocation and allocation, administration, processing of payroll and accounts payable, the 87 Cost Plan, the annual audits, SB 90 claiming, court settlement, distribution, and Superior Court collections and probation. The Auditor Controller provides services to 21 independent and special districts, fire, water, and cemetery, the Lake County Office of Education, First Five Commission, and local transit agencies. The services provided to those customers include accounting support, budget, and general ledger transaction processing. Functions of the County Clerk include marriage licensing, fictitious business name statement filing, notarious fish and wildlife administrative fees, Form 700 processing, conflict of interest code, maintenance and administration, as well as a variety of additional county clerk filings and duties, as required by your Board and the State of California. This department is a general fund service department, and is funded by a combination of user fees and services to others. The build and unbuild adjusted net county cost contribution is 13% for the 2223 appropriations. This budget unit has 13 allocated positions, all of which are currently filled, with the exception of one full-time position that is currently filled part-time at the request of the team member, and one position that is currently vacant due to a leave of absence. The team in the Auditor Controller County Clerk are an incredible group of individuals that work hard to serve our customers and public with efficiency and professionalism. The quality and amount of work that they accomplish is incredible, and I can't express enough how fortunate the county is to have a team like them in the Auditor Controller County Clerk's office. On the AC side of the House, the Auditor Controller side of the House, we continue to receive awards for our financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association and the State Controller's Office. We continue to provide workshops, training, and support to departments and our external customers, all while paying vendors and employees timely. On the County Clerk's side of the House, we continue to process Form 700 and charter conflict of interest updates timely. We process marriage licenses and fictitious business name statements on demand, perform marriage ceremonies here in your Board chambers, in addition to staying current with all other statutory clerk functions. And we are currently gearing up for our Clerk Docs upgrade. Our accomplishments are listed in our packets, and they include our Phase 2 of the County Finance System Modernization, our Contract Management Automation Project, which is still continuing. It's a heavy lift, and we're going to get there. As mentioned, we did a newly revised County Finance System User Workshop with over 100 County Finance System users in attendance. We implemented the Class and Comp Phase 2 within a condensed timeframe. We implemented GAZV 84 and GAZV 87. And you probably don't want to hear exactly what those are, but they were pretty, a heavy lift as well. On the County Clerk's side, we secured the Clerk Doc system upgrade with ARPA funding, and we're moving forward with that project. Our goals, one of the things I wanted to add on the accomplishments was, we also expanded our office and settled into our new footprint in the courthouse. Thanks to the Space Committee, your Board, Buildings and Grounds, and ROV, it provided us some elbow room. And I have to say, the boost it gave to the team in the Auditor Controller's Office County Clerk was tremendous. So it was great to have that extra room. So our goals for fiscal year 2223 are to implement a new process for our check printing. Our current software is becoming outdated, and so we have to do that by the end of this calendar year. We will continue to provide process support for credit card implementation. And I know this was mentioned yesterday, so I was just going to add a little thing to that. The implementation of credit cards is a county-wide effort. The treasurer, tax collector, or the treasurer for the banking side, it's a heavy lift in that department. But it also impacts every single department, and every department has to participate in the implementation. The subsystems that we have throughout the county make it challenging at best, and it'll just take an effort from everybody. It's not just something that one department's going to be able to put in place. So I just wanted to make sure I reiterated that one more time. We are enhancing our staff training through our e-learning subscription, and of course, we're transitioning to the newly elected Auditor Controller in 2223. I can't tell you exactly when she's going to, you know, January 2nd at noon. At noon. That's what the code says, so we'll see how that works. On the Clerk's side, this is a year for a biennial conflict of interest, and that's in progress. And of course, as I mentioned, the Clerk Docs upgrade. For the numbers, the appropriations and revenues in this budget unit change very little from year to year, other than the normal increases and those that you see in salary and benefits that were approved by your Board. These increases then become billable to our customers through the Cost Plan, property tax administration, fees, and direct billing. So it's not a one-to-one increase to the county net cost. So just wanted to make sure to mention that, because we are able to bill out our services. In the Service and Supplies Account, we strive for cost containment in our contractual services, both ongoing and new. It can be a challenge, but we've done pretty good this year. There's very little difference between the budget that was submitted for recommended and this final recommended. There is an adjustment for the transfer in from cannabis that is no longer needed to finance this, and then the addition of Clerk Doc software that wasn't known at recommended when it was submitted. So that's the numbers. Oh, and so, I've said this before, I know I repeat myself, but I need to mention that, as a department that's entrusted with the county financial accountability while carrying out Board policies, state and federal law and regulations, and a whole slew of other authoritative directives, we have to thank each and every department, their department heads, their fiscal staff, all that we interact with, for their help in us doing what we do. Thanks to Administration, Susan, Stephen, and the entire Administration team for their guidance and support, and their unwavering approach to working collaboratively with the Auditor Controller County Clerk team. And of course, my sincere thanks to the Board members for your past, present, and future support of the Auditor Controller County Clerk's Office, and helping us carry out the duties to which we've been entrusted. Genevieve, do you want to say anything about Auditor Controller? She's ready to take over.
Particularly, no. No, is there any, did you have any question?
So there you go.
There's a lot going on there.
There is.
I can speak a little more to Clerk Docs. I mean, we're kind of excited about that, and that it will, it's going to build in some additional securities. But really, the most exciting thing is the FBN. So a lot of, a lot of outside entities want to know who's doing business in the county, and they have to call. So they're going to be able to look online for that information, so we're really excited about that rollout. And, yeah, I mean, do you have anything in particular that you want?
Yeah, Susan, I think Supervisor Swate has his pen up.
So, budget-wise, I agree. Not much of a change, just slowly increasing, just as it should. If you have employees who stay around, they're getting increases in their pay. We just had those increases recently. I appreciate the work that you and your team do. One of the things I want to highlight is the budget itself. I've been asking for specific things to show up on our budget details, and this year is the best I've ever seen. We have actuals, we have an estimate, we have what was recommended earlier in June, and then what is the final recommendation. And I think that really helps us to see reality versus just focusing with blinders on on a single year. And I think that helps the public better understand where we've been and where we're going to, and it helps us be able to also maybe, it's a short trend, we can get further trends if we really want to do more work, but it provides us a little bit more information as to, again, what's going on. Are we going down? Are we going up? Why is it going up? We can ask those questions. So I really appreciate that you put the effort into that. And I know that it was a team effort, but I think your department took the biggest portion of that, and I appreciate it. Since I've been asking for it, I needed to say that publicly. But other than that, I have no questions at all about the budget for this one. Everything looks good to me.
Awesome.
You have questions, comments?
We got one more, right?
Okay. So the next one is the Disaster Response and Recovery Budget Unit. And for this one, as described in the Department Overview that you all have, this budget unit was established in 2015 in response to the significant financial activities as a result of the Valley Fire. At that time, it was determined to be the best practice to remove the activities of disaster from the general fund and have a centralized location for the claiming and reimbursement that impacts many different funds and budgets in the county, public works, special districts, health and human services departments that have their own funds. This was a centralized location for that. As noted, the general fund provided $2.15 million in startup funding to bridge the gap between the costs and the claiming back in 2015. And as you'll see as we move through this, that's still retained in that fund for that purpose. This budget unit has been used for 13 declared disasters, as well as the County CARES Act funding, PG&E settlement dollars, PSPS, and the county ARPA funding that was transferred to the general fund to Budget Unit 1120 in 2122. The budget unit contains two allocated positions funded through the administrative and reimbursable costs received from state and federal revenues. And since May of this year, we have been fortunate to have both of these positions filled. One is at a part-time level that is backfilling in the Auditor Controller's Office. And we have two very talented individuals there, Alicia Phillips, who is here to answer any questions for you, and then Dakota Hockett, which is a new employee. I think she's been with us for a year now. The accomplishments and goals of this budget unit are and will continue to be the result of their hard work and dedication. And similarly, the past and future successes of this department are the result of your Board's continuing support of the framework we have established here in Lake County for disaster finance activities. And I will say that we have become a model for some of the smaller areas that subsequently suffered, I don't want to use it well, experienced disasters after us. Highlights of the funding sources outside of direct disaster reimbursement are the PG&E settlement dollars that were provided as a result of the sulfur fire. They were used to plan for the future, for audit exceptions, a $2 million reserve. I think that is conservative. I think it could be a lot more. As well as to support road improvement projects in the disaster area for the sulfur fire. 1.4 million went there. 424,000 of that road allocation was spent in fiscal year 2122, as it was explained yesterday. And the remaining 976,000 is contained in this 2223 budget. So we'll have a couple changes for that. CARES Act funding for direct relief related to pandemic response and recovery of 6.5 million was received in fiscal year 2021, and it provided 1.3 million in small business assistance, 3 million in public health expenses, 1.3 million in public health and public safety employee response costs, and the remaining was used for COVID testing, tracing, personnel diverted to substantially different use, distance learning, telework capacity, food and housing support, increases in unemployment and workers' compensation, and less than 1% in administrative costs for actually coordinating, tracking, and distributing that funding. So I think that the county should be really proud of that. That's pretty low in administrative costs. To break that down to the significant county fund or budget unit impact, 2.7 million was general fund direct reimbursable costs. So 2.7 million of that went back to your general fund. And I'm sure Stephen's going to talk about that a little bit later. 1.49 million went to your Health and Human Services Departments for reimbursable costs. So help them out as well. So the next area was the PSPS funding of 550,179 that was distributed to the budget, through this budget unit. And some of that went to Budget Unit 1671 Buildings and Grounds and 1785 Public Safety Facilities for generators at various locations. And I think ROV was the most recent one, but I'm not sure on that. As mentioned, the county initial 50% of ARPA funding of 6.2 million that was received in fiscal year 2021 was moved from this budget unit to the County General Fund. And this occurred based on the recommendation of the ARPA Committee, of which two of your Board participate. The accomplishments and goals of this budget unit are as submitted. What I can say is they are in progress and on target, and we've seen a lot of, I've seen a lot of improvement and a lot of movement forward in disaster finance and recovery with the two staff members that are in there. So it's really good to see. So the adjustments that are needed to this are that we need to reduce the revenue account 8123 by 423,72927, and increase reserves by that same amount. This would increase the overall reserves in the budget unit to 10,259,407. And I know that sounds like a very large amount. Those categories that, within that 10 million, are the general reserve, a general reserve of 2.15 million, which is that general fund seed money. Leave it in there. Keep it there. You know you're going to have disasters in the future. You're always cost reimbursement. You always have to have the cash coming out. Then designated for audit exceptions, there's 4 million, and that's that partial PG&E and other accumulated resources in that, within that budget unit. Designated for advances is 3,419,286, and that is the amount we owe back on the Mendocino Fire. The state gave us an advance. Normally, they take it from their payments. In this case, for whatever reason, they did not. We have to pay that back. But there's, we keep asking, when do you want this back? And now that this is publicized, they'll probably come to us. But they haven't asked us for it back, so we have to reserve that money. Designated for insurance overpayments, we do have some insurance, we received insurance payments after we had already received FEMA reimbursements, so we have to pay back. You can't duplicate your benefits. And that's 690,121. So these reserves will provide for the future absolutely known 5.5 million in obligations, an estimated 4.6 in obligations. And again, it will also provide the resources, the cash resources that would be needed for cost reimbursement, grant activity if and when the next disaster occurs. Again, thank you for your continued support of this budget. And Alicia is here to answer any disaster-specific. She did give me a wonderful spreadsheet. But if you have any questions of me or of Alicia for the disaster-specific, happy to answer them.
Supervisor Swate?
Just a quick question. Are we supposed to amend it with the changes that were offered?
The 8123, yes.
For the 400 and something?
423,927, which matches the Budget Unit 311 adjustment we made.
And approve the increase to reserves.
Correct.
Okay. No questions? It takes a really long time to go through this process. It's unfortunate, but I guess also it's good to make sure that it's being done correctly.
All right. So I don't have any other questions from the Board? Anyone from the public?
Or actually, sorry.
I thought I had it in the right spot.
I have my glasses on, too.
On the disaster, so I just had a question. We talked about the next disaster. I know that currently we have the tree-
Mortality.
-mortality. The problem, so my question on the 2.1, I know there are going to be some upfront funds that may be needed to get that program, which will be reimbursed. I wanted to just ask the question on that 2.1 million that's in there. And when we say our next disaster, I think our next disaster is here. We're kind of working on that with the tree mortality. And potential on reimbursement, there is an opportunity for that, but there may be some pre-fund. I'm just, I'm going to ask that question, and maybe I'm-
I think that we, when the-
Just say whatever you want to say.
I was present at a couple of the initial meetings, and I did ask the question on whether or not this tree mortality, although it is a disaster, obviously, but it is kind of a different funding source. It's not exactly like what we've been running through, the Disaster Response and Recovery Budget Unit. And I asked the question on whether or not the expectation would be to run that through this budget unit. And I thought at that time it was determined it would not. But certainly, it will be up to Administration and your Board on how you want that administered. It's going to be a heavy lift. And you are absolutely correct. You're going to have a lot of upfront costs. You also have your cost share that if it doesn't come to be, right? You're trying really hard to get that, but there's no guarantees on that. So I'm not sure what the direction is. I haven't been involved. And again, the capacity in disaster response and recovery, that unit could potentially absorb that. But I'd hate to throw it out there, because I'm not going to be the one that brings it forward into the finish line for you.
Okay.
Steven?
I will say that this is a very different funding source than anything that has flowed through the disaster finance. This is more like a grant we're receiving, kind of like a CDBG grant. So I personally would think it would be in one of our other budget units and loaned funding, just like a CDBG grant, because it is completely, it's not FEMA-related, those kind of claiming mechanisms. So it's not exactly disaster from our budget unit perspective, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to ask the question. This is the day to ask that.
No, it's a good question. It's a good question.
And I also think, you know, we have to be prepared for another disaster, too. So I would hate to deplete that and then be in a situation where we need it for something else.
Yeah, the question was ultimately, working hard. I know we're working hard. We did the letter the other day, asking for the 25 reimbursement, looking to get those funds back. We know, right, it's through the CalUAS, the DAA funding, the 75% is there. So, okay. I wanted to ask my question. You know, we brought it up. That one wasn't in my mind until we had the conversation today. So that, I do have a couple other just comments, obviously. Congratulations. Welcome. And I want to thank you. I know that the Space and Comp Committee worked on some office space up there for the Disaster Council, and that's currently where you guys are housed, which is excellent. I think, obviously, anytime we can find space to have our employees do work, just as you said earlier, really, you know, brings that feeling of home when you come into work. So I think that's great. Obviously, I want to just highlight that I think this is your last budget hearing, correct?
Yes, sir.
So I just want to say thank you. I want to say, you know, an honor it's been for me to serve as a supervisor, and have you as the Auditor Controller, to stand here and to see those awards that we received in here, with all of the hard work you guys do for the audits. Can't say it enough. So I need to highlight that today for myself as a supervisor. So thank you very much. And you've got some big shoes to fill. And I know you'll work hard to do that, so.
My best.
Supervisor Swate?
That's it. That's what I have today.
And on the comment from Supervisor Simon, I think that we are always going to have to figure out what we're supposed to do to front some money. And I think that while we don't want to touch sensitive areas of our budget, I think that we've seen it before. We just had the conversation with Water Resources, where they use their reserves to front money to be able to purchase a property that we knew was going to get reimbursed from the state. It took some time. We did get that reimbursement. And I know that we have more than enough reserves, including what we're just putting in right now, that would be sufficient to at least be able to cover that, if there's the knowledge that it will be reimbursed. I would be comfortable with that, because right now, we still have a good amount in there, and we're already adding 3 million more. So I think that would at least be one pathway to make sure that we have that capability to be able to make sure we move forward, rather than not move forward.
I do want to say one thing. The 3 million comment, that's with the general reserves. That's not the one we would do it in, but we would do it at a potentially the infrastructure reserve, which we just put 6 million in.
Yeah, and just reserves in general.
Sorry. The general reserves aren't-
We have different pockets, and I agree with Supervisor Paeska, that there is a imminent potential for other disasters to happen. And we want to make sure that we're able to deal with that, rather than, oops, we kind of loaned ourselves some money for something else. So.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, one last comment. I know when we were talking about our reserves in different areas, we were talking about getting it to a certain point. And I think, Kathy, when you started, you said there's 2.1 in there now. Do you, is there a recommended level on that reserve for the disaster? You know, I know you said there was 2.1 in there with the reserves now. Is there like a, just, I know there's no standard, because everybody's different in every county. But as we talked earlier on our reserves for the county, we were talking to have three months' worth of, or, yeah, three months' worth of reserves, trying to get up to like 18, 19 million. So just a question on that disaster reserve.
There's no specific recommendation, and because you can't base it, I mean, what you're talking there is your known expenditures, right? So it just depends on how many disasters you anticipate having, and what the cost of those are. And they vary, you know, our experience has shown us they vary so drastically, and the funding sources that come that way. So it's an unknown, but we know for sure that, you know, over the last seven years, you know, the total of our disasters, I think it was at 21 million, is the cost of all of those disasters combined. Different reimbursements, and I don't know if Alicia wants to share that with you, but I believe that overall, for all disasters, build and claim to date is 21 million.
Okay.
But that's seven years, so, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
And we're still, you know, we're still working disasters back to 2015. Funding sources come slow. So I can't tell you on the reserve. It's just my, you know, my feeling is that that seed money that went in there from general fund, you know, just as long as you leave it in there, you're going to be, you're going to be pretty good. And then the audit exception reserve that we've asked for is because we don't know, you know, they can come back. And if we procured something, one thing incorrectly, they're going to claw back those monies. And we have two really big projects that caused me some sleepless nights, and within that 21 million, and it's about 10 million. So.
Okay. I appreciate-
I know that didn't really give you an answer, but-
That's all right. But, you know, you at least, you know, said what needed to be said. We do need, we talked about reserves in all areas, and that's something we really need to do, because, as you know, Mother Nature is making her changes right now. You know, we're in the drought. That's constantly what we're talking about, tree mortality. But- But boy, if it's a sign of any of, maybe the winter we're going to get this year with some of the rain we just had, we're back at that 2017 flood numbers and being prepared for those. So, all right. Thank you very much, Kathy. Appreciate it. And thank you.
All right. With that, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public, see if there's any comments from the public. Not seeing any hands, I'll bring it back to the board. And thank you very much for the presentation. And we'll look for action right here.
No, I heard a.
Oh, okay.
It was the opposite. All right. Mr. Chair, I move to approve Budget Unit 1121 and Budget Unit 1920 with the amendments as suggested by Mr. Carter and our Auditor Controller.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed and motion carries. And thank you very much. Welcome aboard. Look forward to next year. And thank you, Kathy, for all your hard work for the past years.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah. I know you'll still be with us in this room, but I just wanted to say that, so. So next, Alwell? I'll just give it back to Stephen.
Next up is Treasurer Tax Collector, Budget Unit 1120, found on page D19. And I will turn it over to Department Head Barbara Ringen.
Morning. So to start with just a brief department overview, the Treasurer Tax Collector operates three divisions, Treasury, Tax, and our Court County Debt Collection. Our Treasury functions include banking and cash flow management, pool treasury investments, depository services, warrant maintenance, unclaimed estates, and deferred compensation administration. The Tax Collector functions include billing, collection of property taxes, transient occupancy tax, our cannabis cultivation tax, preparation of tax claims, and coordination of our tax defaulted land sale. The Collection Division collects court fines and fees and other countywide debt. Our operations are funded through service fees, reimbursements, and general funding. The majority of our revenue is generated from delinquent property tax fees and penalties, accounting and treasury administrative fees, and cost reimbursement for delinquent court fines. Our accomplishments for the 2122 fiscal year, we successfully collected in excess of one hundred million in property taxes and assessments for the county, pool districts, and independent special districts. We also collected in excess of six point five million in cannabis cultivation property business tax. In May, we conducted a tax defaulted land sale. Listed were over nine hundred properties. Of those properties, one hundred and forty-seven properties were redeemed prior to the auction start, in which we collected approximately, looks like one point four million prior to the auction even starting. During the auction, we sold two hundred and four parcels with collecting property taxes at approximately one point three million. Unfortunately, there were about five hundred and fifty parcels that we did not receive a bid on. And thirty-two had to be withdrawn for various reasons prior to the start of the auction. Another happy note that we're very happy about is at this time today, we have successfully filled all our positions in our tax division. So I can't remember when that occurred in years past. This is the first it's been for many years, many years. Unfortunately, we still do have two vacancies, one in our Treasury and one in our Collection Division. And at this time, I would definitely like to thank the Auditor's Office for their great assistance in our Treasury Division for that shortage of staff. It was greatly appreciated they helped us catch up due to that unfilled position. So really appreciate that from the Auditor's Office. Our goals for 2223, we want to continue to efficiently collect taxes relating to cannabis cultivation and business tax. We are also planning to have another tax defaulted land sale, including approximately one thousand parcels. We will also continue to train staff throughout our three divisions in order to provide accurate and timely customer service. Also, we have already been working with the newly elected Treasurer Tax Collector, Patrick Sullivan, but we also want to continue that in order to ensure smooth transaction, transition. And lastly, I would like to thank our staff. We would not be able to get the work done that we do do without their hard work and dedication, not only to the department but to the county as a whole, the public service. Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier?
Not a budget question. Everything looks pretty simple and clean on this. Again, the normal progression of increases that we should be expecting. I do want to mention the two point five million that was moved over from Teeter to General Fund because Teeter, from what I understand, was speaking with Ms. Sederland, is it's full. It's reached its maximum capacity. And that hasn't happened in a while. And I just want to thank the Treasurer Department because that is due to the tax auctions. I know I've been pushing and we've been pushing from this board as well to make those things happen. And that really helps us out in being able to accomplish some of our goals that require that level of funding. Granted, maybe this is not the expectation that it should continue as such. Eventually, there's not going to be that many properties to auction off. And I'm glad to see people are redeeming their properties prior to it going to auction. But the fact is, it's cleaning up the tax roll and it's benefiting us in a financial way. So I got to give kudos when kudos is deserved. So thank you so much for that because that's helpful all the way around.
Thank you.
And I'll expound on that. I do appreciate the tax auctions. I know since we've been on, we've been really focused on that. They've been conducted. I know you're looking to do another thousand. That's going to be a big plus as well. We do understand in some instances, some of these aren't going to get sold, just like these others that are remaining. But at least we're doing something. We can track forward what we need to do with those properties when, once we see the challenges in getting those auctioned off as well. So again, thank you on that. So I don't know if there's any other comments.
And just to add, there's next steps after this initial tax auction offering where now we have more avenues and pathways to be able to deal with the tax defaulted properties. A lot of times you have to go through the standardized minimum bid that the state tells us we have to. If they don't sell, then it opens up different opportunities. And I'm looking forward to venturing into those opportunities.
You know, there is something that I just wanted to be able to say. And I think that Stephen, you might be able to help me with this, and I'm pretty sure Kathy will as well. There's a situation when there was an auction that took place this last year. And the HOA was concerned that they didn't get a portion of the tax. And I know we've talked to, I talked to Patrick about it. He kind of explained it to me. But I don't know if they're tuned in. So I want it to be kind of stated so they hear that, why that doesn't take place when an auction is sold, the property is sold, and then that funding that's collected from the county isn't shared with the HOA. Because what I've been told is this is Teeter Fund that covers that or something like that? Or am I, am I wrong? Yeah.
I'm not sure exactly.
So what happened was there was an HOA, in their, in their HOA area, they, there was a tax auction. Property was sold. I'll just say a number, like seventy-five hundred it was sold for. They were expecting a portion of that seventy-five hundred, for whatever reason, for their fees or to collect or something like that. And what I was told is that they wouldn't collect that because we, as a county, pay that through a different fund.
Well, we run the one percent through Teeter, yes. But that's, that's just like, that's the one percent. It's not any ad, additional costs on there, like direct charges. But I'm not sure what HOA it would be because those, I'm not aware those are running through the tax.
Right. It's the Double Eagle Ranch, Double Eagle HOA.
Yeah, unless they had a lien against a property or something like that.
That's what it was. It was a lien, I'm sorry. Yeah. And they were, they were concerned that they didn't receive funding for that lien. But then there was an explanation that I'm trying to call, you know, to explain, but go ahead.
If I may offer some help, I don't know if it was lower than the minimum bid. Because the minimum bid for the first time on auction is everything that's on our tax report, whether it's assessments and liens and whatever penalties and fees have all added up to, that's the first time it goes to tax auction, everything has to be collected and that's your minimum bid. If we reduce the minimum bid, there's certain priorities of who gets paid first. And I don't know where the HOA belongs if they did submit a lien, but that could be the reason that they were not given the money because they were not on the highest level of priorities to go first.
Yeah, and yeah, you kind of hit it. And I don't know if Barbara knows some additional information or Liz does, if they've gotten questions about this particular one. But anything like that, we're certainly happy to look through. And if we have specifics, you know, what's the specific parcel and whatnot, we can, we can check that out. So did you guys have anything to add to that?
Can I just add one thing? So you're correct, Kathy. As far as HOAs, they are not allowed to add to the tax rule. Where this agency could possibly claim some of their money would be through excess proceeds if there is any. So if it's this current cell that we just had, the one sixty, they would be getting an excess proceeds form if there was excess proceeds. But they'd have to, you know, we have that one-year waiting period for appeals. But that's where they would be able to get some, if any, of their lien amount.
That was what Patrick told me. So thank you for that. And I just wanted it said so that that way the explanation was, because I explained it wasn't as, yeah, so thanks. All right. Any other questions?
I do have a quick question. In my review, I don't know if I was looking at, because I was looking at multiple tax budgets, tax budgets, sorry, we're talking about taxes. I was looking at multiple budgets from different years, just to kind of look at trends and stuff. But I noticed that there was a Fund 443 Budget Unit 1122. What is that budget? Yeah, Fund 443 Budget Unit 1122 is also titled Treasurer Tax Collector. And there was only a twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one expense, I believe? Revenue.
Fund 443 is delinquent collections.
Okay.
Administered by the tax collector.
And so we just don't predict any revenue or any expenses coming out of that? So that's why it doesn't show up as a budget sheet or a budget detail?
Barbara, do you want to address that?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. I just saw it and I thought I'd ask just because it showed up in some things and didn't show up in others. And since there was some numbers that did come up, I was just curious. Thank you.
So I'll open it up to the public and see if there's any questions on this, this budget item. Not seeing any hands up, so I'll bring it back to the board for action. Oh, Supervisor Simon?
I'll be ready to make the motion, but I also want to say, recognize Barbara. Thank you for your service to the county. I know this is going to be your last budget hearing too. So I want to say thank you very much and appreciate your service.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
How many is that?
I know. I don't like these budgets. All right. Mr. Chair, I move to approve Tax Collector Budget Unit 1122.
All right. Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and motion carries. Thank you very much, Barbara, and thank you very much, Elizabeth. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Stephen, I'll give the floor to you.
I'm looking online to see if Public Health is on there. I do see Jonathan coming up. So next up is Public Health with the first Budget Unit, Geomedical Services, Budget Unit 2304, found on page D133 with appropriations request of three million seventy-three thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And I'll turn it over to Department Head, Mr. Portney. We cannot hear you.
Yeah, I can't hear you, Jonathan. You're on mute. There we go.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, Board. Thank you, Stephen, for the introduction and direction on page numbers. This is a hefty document. So I am here today with Casey, who oversees all thing admin for our department and does a phenomenal job. We are grateful to have her. Regarding BU 2304, Geomedical Services. Wellpath was our, and if I, if I go off the chart with too much information, not enough information, this is my first time presenting something of this nature, so please bear with me. As you may know, Wellpath was our original geomedical service provider for our jail here in Lake County. They have been with the county for some time. Recently, the county had to go out to rebid for geomedical services, which is standard. I believe it's every three to five years. So that process has taken place. As a result of our RFP process, we have been fortunate enough to receive a proposal, which was from Wellpath. So they want to continue business with Lake County. The relationship is great, and we hope to continue that upon final approval. Looking at the budget item for Geomedical Services, we are in a phase of transition and growth here in Lake County for service provision. And with that growth and expanded need for service provision to provide patient care, as the contract overseer, Health Services Department, there was a need to meet the fiscal obligation of Wellpath, taking into consideration inflation and increased costs and service providers needed within the county jail. So as you can see here, on Budget Item 2304, there is the overall budget. Now, this is an increase from our last contract agreement in 2020, 2021. And the net cost was one point eight million with the final recommended approval from the board for 2022, 2023 being two point four million. If we look at the RFP contract budgets submission that was provided to us from Geomedical for consideration, the one-year cost rounded to three point nine million. However, the three point nine million, from my understanding, took into consideration additional costs, which were staff option costs for additional services, which were recommended per assessment from our public health officer conduct, conducted three, two months ago. Does additional staff option costs? Yes.
We haven't finalized the RFP process, so.
Great.
Let's not talk about that before it's approved by the board and we've gone with a vendor.
Thank you.
Can you talk more general?
Sure. So with this budget amendment item, we will be able to hopefully negotiate for continued service into the 2022, 2023 fiscal year. I do want to give appreciation to the administrative staff at the county for placing the health of our patient population in the county jail in importance by allocating the Health Services Department funding to do so. So thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Is this where we're increasing and adding?
JP or Mr. Portney is not necessarily aware of it. But yes, this is, I'm going to request for Budget Unit 2304, Account 2380. It is currently budgeted at just over three million. Because of our RFP experience, I'm requesting to use one point five million of the additional carryover that we have, our FBA, to increase that 2380 by one point five million. So what the CIO said is the standard jail medical was about, was a certain. So what the CIO said is, the standard jail medical was about, was a certain piece of it, and the rest was Cal AIM, which is an additional unfunded mandate, which we need all the 1.5 to pay for.
And at this moment, this is just budgeting, nothing's been approved, and so there could be
Which is why I'm very generic right now.
Okay. And again, it's going to come for, or it's going to be 1.5 million added from the FBA to 2304, Section 2380.
Correct. And there's no other side because it is already FBA brought forward, so it doesn't have to transfer from somewhere else. It is a general fund budget unit.
And so that will bring the 3,070,187 to 4.570,181.
Correct.
Just one comment. General comment on that, you know, with the new Cal AIM, all these unfunded mandates that are coming down right now, just to make sure that, you know, all these budget adjustments, these things that we're doing here as a small county that we're tracking. So when Supervisor Sabatier and, you know, was going to CSAC and, you know, these are all things that we can bring up, you know, on behalf of the county and say, listen, you know, we think there's your, you know, I think the programs may be taking positive steps forward, but we need that information to go back and say, look, you can't just say do it and not fund, especially the rural counties
Right.
as we're moving through this. So just making sure over the next couple of years with the new care court, everything like that, that every budget adjustment that we're bringing from the general fund, that we're tracking those. And so we have those to back us up when we're talking to our representatives and as we're moving forward at the state level. So that's my request going forward, because there's going to be a lot of those over the next couple of years, it looks like.
Yes.
I know you guys are probably already thinking that, but it really, it'd be great for all of us to have that when we're having general conversations.
It would, because that's the common frustration in RCRC with most of the rural counties is that
The rural counties.
Yeah, it's, it's adding not only burdensome mandates, but also unfunded mandates that we're mixing in with all the other projects with, you know, staff issues and whatnot. So Supervisor Sabatier.
So I just kind of want to repeat what I said, which is the 2.5 million is not going to be a continuous 2.5 million. This is two, two years worth of tax auctions that have been kind of bundled together where the excess proceeds from those taxes above and beyond the, maybe not the excess proceeds, but above and beyond the teeter is coming back into our general fund. Eventually, either you run out of properties, or, I mean, it's just not possible that this continues in perpetuity, that we see that large of an amount. Granted, there could be increases in sales tax and property taxes and other things that create the revenue. But the increases in jail medical will also continue to increase as well. I, I'm, what I'm hoping, and I know it's not necessarily budget related, but when we bring the RFP, if we can also bring a general discussion on the future of jail medical and what we need to do and what we need to request from our representatives, I think that would create a larger discussion on how we can at least advocate for what our needs are here as we see this number just climbing and climbing. But unfortunately, it's a mandate.
And as I continue to lean into fully overseeing the jail medical contract, like you indicated, I plan on exhausting all efforts and resources to look at collaborative grants between behavioral health, social services, if they so choose, another county partner, just to try to reduce the overall burden on the taxpayer or any other entity to cover costs. I do see from my just very layman, basic research on opportunities that there are some out there. But now that, you know, I'm overseeing this, I need to really establish a collaborative approach to execute the grants. I know we can get it done, and I look forward to the challenge.
All right. No other questions? We can, if you want, would like to move on to the next item, or?
Just move to your next budget unit, JP.
Give me one second of this.
Oh, okay.
It's D 199.
Yeah, 199.
All right. Environmental health. So environmental health has a rollover of 2,629. What specifically are you looking for as far as a overview of the environmental health budget?
I would suggest any changes to your revenues or appropriations or anything special within those?
Great. There are no changes or appropriations to the environmental health budget at this time. We're continuing to move forward as appropriate, trying to internally update our policies and procedures around accruals for potential fines from unpaid dues from specific stakeholders. So working and trying to look at finance to try to accrue some of those dated fines.
Everything looks good to me on that one. It's actually very cost effective between their revenues and their appropriations. Still doing good.
All right. If there's any other, not any other questions, we'll go ahead and move on to the next, next item. I think it's the next, it's right on the next page.
These ones jump all around.
It's a lot of accomplishments.
I'll go ahead and intro it then. Next up is Public Health Budget Unit 4011, bound on page D 203, with requested appropriations of 8,104,175. Director?
Thank you. And a lot has been accomplished. So if we're looking at this, give me a second. I'm trying to scroll through. So I would like to talk about our rollovers at the bottom of the page on, I'd like to start with our rollovers on the bottom of the page of D 208. And I have Casey here with me because if you look at net costs, there's quite a dramatic difference. And I, and I would like to introduce you to Casey to provide context for the 2020, 2021 to 22, 23 difference. So Casey.
Hello, Board. So our carryover for this year is actually dramatically different. It's a lot higher than it has been in prior years. And I would attribute that to coming out of the COVID funding. We still have quite a bit of COVID funding remaining and will have it for another few years. But our staff has been pulled into specifically COVID and has been pulled away from the other programs that our department offers. So we are going back into the programs that are necessary for the survival of our department. And so that has left us with some carryover. So that is from our realignment fund. And that is, we are starting to recover that fund. Unfortunately, a lot was just coming from our realignment in prior years due to not drawing down the funds in our specific programs and just saying COVID will pay for everything. So we are mending that and looking forward to pulling out of COVID as much as possible because it is, unfortunately, it is a short term, just for another few years that we will have that.
And something I would like to express to the Board with that is, you know, the administration for the United States indicated that, you know, potentially COVID is deemed over. So what does that mean for the future for our department, understanding that COVID funding may transition into community resilience and recovery funding? And how do we tap into that so that we can ensure that once and if COVID fun, funding were to be reduced, we are still able to maintain the appropriate staff infrastructure to get a transition, continue to provide services. I will be providing at this afternoon, the most recent CHNA report, which will be our guide for our future Lake County Resiliency Health Plan and initiatives. And I see us moving forward in a positive direction with resiliency. And I hope to continue to grow the program with our, with our team here.
Supervisor Sabatier.
So I'm going to tread into maybe some awkward territory here. I'm looking at your vacancies. And when it comes to the general public health, you are looking at 46% vacancy, at least as of Monday, is, is what I have these numbers from. When I look at health administration, we're looking at approximately a 33% vacancy. Environmental health is doing great. There's only 8%. And so there's a huge vacancy going on in your department, which obviously creates its difficulties for you and your department to be able to provide the services and meet your mandates. But I also see that we increased health administration over the course of the year, maybe not now, by two positions and public health by six. I don't know if those are all grant funded or categorically restricted to specific things that need to be spent on, or if they're more of a general cost that could be placed elsewhere. Because when I see that we have jail medical and we just allowed 1.5 million to go from something that could be provided to our community to being stuck in our jail, which is a very limited population, but a necessary population to provide the service to, and I see such a huge vacancy and increase of positions, I'm just kind of questioning our process. And, and, and is, are we borrowing money from the right place to be able to provide? I know it's only one year. Jail medical is going to be forever. But I just, I struggle with borrowing money from something that we can provide to the general good of our community for jail medical, when it looks like there's something within the department that maybe we can look at restructuring. So if I can get some information on these new positions, just to remind me of what those positions are, and maybe what efforts are being made for filling up those vacancies, to get a better understanding on if that's something that's been a consistent issue, or something that's being remedied, or if we're trying something new.
Yeah, so the positions that are filled are grant funded positions. Yeah, so FOPH and COVID funding. When it comes to the vacancies, what we have been ambitious to do is reestablish a foundation. COVID-19 shook things up quite a bit, where a lot of our staff were rotated to different departments. They either left a department to take on a promotional role or different role than another department. So a lot of shifting happened during COVID. Now, when it comes to the vacancies, we are slowly and strategically hiring the appropriate staff to fill the necessary needs, not hiring to hire. So some positions that were once floated may not be a need now, understanding that we're coming out of COVID and God, God for willing, we never get into a position to where we have to fill that position again. But we're trying to expand in a different way, looking at epidemiologists, community, community health workers, and building our program out to be more in community for community. One thing I want to express as well for the jail medical contract, so if we can do this right, utilizing a common term of stream approach and implement the MAT programs, the harm reduction programs, the, the intake and discharge protocols, right? If we can strengthen, because that's where a lot of our patients go, community members go, that have a lot of morbidity and high contributors to morbidity and mortality rates. If we can develop strong systems there, as a trickle down effect, we're going to have a much easier, more efficient process to more communal care. So I think the investment in jail medical is essential, but strategically doing it is important. So as we expand our program internally, be more strategic for community, we also want to invest in other key areas where high morbidity and mortality rates are within our county, within jail.
Now, definitely, and even though they've done something to be in that facility, definitely a vulnerable population as far as health wise and financial status wise. I don't know. I guess I'm looking at the Board and kind of curious what your thoughts are. I'm, I don't know what the answer is. But when I see us increasing and having such a high vacancy rate and then borrowing money from a general fund for jail medical, I know it would be a one-year fix, I, I struggle with that concept at this moment.
And I understand where you're, you're going with this. I will say that jail medical, the reason why that budget unit is general fund is because it is our mandate. And public health with those vacancies, et cetera, that's actually special funding that can only be used for things like nurses and that type of activity. The only semi discretionary revenue that they have that could be used for, let's say, jail medical, would be their realignment funds. Their realignment funds, because of during the COVID environment, were depleted extremely low. So this one year, they usually provide about $454,000 towards our jail medical, we'll call it a bill, but services. This year, we requested to have no reimbursement because they have been hit so hard with their realignment, it couldn't afford it. There, that discretionary revenue should theoretically build back up this year to where they could provide some help to the general fund for jail medical next year. But that's the, the small source of revenue that can actually be utilized that way. So if you remove the vacancies, it would, it would not be able to be transferred to jail medical.
And that was part of my original question, is what are, what are the categorical restrictions on the budget to make or not make that possible? Okay.
So we are a self-funded department, and we have to draw down on grants. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your question. So
No worries. I said too many things.
unrestricted funds to be able to leverage and place anywhere. It's all drawdown per grant approval.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Would you like to move on to the next item?
All right, 412. I would like to bring Casey back, as she has well versaged on the health administrative side of things.
Hello. So I oversee the Health Services Administration. And we are currently, we have one position that we are hoping to fill next day or so. She's going through backgrounds. So hopefully she will be able to start there soon. The other position, we're not planning on filling, at least not this year. That position, the workload has been taken on by somebody who moved to the Public Health Division. And so there's no need to fill that position. Administration is funded by Public Health and by Environmental Health in the grants. Most of them, not all, but most, we are able to collect a 25% indirect cost. And so that comes directly to Health Services Admin. And then other than that, we do a split based on the number of employees that are allocated to each division. And so we take care of all the billing for both departments, as well as payroll, all the administrative duties and tracking of that.
All right. I don't see any questions on this one. I don't see any questions on this one. It looks like we're on forty sixteen?
Next up is Tobacco Education, Budget Unit forty sixteen, found on page D two eighteen.
Thank you. So with forty sixteen Tobacco Education, Tobacco Ceasation Programs, we receive funding to provide the scope of work through grant and partner.
Any questions on this?
No, that one's straightforward.
All right.
Next one is Veterans Services Office, Budget Unit fifty-three twenty-one, which is also a general fund department, found on page D two five zero. Request appropriations three hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-six.
All right. So again, fairly straightforward. I do want to give a significant amount of appreciation to Saul and his team for the amazing work that they do for our veterans. It has been indicated to me that since we have started our digital campaign for Veterans Aware Services, that they've seen a significant influx in veterans coming and seeking services and care. So we are excited to hear that. So the net costs as of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one was one sixty. Currently looking into twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, two oh eight, three five six. Nothing has changed as far as the budget allocations go. But what we do expect to see is an increase in service provision for veterans seeking services in Lake County.
All right, do, do you happen to have like a ratio number of, I know it says the enrollments of over fourteen hundred additional veterans plus the eighteen hundred new claims. And, and so I just wanted to break down or, you know, to give that insight as to how many that is per employee that you, that you have in the department. I don't know if that's readily available.
There's three employees in the department, but I don't know the breakdown off the top of my head. I know they, I spoke with a couple of the staff last week and I know that they were, they briefly referenced how many clients that they are processing and working with. But out of the three, I do not have a specific number, but I would love to get back to you with that.
I think we'll just meet on, yeah, I'll just come meet with you about some of that stuff rather than belabor it here, so, okay.
They're probably currently at the stand down right now?
Yeah, that's for sure. All right, any other questions?
No, this one's good.
All right, it looks like we've covered all of those. I don't know if there's any closing remarks on that, Jonathan? Have you had anything else?
Yeah, I just want to express appreciation for the flexibility and the willingness to provide the department and our staff what we need to be of service. It's truly an honor. One, two things that I'm really looking forward to coming up in the next few months is the hire of our Director of Nursing, Philip, which everything is processed. I want to thank the county administrative team for being so attentive and keeping the applicant warm, along with myself. He's coming from different states, we're waiting on California licensure only. I'm working with the California Department of Public Health and a couple other agencies to try to streamline this process so we can get them out here sooner rather than later. Usually this process takes six, seven months, but I'm hoping to cut that down into three to four weeks. So we're looking forward to welcoming Director of Nursing. And as you know, our interim contracted health professional, Dr. Carl Spore, is going to be meeting with him today, actually, but it was morning as of Wednesday. And I'm looking forward to working with them to, you know, better serve community and improve health outcomes in Lake County. I want to thank you for your time and I look forward to connecting with you soon.
Thank you on that. And so there's no other questions, all open up to the public for any questions on these budget items? Not seeing any on Zoom as well, so I'll bring it back to the board and I will. I know you were looking for our thoughts and comments earlier. I know Stephen answered, I just, I associated the forty-six percent to the COVID funds, what was mentioned, so I didn't really, when he answered it, I figured that answered the question.
It's locked in.
Yeah, so, and then underfunded, of course, so. But with that, I think we're looking for action.
Mr. Chair, move to approve Budget Units two, three, zero, four. With the changes to line twenty-three dash eighty, by adding one point five million dollars of, from the FBA, the Fund Balance Carryover, then approve Budget Unit forty-ten, forty-eleven, forty-twelve, forty-sixteen, and fifty-three twenty-one as they were presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed and motion carries. With that, we'll take a five-minute break and, a five-minute break and then we'll come back at, actually, we'll take a seven-minute break, ten twenty-five. How about that? Jonathan, thank you very much for your, for your presentation.
Thanks, Stacy, as well. Thank you, appreciate you.
They just roll their eyes.
All right, welcome back from the break. We will continue on with our next budget item and I'll give the floor to Stephen.
Next up is Special Districts, starting with Lighting Districts, Budget Unit eighty-two-ten through eighty-two-nineteen and eighty-four-sixty-one, starting on page D two ninety-four. And I'll turn it over to the department head, Mr. Harder.
Thank you, Lake County Special District Administrator Scott Harder. I have my Deputy Administrator Finance, Jesse Salmeron here with me. Want to start out by thanking admin, I think as many of the department heads have. The, the collaborative process in putting this budget together from the, the first draft budget through to this final budget that we're here to present to you today has been really good. It's, it's been really good back and forth working with admin in the auditor's office and really appreciate the feedback and being able to work collaboratively with them. So, so yeah, the first one we'll start with, well, brief overview of our department. We oversee the dependent special districts, so those special districts that you sit as the Board of Directors on. That consists of nine lighting districts. We have seven sewer collection areas and four wastewater treatment plants and five water systems that fall under our purview. We also have the roads, the bridges and the parks out in Spring Valley that are part of CSA two and, and under our direction as well. So we'll get started with the lighting districts. Lighting districts are fairly low-key and low maintenance. Most of them are PG&E standard lights. So we collect the revenue and we pay the PG&E bills. If there are maintenance issues that arise within those lighting districts, that's part of the fee or the rate that is set for each one of those lights. And so we relay that information onto PG&E and they perform the maintenance. There are a few exceptions to that. Clear Lake Oaks, Clear Lake Keys has the solar lights that are out there and that's in process of a consolidation annexation that we're working on to bring those into the district and expand that district. Those will be maintained by our staff. Upper Lake Lighting District has decorative lights that we maintain. Kelseyville does as well. So those are the three exceptions to the standard PG&E Cobra Head light. So lighting districts have remained relatively the same. I don't know if you have any particular questions of any of the individual lighting districts, but like I said, they're, they're pretty straightforward. We are working in Clear Lake Oaks and Clear Lake Keys to do that annexation consolidation. I'm working with the consulting surveyor right now to put together the, the new legal description of the boundaries of the lighting district for that LAFCO annexation process. And then in Upper Lake, we are working with a electrical contractor. We have finally got some of the hardware malfunctioning issues fixed and now we're looking at replacing some of the bolts out there, but.
With that, go ahead, Supress.
Just a quick question, and I don't, I don't think you spoke on this. What's being pulled out for the Lucerne street lighting for the eighty thousand?
I am not sure off the top of my head, let me get over to that one.
And you mentioned Cobra Head, but I think in certain downtown areas, do we own those decorative lights or are those just PG&E lights as well?
Which ones?
Like if you go down Lower Lake or Middletown or even the Clear Lake Oaks, like there's more decorative style of lights, not the Cobra Heads? Do we own those or are those PG&E? Because I know they did some upgrades for free with decorative lights at one point or?
Correct, if they're in our lighting districts, and some decorative lights aren't within our lighting districts. So, so maybe that's a, a different district, not under our purview. But yeah, for the decorative ones, I think in Middletown, those I think are under PG&E's maintenance. They chose a style that was acceptable to PG&E to continue the maintenance of. Are you looking at?
Yeah, and the Lucerne one, it's being pulled out of the reserves. I was just curious what, is it for maintenance work, is it for new lights?
Budget Unit eight-two-one-seven?
Eight-two-one-seven, yeah.
Oh, yeah, where? You want to?
With the tax revenue, last year we discovered that there was an overpayment in, in a few of the lighting districts. So this is actually a correction. So it does balance out with last year because of the surplus from there.
Okay.
Yeah, the reserve adjustment there, right?
But it's only for an adjustment for the Lucerne one? It's not being used for any of the others? Because these are like aid and prize funds, right? Like it has to stay within the district, yeah? Okay, I was just curious because it was the biggest number that kind of stood out.
If there's no other questions, I did want to mention, I didn't mention it, but it is listed on our goals. We have been approached by some in the community of Spring Valley about potentially forming a lighting district out there as well. In the formation of CSA two, lighting is one of those duties and services that we can provide. There's a few community members in support of it. There's quite a few that aren't, moved out to Spring Valley for the dark skies. So if the Spring Valley Advisory Committee comes back with a unified direction that that's what they want to pursue, then we'll take it further. But at this point, it doesn't look like there's enough community support for that.
Scott, thank you for explaining those three and thank you for asking about Lucerne. Supress.
Yeah, I think I bring it up every year, just keep it on the, on the map and looking at the, the lighting districts, I, I think, you know, all a positive thing, but looking to see if, you know, we could transition maybe all of them to a solar opportunity in, in the future. I think that it looks really nice up there on the new one there in the Oaks. So if we could transition these lighting districts to solar, I just definitely think that's something we should always be keeping an eye out for grants or opportunities to do that. Potentially even, if we can get PG&E to step up and help us out in that way, at least needs to be out there. But I just think it, it would be great to have one uniform opportunity. I know everybody wants a little different light, but that solar component shouldn't affect that, you know, at least the type of lighting they have. So I don't bring it up every year until we have solar-only lighting districts in Lake County. I think it's a great example and a way to, you know, set the tone for our community as they're doing things.
Yep.
I know there's a struggle back and forth with special districts and PG&E for a while with that Upper Lake situation as well, so.
Yeah, yeah, that one, yeah, they were charging us a rate structure that was for them to maintain it. So every time that someone would call, we'd pass it on to PG&E and, and they finally got fed up and, and went out there and said, well, there's a meter here. And they, they ran it to ground and determined that, no, indeed it was. When Public Works did the road improvement up there, there was a meter set with breakers for the lights and for the tree well electroculation and that sort of stuff. So, so back in all our court for maintenance and we're moving forward on it, so.
Actually, a quick question on that. I did meet with a company that is kind of highlighted by CSAC. I forget the name off the top of my head, but that do reviews and audits of PG&E bills. And you probably have one of the largest PG&E bills with all of your divisions overall. When's the last time that you did an audit to ensure that you are getting the appropriate rates so that we're not paying more than we should? Because what I was told, granted, it's what I was told as they were trying to sell me the product, is that sometimes we don't have the appropriate rate. Maybe it's residential, maybe it's not, it's commercial, not government or something along those lines where we're paying more than we should, but we think it's the rate that we should be paying as well. And so that's what they review. When's the last time that we looked at something like that?
It's kind of an ongoing thing. I think we're, you've been working with Joanne Correct on, on that even, you know, this last summer. So we keep an eye on that because, like you said, we've got, you know, and it's not one PG&E account. If it was one PG&E account, that'd be great, but numerous, numerous. I would, hundreds, easily hundreds of PG&E accounts. And, and dealing with PG&E, as you're probably well aware, is, is very confusing at times, so.
Yeah, and, and a little bit of a side note, with all the installation of the Tesla power walls or the Tesla batteries that you put in, are those only for emergency purposes? Or do you use those on a daily basis where you're seeing a decrease in your, your bills?
They are used on a daily basis. It is to help offset and, and do that peak shifting or peak shaving, so they charge up during off-peak hours and discharge out of the battery during peak hours. We haven't been running them long enough that we can, you know, notice a discernible savings from them, but that is, you know, something that we're looking for. We're hoping to see, at least it was sold to us, that we'd expect to see about fifteen percent savings on our energy bills, so.
Out of the big number that you spend on that, that's great.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any further questions on the lighting districts? All right, we can move on then to Budget Unit eight-three-five-one on page D three zero four. That is our Lands End Sewer Collection. And this district is a small satellite sewer collection system. It's down at South Main Street and then around the corner there. The sewer or the wastewater from this district or this area is collected, pardon me, and transmitted or transported to the city of Lakeport for treatment. You know, some of our goals are to continue to work through the annexation process. We have a, a sharing agreement with the city of Lakeport. It expires in twenty twenty-six. The agreement allows us to take this wastewater that's collected here, send it to them for treatment. And then we accept for treatment some of the wastewater that is collected from the north side of the city, from about Fourteenth to Sixteenth Street. It's kind of a little bit of jagged line there, north. They have the ability to send that to our Northwest Regional Treatment Plant. So one of our goals is, as the annexation process continues, is to negotiate a concurrent updated agreement, which recognizes the shift in areas. And ideally, we would like to have them take over all of the district. This district has a large overhead for a very small amount of revenue. And so shrinking that revenue even further is going to make serving this district even more challenging. So realistically, it would be nice if the city was able to take it all over and incorporate it within their CLMSD, so. Any questions on this one? No, all right, moving on. Budget Unit eight-three-five-two is Corinthian Bay. It's another small satellite sewer collection system or sewer collection area. This gets the little community of Corinthian Bay and then it also picks up the state park. So the sewer is collected from those, those areas and it is pumped via lift station to our Kelseyville Treatment Plant for treatment. Be straightforward. No questions, we'll move to the next one. Got to be quick and brief, we've got twenty-seven to go through, so. Middletown Sewer, this is Budget Unit eight-three-five-three. It's on page D three zero eight. This provides for the funding for the operation and maintenance of the wastewater collection system and treatment plant in Middletown. Middletown's got three sewage lift stations and the treatment plant down there. We have completed the rate study for the needed rate increase. County Council has signed off and approved on everything. We're at the state right now where we are ready to set a date. So we'll be working with the clerk and boards, the admin staff to set that public hearing for that Proposition two eighteen rate process and get that going forward. So we have our consultant that'll help come and present and we'll begin our public outreach process on that. But this rate increase, as we've mentioned previously, is much needed. It hasn't been, rates haven't been increased since the district was formed in the nineties. So something that is very much needed. And doing that will also allow us to move into the next phase. the next phase of construction for the treatment plant improvements. So we previously completed a study where we were able to get plans and specifications completed for improvements at the treatment plant. And we have construction funding, about $5 million worth, secured, but until we get that rate increase in place, we can't move to the next phase of construction. They won't authorize it. So those are kind of too contingent upon each other, and that will allow us to move forward with that treatment plant improvements.
And I take it that's why your reserves are low is because the rates have not been increased for so long? I mean, I see you're putting in into your reserves this year, which is great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And the new rate structure will also account for, you know, money going into capital reserves and money going into O&amp;N reserves. So it's a modern rate structure that accounts for those sort of things. Should be sustainable.
Just one comment. We've talked a lot about that since I've come on the board. I understand what's going on. Just, you know, I know, you know, we've had those conversations of we really need to make sure anything we're doing like that in the county through special districts that we have that rate set increase to be in there on a, you know, continual analyzed on a more frequent basis. Because, you know, you're talking large increases, and that makes it real challenging. It's easier to take small steps than great big ones right off the bat. And, you know, it would help you, it'd help the board, everybody looking from the county standpoint of, you know, those incremental steps that need to happen to keep our infrastructure moving forward in a smaller way. Because it's about a, it's going to be a pretty large increase from where it is right now.
It is percentage-wise. Dollar-wise, it's not all that significant, but percentage-wise, I think in some of the instances, we're talking 100%. You know, so a doubling of the rate. It's going from $17 to $34.
I like the talk. That's not my bill.
You're in southeast. You're in a different district. And Middletown is our only district where there wasn't an annual increase built into it. So the rest of our districts have that structure already in there, so we're not sliding behind on them. But Middletown was set up when it was set up. They did not account for that, so.
And that was far before me. So just being, you know, cautious of that as we move forward, so.
Whatever the increase is divided by 23 years.
Yeah.
Exactly. Very small. If there's no further questions on that one, we can go ahead and move to the next page, D310, Budget Unit 8354. That is our Southeast Regional System. So our Southeast Regional System has about 100 miles of sewer collection mains, 26 lift stations, serves the communities of Clear Lake and Lower Lake. You know, some accomplishments. I don't feel the need to rehash them. You guys have those in there. Some of our goals for the upcoming year, we've got a roof repair on one of our facilities that we need to get done. We are looking to purchase some pond dredging equipment. So the Blue Fraud technology that was kind of sold to us, I don't know, 10 years ago or so, is not performing as well as we would have hoped. We're still dealing with sludge issues. So treatment plant operators have reverted back to, you know, known technology that's working significantly. But the flip side of that is it creates sludge in the ponds. When those ponds were actually installed, they have suction drains on the bottom of them though. So we're going to, we're going to purchase a pump that'll allow us to pump the sludge out of the bottom of the ponds and pump it up to sludge drying beds, which already exist as well from the previous technology when we were using it that way. So that should keep our ongoing maintenance costs lower than bringing in an outside contractor to do sludge judging and removal on a regular basis. Typically, it was, you know, every year they'd do like half of the pond. So every couple of years, we'd do the whole plant, so. Continued INI reduction projects. So we have IRWM funding for ongoing INI efforts. Staff has been really aggressive and really, you know, proactive about doing inflow and infiltration reduction work. So we've got a piece of equipment now. It's acoustic. So they put a sending unit down in one manhole. They go down to the end of the line at the other manhole and put a receiving unit and it sends sound waves through there. And that will help them identify, you know, whether the line is, you know, clear, partially blocked, you know, really significantly blocked, or it didn't get the signal at all. They can do that really quickly. They can get, you know, hundreds of thousands of feet of that done in a year. And that allows them then to go back with the cleaning equipment and just focus on the areas that, you know, that showed up as needing cleaning. So it's allowing us really to streamline our INI and our cleaning process and be much more effective and efficient at that. We are doing upgrades on our SCADA system. Most of the SCADA that we have in our wastewater plants and our water treatment plants goes back to the mid 90s. So we're moving forward on newer technology, newer software. We're in the midst of negotiating with the firm that has the SCADA software. Wonder where it's been bought out by Aviva. So we have SCADA at most of our larger facilities, five of them. So our Northwest Treatment Plant, our Southeast Treatment Plant, our two surface water treatment plants, and our Spring Valley Water Treatment Plant. So that keeps things running smoothly. It records the data that's required by the state on a regular basis, helps with our reporting, allows staff to monitor the whole system from a central location and identify issues before they become problematic. So, yeah, so those are the major goals. Ongoing operation and maintenance, you know, budgets are about the same. You're going to see some increases due to the capital. You're going to see increases due to salaries. You know, I think all the departments that are in here before you during this process are, you know, relaying that information. We're seeing increase due to salaries as well. But nothing that is of concern. Revenues are still adequate and sufficient to keep moving forward, so.
I know that your staff put in a lot of work with all the roadwork that's been going on in the city of Clear Lake. So that southeast area, I know it was covered for quite a long time, which was something of concern to you, at least at the beginning, but I hope it worked out. I know that the end result worked out well.
Yes.
And I don't know of anything that went awry because of it being covered up or anything like that. So I appreciate the work and the collaboration there. I see that, so I know you and I sat down with a meeting with the city manager about some of all the projects that are going on. There's a lot of housing that's being built right now. I think about 200 units currently are in construction, and there's more coming. You have 6.4 million in the reserves. Is there a plan to upgrade any, use that money to upgrade anything for? I know the shopping center is also getting very close. I don't know how much details you've been provided for that. I know it's kind of still a hush-hush conversation there, but I just want to make sure that we're working in tandem to make sure that our system is prepared for whatever is coming. And since there's 6.4 million, there's definitely money there to be able to make those changes.
Yeah, we are. As you mentioned, lots of development in the city of Clear Lake, you know, within their own projects, on the road projects, but also, you know, private developers working on various stuff. So, yeah, we're working with them on that. They've continued to get better about the communication on those fronts, getting with us early when those projects are coming down the line so that we have the opportunity to work with them to identify needs. You know, anything over, I believe it's four residential units, is required to do a capacity analysis study. And so we've got a consultant who has run modeling on our system and has that available. So then the developer can coordinate and plug in their proposed project and see what those downstream impacts are. You know, some of it can be district's responsibility, but some of it is also developer's responsibility, and that's part of that capacity analysis. So if they're coming in with a proposed impact, mitigation measures should have them offsetting those impacts as well. So not all that reserve we would want to be spending on, you know, developer projects. That would be a private benefit for public funds. But we want to see that offset with the developers as well. But yeah, good communication. Pardon me. Next Budget Unit, 8355, Lake County Sanitation District, our Northwest Regional System. So our Northwest Regional System does collection and treatment for North Lakeport, the communities in North Lakeport, Upper Lake, Nice, Lucerne, Conotee, Paradise Valley. So all those communities, the wastewater is transported back to North Lakeport where the wastewater treatment plant is. It is then treated, disinfected, and then shipped east again to Clear Lake Oaks and then down to Clear Lake and then up the hill to the geysers. So again, staff in Northwest has also purchased the Sonic equipment, so we've got that running around there as well. They're increasing their line cleaning and manhole inspections. ARPA, we have secured ARPA funding. Thank you very much. Unless you're pulling it away. No.
Surprise.
Yeah. Wait, let me put my glasses on so I can read Susan's expression. No, for the septic hauler dump station. So we're working on one of those down in Clear Lake as well at our Southeast Regional one. But that's going to help us better control and better, better evaluate what septic haulers are bringing in. Currently, it's kind of on an honor system. They fill out a tag and they dump it on their dime, and then we bill them for that, and then they pay us. We periodically do audits with Environmental Health who oversees septic haulers to make sure that the amount that they're reporting to Environmental Health does line up with the tags that they've given us. And in the past, we found discrepancies on that, shorting us. So this septic hauler station at both locations will hopefully alleviate that. It pumps it through a flow meter. There's no, there's no cheating on the volumes involved. It's got sensors in there to shut it off if the pH is out of, out of the range that we want to receive. So if they bring in a really hot load that's been cooking for a long time and the pH is really bad, you know, that's damaging to the biological processes in our treatment plant. So we want to be able to stop that. So appreciate the funding available for that, and that's one of our goals in the coming year. We're doing SCADA upgrades in Northwest as well. We're modifying some telemetry at the lift stations so we can get more stable connection. We're looking at, right now it's AT&amp;T old lease lines, so we're looking at digital communications, modem communications, that sort of stuff. We're wrapping up the Tesla backup battery system at the treatment plant, and we are looking to do hazard mitigation, grant-funded stationary generators at five of our larger lift stations. So that grant process is still in the works. We haven't got the funding on that yet, but we are heading in that direction, so. No questions? No questions. We'll move to the next one. Anderson Springs Sewer District. This is one of our smaller districts. Now, as you're well aware, the board was very instrumental with my predecessor in securing $10 million, roughly, of federal funding to rebuild a sewer collection system down in the community of Anderson Springs after the valley fire. We're up to about 75, 80, somewhere in that neighborhood of connections that have come back online. And we continue to work with the community as they continue to rebuild. So there's capacity there. There's capacity at the Middletown Treatment Plant, which is where the collected wastewater goes for treatment. And it's pretty low-key. And, you know, as the community continues to rebuild, we continue to work with them for the installation of the grinder pumps and getting them set up, so.
Nice that that's paid off. Nice that that's paid off.
Yeah, yeah. Budget Unit 8460, page D318, Spring Valley Campground Fund. Not a whole lot happens here. We've got, as part of CSA2, in addition to the water system, like I mentioned earlier, we maintain the roads out there, the campground slash parks, and the bridges out there. So this one's, you know, pretty low-key. We've got volunteers out there in the community who oversee coordinating, opening and closing of the gates, taking campground fees. The revenue from this is a single-time billing, annually billing, once annual billing that goes out to all the property owners out there. And then they pay that once a year, and that provides them access for the park and the campground out there. We are looking for, part of the lakebed recovery project is going to have spoils disposal out in the campground area. That's kind of in the next budget unit. But, you know, it does coincide with this one. We're dealing with Army Corps engineers on that. We had a permit at one point in time that had lapsed and aged, and then we were assured that, no, yeah, it's just a matter of simply, you know, refreshing the permit. They've changed their position on that. Now they're requiring a bunch of other conditions. So we're working through that process on that project, but.
With the spoils, just when the EPA Superfund did their presentation Tuesday and then at the different Earth Town Hall, they discussed how the spoils could coincide hopefully with that. So just letting you know.
And I've been in discussions, Carter Jessup, I believe, EPA, about when this project materializes that, yeah, that if, you know, if there's a way to coordinate the trucking and an off-haul, we'd be, you know, open to discussions for that cap that they're looking at over the Sulfur Bank Mine, so. Pardon me. Budget Unit 8462, CSA2 Spring Valley, page D320. Accomplishments in the previous year?
Sorry.
What?
Express yourself freely.
Yeah, yeah. No, that was just, that was just in general. I'm only halfway through. That wasn't specifically related to this budget unit.
I feel like I need to get you some coffee.
No. So we're under contract for design on the lakebed recovery project. We were able to accomplish that in the previous fiscal year. We're working through that process. They have done aerial photography and groundproofed it as well. So they're working on the design of that. I did mention the issues we're having with the Army Corps engineer on this. My deputy, Scott Hornung, has been working very closely with them. They are wanting to revisit the environmental. They're wanting an update of the archaeological stuff. They're wanting us to do archaeological surveys under the lake of all places. Not quite sure how to get that performed, but we're working to try and figure out how we would comply with that, that request of theirs. We're still working with the state water board regarding a distribution pressure zone grant. That is getting really close to having a signed grant application or assigned funding agreement, is my understanding. So we've been working back and forth for a couple of years now on getting them information. We have secured approximately $800,000 for the installation of a well due to the emergency drought grant funding. That was actually, it's probably already done now. It was before the Planning Commission this morning. They were looking at the general plan conformity for the installation of the well out there. It's deemed categorically exempt due to the emergency nature of the project, but anytime you talk groundwater, especially in a drought, is a contentious topic. So interested to see how the Planning Commission meeting went. We have budgeted crack seal equipment so we can facilitate some in-house maintenance of the community roads. And we have our Quail Trail water lane replacement project. So you may recall a few years back, we did significant, I think about 9,000, 10,000 feet of water main replacement out there in the community. We weren't able to complete about 2,000. That was an additive alternate out on Quail Trail. There just wasn't enough funding in the IRWM grant for that first phase. We were able to go back and get a second round of funding. That project is under contract. There's some lead time for some of the materials. The contractor's waiting on those, but as soon as he gets those, we'll be under construction this fall, so. Any questions regarding Spring Valley? No.
They told me that they were happy, so.
They told you they were happy?
They did before this, so far.
Yeah, that can change, as you well know. Budget Unit 8466, CSA number six, Finley. This is pretty small. This is essentially just a, you know, a financial accounting. In the eyes of the state, the water system in Finley has already been consolidated with the Kelseyville water system. So it's managed and operated as one water system. But for accounting purposes, we are still set up as two. So nothing really significant going on in Finley. We do have some emergency repairs that we made. We had a leaking water main running underneath Adobe Creek. We were able to install a temporary bypass on the bridge on top. So we are working to complete permanent repairs. We'd like to hang the water main on the bridge itself that's out there. That has been a little bit challenging because no one has any plans for the bridge. So getting someone to design something for it to structurally hang off a bridge that no one has plans for, and I've checked with TPW and I've checked with the state who manages oversight of those bridges, no one has any plans for it. So we're working to...
About the Cobb Bridge, the Rainbow Bridge?
I don't know.
That has a pipeline underneath it?
Well, we could, we could determine what the forces are going to be. The difficulty is we don't know what the existing condition of the specific bridges out there on Adobe Creek, what the reinforcing may be, how when we drill in for the hangers, for the pipe hangers, whether or not we're going to be hitting rebar, we're going to be missing it. Is there enough compressive strength? Is it reinforced enough on that, you know, outer wing edge to be able to hang that pipe on there? So we're researching some options and looking to get a structural engineer to help us through that process who's willing to put a stamp on, yeah, you know, this is, this is going to suffice and hold up. and hold up.
Sounds like super glue might just be your best friend.
Yeah. But, other than that, nothing really going on in Finley, pretty small budget unit, so. CSA seven, Bonanza Springs, page D343, this has been consolidated into Cobb. Is this the one we still collect taxes on? Okay, so there's still taxes collected into this, so the fund is open, we still administer that, we work closely with Kathy on distributing to Cobb anything that comes in as appropriate, but there is no operations and maintenance associated with this budget unit. Page D345, Budget Unit 8473, CSA 13, Konotei. Konotei's, I like that water system. It's on wells, it's dependable, everyone out there is happy, not a lot of complaining. The system runs smoothly, it's pretty hands-off. We are monitoring out at tank site number one, we had a surface crack a few years ago appear in the asphalt, so we installed a monitoring well, pseometer, we've got a geologist that comes out and checks on it periodically. We're not seeing any subsidence, we were concerned that maybe that crack was a result of some subsidence. That doesn't appear to be the case, it appears to just be a surface shrinkage in the asphalt and a separation, but we keep an eye on that, so. We completed some SCADA upgrades via XIO is the software provider for that. That's been beneficial for staff, they can monitor that remotely, it's secure, read-only access, so that, you know, that gets intercepted or hacked in some way, shape, or form. There's no third-party actors which are going to be able to change the water quality or the treatment or anything like that, so. Questions on Konotei, no? Okay.
Is that the one that's on top of the hill with the amazing view?
Yes.
That's why you like Konotei.
Most of the water tanks have phenomenal views because they're up high.
Of course, but that one's pretty.
That one's gorgeous, yeah, whole view of the lake and the valley.
I have a question about that. Do you have any tree mortality around the water infrastructure? In any, it's just something to keep an eye on because.
Soda Bay, Soda Bay, Tank Number Four has some really nice views. We have just a little postage stamp lot and a drive access up to, it's really steep, it's four-wheel drive to get up there, but there are issues with brush around Tanks Three and Four. And actually, Chief Seanceo on the North Shore had asked me if we had any issues with needing brush removal or anything like that, debris removal, because they've got the fuels reduction crew, so.
Yeah, they can do the fuel reduction, but specifically, tree mortality is allowed in the disaster act funding that we're working for, working towards, so if that is something that is identified, we can fund it that way.
Okay, and I'm not sure how we would tie that nexus back to the water system, but
It's for.
Is it just on the property?
It's for water infrastructure and special districts. Actually, you could apply separately from the county because it's for special districts also, just something to be aware of.
Yeah, something to look into. I think Soda Bay is probably only, our only water system that would have that. And when we had the three mountain systems up in Cobb, you know, that would be, that would definitely be relevant, but most of our other sites, we keep them pretty well denuded. Everything's gravel and keep the weeds down and, you know, that's orders of the state. You can't have, you know, cattails growing on your pond and your levees and your, yeah, so everything else is pretty sterile, but up in Soda Bay, we have issues around some of our tanks. Nothing further on Konotei? Paradise Valley, page D349, Budget Unit 8476. Again, this is one that was consolidated with Clear Lake Oaks Water District, so we no longer manage that. I believe we just did the final disbursement of funds that were in this budget unit to Clear Lake Oaks, so it's here essentially as a placeholder, but yeah, no operations and maintenance associated with Paradise Valley.
No taxes collected like the previous one?
Correct, yeah. Bonanza's the only one where we have that unusual collection of taxes. Starview Water, page D351, another one that was consolidated with Cobb, no taxes or anything coming in on that, so kind of just a placeholder, there's no operations and maintenance associated with this fund. Page D353, Budget Unit 8480, CSA 20, Soda Bay Water. So, Soda Bay, we are still working with the HMGP program for the replacement of the two remaining redwood tanks, so our previous round of funding, due to increased costs of construction, things continue to rise and I know that Scott DeLeon mentioned that yesterday, you know, prices are just continuing to going up, you're seeing construction costs going up, you're seeing fuel costs going up, materials costs are going up. And so consequently, when we did the first round of redwood tank replacements, we were only able to replace two of the four redwood tanks out there in Soda Bay with the funding that was available. But we are in the process of securing grant funding through the same program for a second round of funding on the remaining two tanks and get those replaced. We perform annual maintenance inspection of all the fire hydrants out there, we keep reports, they have a very active community, they want to see those reports and so we, when we're done with those, we, you know, scan them and send them off to them and help provide them that sense of comfort, knowing that they're in a high-fire risk area, like many of our communities are, and that the fire agents are in well-working condition. We're working to secure funding for the water treatment plant upgrade project, that's been ongoing for six years now, and our goal is to get that done and get the removal of the connection moratorium. We did get them to budget a little bit, they provided us, I believe it was 56 additional connections, we have not exhausted all those, we've had some interest. When that was first opened up, people came in and paid their cap fees and what have you and got connected to the system, but there's still, I think, yeah, somewhere between 10 and 20 of those remaining, if I'm not mistaken, so. And then our most recent inspection by the state, Soda Bay Water Treatment Land doesn't have any actual SCADA that monitors remotely or records data on a regular basis. When it was established back in the early 90s, the recording is chart recorders, so for tank levels and turbidity levels and what have you, there's a chart that rotates and there's a pin on it that moves based on that particular value, so at the end of a day or at the end of a week, whatever the chart time is, depending on what you're recording, you take that off, you stick it in a file and if you have to go back to it, you've got, you know, you're reading off a paper circular chart on what those values were. So, part of the state's last inspection, they want us to upgrade and modernize, so we have funding in there to upgrade a SCADA system that will meet the state's requirements, is going to provide what they call a historian, so you have the SCADA that provides the operation of the treatment plant and oversees all the, you know, the turning on and the off of equipment based on values, and then you have the historian which records all the data that comes out of that. And so, that's what the state's looking for, is that more modern digital recording that we can then provide to them during our monthly reports, so. Questions?
Question, is the anticipation for the grant that you haven't been able to obtain, that you said you've been trying for years, is this why you have such a high?
Yes.
Potential for revenue, but when we look at your actuals, it's like a whole different ballgame, almost $5 million, $5 million lower.
Yeah, it's just shy of $5 million is what we're expecting for that grant and they've, we've been working with them on that for six years now. So, December 2016, our application was deemed complete and, yeah, I'll bite my tongue and move on. Budget Unit 8481, North Lakeport, page D355. Last year, we completed modifications to our intake structure, lowered it, allowed for more source water security. We were also successful in receiving a 1.5 million grant for drought-related improvements, pardon me, to consist of drilling a well and extending our intake further out in the lake to help with that source water security and redundancy. You know, if we get groundwater in addition to lake water, then we've got multiple sources, makes the provision of water out there a lot more stable. Annual maintenance and inspection of the fire hydrants, we have complete the, or we are aiming to complete the engineering and permitting for that intake extension and complete location and construction of our new well for source water, so.
And same thing with that one, there's anticipation of grant funding in the revenues?
Correct, yeah. And of our five water systems, this one has been the most challenging and the most impacted by the drought. Soda Bay, the lake is low, but the intake is 10 feet lower in Soda Bay, much deeper area. North Lakeport, you know, we have, we have about three, three and a half feet of water above the intake currently, so.
And especially now.
So, raw water quality, even though we've gotten some rain, is still pretty atrocious, so. Excuse me. Budget Unit 8482, Mount Hannah Water, another one that was consolidated with Cobb, so no ongoing operations and maintenance activities associated with that. On to page D359, Budget Unit 8593, Kelseyville Waterworks District Number Three. So, Kelseyville Waterworks District is a water and wastewater district. It's independent from Lakosan or Lake County Sanitation District and it's, you know, it's not as set up as a CSA community service area, it's set up as a waterworks district, so slightly different political format, slightly different little makeup, but overall, it's operations and maintenance of wastewater and water facilities out there in the community of Kelseyville, so. We have secured IRWM funding for inflow and infiltration reduction, slip lining repairs. Initially, they were just looking at doing that in Clear Lake as part of the INI reduction. We worked with the grant manager on that, the program coordinator, DWR, and they've agreed to expand that because we have a need in Kelseyville, so we're looking to do some INI slip lining in Kelseyville as well. We are under contract, I believe, for the construction of the Live Oak Water Drive Line Replacement, so we're, we've got some IRWM funding to do water line replacement out there on Live Oak Drive. Some of the system out there in Kelseyville dates to the early 60s. Live Oak Drive, we've got two parallel pipes that are fairly low-sized, I think it's two four-inch pipes, we're looking at putting in a more modern, you know, they're cast iron or drilled steel, actually, pipes that they were welded together, welded steel, so we're looking to put in an upsized, abandon the other stuff, upsized to an eight-inch C900 PVC, more modern water main and should help with flows out there in that area.
Are there hydrants out there?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And are those tested?
Yes.
Out there and the old pipe doesn't get?
Well, the old pipe does limit your flows. I mean, you've got parallel four-inch and there's connections, cross-connections here and there on it, but yeah.
But they don't break or anything under the testing?
No, no, they're actually pretty durable.
Okay.
So, yeah, yeah, it's old welded drill steel, so it's pretty durable.
Okay.
It just makes maintenance of it rather difficult, so. What else? Oh, design and complete construction of the water main repair project at the Adobe Creek Crossing, so that's kind of our other big goal, is to get the permanent repairs done for that creek crossing at Adobe Creek.
And that's the area that you're looking at for tertiary treatment to?
Yes, correct, so there is, there's funding in the budget for tertiary treatment. Tertiary treatment at the Northwest, Southeast, or Middletown. The Calpine, our partners up on the hill, NCPA and Calpine have exclusive rights to that effluent. We are under no mandate by the state to increase to tertiary. Our plant treats and discharges it within the confines of our permit and we're able to meet that. Calpine is interested in doing tertiary up on that effluent stream to provide them more flexibility on their operations up on the hill. Having us do it and them being the beneficiary of it doesn't make a lot of sense, but in Kelseyville, tertiary treatment would be very beneficial. We are, we have limited disposal capacity. We're not under any moratorium out there in Kelseyville currently, the growth rate is pretty small, but we know that if large growth was to happen out there or if we were to promote expansion out there in the community, the constraining factor would be the disposal of our treated effluent, so tertiary would open up disposal options for us out there as Kelseyville as well, so that would, you know, you know, provide options for us. Tertiary is also included in the full circle concept, which, you know, we have secured the funding from, well, we haven't secured the funding, we've secured the right to now apply for the funding when EPA finally gets their portal up through Congressman Thompson's community grant to, you know, refresh the preliminary design report that's associated with the full circle project. That project had tertiary in it as well, but analyzing tertiary outside of that for this wastewater system will provide some options for our effluent and options for potential growth out there in the community as well.
And I'll just say it, in the conversations we've had, I know that there is agreements with Calpine that will be reviewed and coming back to us sometime in 2025, and I think that looking at tertiary for the other plants, maybe it's not a benefit to them, but it can be a benefit to us, whether it's used for irrigation purposes, whether it's used to, in these drought situations, which will come back once we're done with this one and who knows if it'll be worse, but having those type of facilities will allow us much greater flexibility on how we deal with drought. So, I think conversations to be had in the future.
Agreed, yeah, and those, that agreement, as well as the agreement with Yolo County Flood Control District for the supplementary water that goes to the geysers through our wastewater system, those discussions are already underway. We're talking, we're not going to be waiting until 2025 to get that agreement back to you because all parties involved want, you know, before it gets too close to the expiration of that agreement, we want to work out the details and where we're going, so I would assume that, you know, we'll likely be taking the supervisors on tours of the current effluent system, you know, so starting up at Northwest, taking you guys on a tour to familiarize you with that, that system that's in place, that conveys that treated wastewater all the way from North Lakeport all the way around the lake up to the geysers, you know, just a primer for you as we start beginning those negotiations and bring that up. So, my intent was to connect with each of you over this winter and into the spring and give you a tour of that system and then we'll be coming to you with discussions and getting those negotiations going, so.
Just curious question on the Kelseyville Waterworks, when you said it's not a CSA, is there a difference or is there a positive, a pro or a con? Just a question.
There's not a difference in how we operate and maintain it. Legally, there's a difference, but it's transparent to us. Kathy, you want to speak to that? No?
All right, just add that question.
I can look into that, I'll reach out to John Benoit at LAFCO and find out what the distinctions are between them and what that means for us. But our operations of it from an O&amp;M standpoint, you know, it's transparent, it's just a different way to have the district formed. Last Budget Unit, 362, page D362, Budget Unit 8695, Special District Administration. So, this budget unit provides for the staffing of our administration as well as the field staff that covers the operation of the variety of water wastewater facilities that we maintain on an ongoing basis, so. We had 47 with this budget, we're requesting two additional utility worker positions for a staffed total of 49, one additional utility worker in our Northwest area and one of our Southeast area to help with ongoing operation and maintenance that is within each of those areas. Our mission includes provision of high-quality customer service, protection of the environment, support for local economic development within community infrastructure, maintain the safe collection, transfer, and treatment of wastewater, and promote awareness, protection, and conservation of our natural resources and environment. We oversee 20, well, 27 technically, 23 active budget units. We are on-call, we work 24/7, 365 days a year. Can't say it enough, I really appreciate the field staff that we have. They are, they are really great, they, you know, they are out there in the midst of the storms, they're first responders, just like anyone else. If infrastructure goes down, if there's storms, if there's floods, if there's fires, our staff is out there responding, ensuring that we're protecting the environment via, you know, preventing sewer spills or we're providing for those services even through the midst of whatever natural disaster we're encountering. We transferred our phones to County VoIP phones, so we're now on the VoIP phone system, which is great until our connection to the courthouse goes down, so one of our goals for this year, we've been working on it for a bit, but our fiber-optic cable was dug through, trench through two years ago, I think, maybe three years ago. through, trench through, two years ago, I think, maybe three years ago. But the comment period for the environmental review for that particular project actually completed yesterday, if I'm not mistaken, so we'll be working to get our contractor out in Museum Park here, and they'll be doing some directional drilling to connect from the pool boxes that are on this side of Museum Park over to some pool boxes that are on Main Street, and then we're going to utilize the, the pool boxes that are already there that the city of Lakeport is using for their streetlight system, they have a couple of extra conduits in there, we're going to pull our fiber optic cable through that, bring it into our building and get hooked back up, so currently we're on a short distance microwave from the roof over to our facilities, and, and that causes problems occasionally, especially with CAMs, it's a large, heavy database program, sometimes that's frustrating for our staff over there when the, when the connection glitches and then, ah, but, so, we're, we're looking forward to getting that done, and that should be starting soon. As I mentioned earlier, we've received confirmation of the congressional funding for the full circle project. When we have the green light from EPA, they have their portal up, we'll go ahead and go through the actual project application process, essentially rehashing and entering the data that we've already provided through our preliminary process into now the funding process. We continue to pursue various grants, I've got a full time grant manager who also looks for grants, very active, that's been extremely helpful, we're in a, you know, economically disadvantaged area, you know, our customers could not pay for all the needed infrastructure improvements on their dime if we were not able to secure the millions of dollars of grant funding that we get, so thankful for that person and that staff, and she's always on the lookout, and we're always looking for grant opportunities to keep, keep improvements to the districts that we serve. Yeah, guess that's it. Questions?
Questions?
I'm just looking at something real quick, I think I, yeah, basically, I was just looking at the large increase in your revenue appropriations, but I'm going to venture a guess that that's mainly salary increases, here's under collection, under, your revenues show it under accounting fees, SDA, but I'm taking it that's just pulling it from the enterprise funds?
Correct, so Special District Administration is, is pulling that from the various funds or districts that we serve, increases are due to salaries, yes, that's, that's a portion of it, courthouse overhead has gone up, and that's reflective because our, our administration goes up, and then the prorate share that we pay the courthouse for the courthouse overhead, IT, admin, all those other services, that has increased, so those combined has resulted in the increases that you're seeing now.
So I'll open it up for public input, if there's anyone that, did you have something? I'm sorry, I see.
I'm just going to talk about, just a little bit about all the service districts and stuff, so I know, we're always talking about solar, but in Lake County, we're looking at, you know, alternative energy opportunities, I know in the past, and I'll just keep bringing it up every year, that, I, I know Jan was looking into some early technology, we, we move a lot of water in Lake County, all around there, you know, if there's any opportunities to look, maybe through Train, or we're looking at these energy opportunities of having turbines inside the water lines as we're doing that, just continuing those conversations to look at it, I think there's, you know, opportunities that may be there, I'm, I'm not a professional, but seeing some of these things that maybe we just need to be looking, the flash program just makes me think that the water we're moving, we should take advantage of that if we could, so just to continue to bring it up every year, I don't have a specific project, but I want to just make sure I keep bringing it up.
Yeah, no, and that's a good point, we, we've been actually very involved with Matthew and Train on the flashes program, and also looking at opportunities in other areas, so the treated effluent pipeline, you know, we pump water from Southeast up the hill to the Harris Creek tank, and then it gravity feeds down to Middletown, so one of the things that we had looked at in conjunction with Train and Calpine was putting a turbine down there at the Middletown Treatment Plant, so, yeah, we're always looking for opportunities like that, we recognize that, you know, solar isn't the only energy form, what other ways can we generate, generate energy? We were in discussions early on with the Scotts Valley Tribe on the, the biochar projects they were doing, and they were, you know, initially had contacted us possibly to locate it at one of our treatment plants and partner with them there, they've since found a couple other locations, but, yeah, we're, we're open to collaborations and partnerships like that.
Thank you. All right, open it up to the public. Not seeing any hands up, so I'll bring it back to the board for, well, we got another question.
And just the last thing, I, I'm going to get with you, just to better understand, I see we have quite a large reserve for the Southeast, and in comparison to what's collected, it's, it seems to be close to either 100% or over, but then at the same time, you're saying there's 100 miles worth, and so obviously there's a catastrophic issue, a 6 million can go real fast, but I also know that we, you and your department seem to have great skill sets in obtaining grants for a lot of these things, now, of course, it takes time, but just to better understand what's being collected, what is the expectation of why it's collected, just so that I can also provide that information to people asking me, so I'm going to be contacting you just to get a better understanding of why we're collecting and how much we're collecting and what for.
Sure, yeah.
Other than that, Mr. Chair, I move to approve Budget Units 8210 through 8219, 8461, 8351 through 8356, 8460, 8462, 8466, 8467, 8473, 8476, 8478, 8480 through 8482, 8593, and 8695 as presented.
Second?
I have a motion to end in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Scott and Jesse.
Thanks, Scott and Jesse.
Oh, only an hour.
Does anybody need to break, are we good? Push through?
I'm, I'm good if you are.
Break?
I'm just going to, I'll be back in.
We'll take, we'll take a five minute break, we'll take a five minute break, that was, yeah.
Could use that. Once you're done talking.
Yeah, yeah.
His was, his was pretty long, so we'll take. All right, we're back, welcome back for the budget hearings, we are now going to move forward, I'll give the floor to Stephen.
All right, next up will be the assessor recorder with the assessor's budget, Unit 1123, found on page D 22, and they are requesting appropriations of $1,595,505, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Ford.
Perfect, I think I'll start with a quick overview of all my departments. Overview of the department is basically the assessor is responsible for the valuation of all properties within the county jurisdiction, that's basically our job, we closed the tax roll related to that, just as a little blip, we just closed historically probably the largest tax roll that Lake County has ever had, at least to the best of my knowledge, which was about $9 billion, a lot of that was catch up on operations, which was, that's, that funds most of what we're talking about today. And on the recorder side, we record legal documents, most of the legal documents are basically pertaining to the economy at large, so without the recorder recording those documents, some of the economy would not function. So two very important backgrounds, want to give a quick introduction, this is Laura Silva, she's somebody I've been training at budgets, she had a big hand in this budget this year, and so she will be, you'll be seeing more and more of her in the next coming years, so. Going to 1123, talking about some of the good stuff we've done, Prop Eights have reduced further, they're now right around $4,000, or 4,000 units left, and we started basically audits that are required by law, we started those, they haven't been done in about 10 plus years, we started them this year, sent them out to business owners, that is required every single year, we have to do a certain percentage of that based on our volume, we have sent those out, we have almost completed with the first set, and we're ready to do the second set, that is required every single year.
So, you said Prop Eight, there's 4,000 left?
Yes, so when I started, I originally started, we had 10,800 approximately, and that was pretty much carryover from, call it the Great Recession, when Prop Eights, the way Prop Eights function is basically, it's a temporary reduction of valuation, so at the Great Recession, you know, everything was temporarily deduct, you know, deducted, or reduc, reduction of it, yes, I can't speak this morning, so those values were reduction of those, we had 10,800 of those, over my time, we had chipped away at that either through basically just sales, you know, organically, there's some selling, and so they basically got off the roll as a Prop Eight, and they're now down to 4,000, every year they will probably reduce, we will be working every single year on getting it further reduced, now, if we hit a recession and values come back down, then they will, they will maintain that property.
So how long, what's your projection of getting through that?
Some of those, and let me explain some of that 4,000, some of that 4,000 will, will never come off, because just the nature of the markets, somebody, let's run through an example, let's somebody bought a piece of property in our county, didn't really know our county very well, they just did it from afar, they bought the property, they bought it way over market, you know, just, it happens, they've got to have a reduction, a property reduction, they will never get that reduction unless something really, really substantially changes, and out of that number, we estimate it to be, you know, 2,000 to 3,000 of that 4,000, so we technically have probably about 1,000 left of ones that can actually move, and that's our estimate, we won't know until we get to that point, and we are working on that every day, basically, so how long it'll take us, we have other projects we're working on with the permits, which is our last biggest bucket to work on, and they work on simultaneously, how long that takes to get done, I would say probably a year or two.
And the backlog for the permits is?
The backlog for the permits, permits happen every single day, right? So everybody does some form of a permit, they put a gazebo up, they put perla, you know, concrete, concrete work, et cetera, right? And so that continues to increase, we process that as best we can, so some of that is backlog and some of that's just normal course of business, we are working on that, that is going to go very slow, to be honest, because you have to go out to the property, it's the first touch of the property, especially when it comes to single family homes, so you have to go out there the first time, you have to measure it, you have to take pictures, you have to establish the initial, basically, file for that property, because now it used to be a piece of land, now it has a house, so that will be a slow process, that will take years.
So of the permits that haven't been assessed, how far back do they go?
Um, they go back, some of them state, when I started, so years, but we've caught up on some, I would say probably maximum is probably five years.
Okay, so we're in a five year?
Yeah, yeah.
We're not 10, 15 years?
No, no, and, and the churn of it, you have a smaller portion that is single family homes, which is the biggest amount of, you know, money, and the thing that's going to be more permanent, and then you have a substantial, you know, portion that is going to be concrete work, gazebos, pergola, you know, those types of scenarios, patio, those are just ones that we have to like go in on a regular basis, clear out, but that's a big chunk of that 4,000 volume, so, and I can give you more details if you want, but that's kind of generalized.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because it's, it's tough to get a five year supplemental bill.
Mm-hmm.
That hurts.
It is, and our supplemental bills have reduced substantially since I took over, because I personally can't stand escapes, that's exactly what you're talking about, and escapes, we can go back four years unless, some of the qualifiers, but basically four years the marker, so we can go back up to four years for some of those, and yes, it hurts, and that's one of the reasons why we have focused on a lot of these Prop Eights, some of these other ones also had the escapes attached to them, some of the other buckets I inherited, most of those have been reduced, and this is the last one, and we try to focus on the single family homes first, because of course, if you get a supplement on a $250,000 house, it's a much bigger supplemental if you go back four years, if it's on a patio, it's, it's much smaller, so we try and focus as best we can on the priority of trying to reduce that hurt, I guess you would describe it as, or financial obligation at that point, and we're going as fast as we can, is pretty what, what the answer is.
Okay.
Does that help?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to continue. I'd like to continue from that conversation, I know there's been conversations before in the past about looking at a contractor or a consulting agency to be able to help out with those, and I'd like to re-review that because of the fact that, that's money right now that we're not putting into our budget, and that we're missing out on services rendered or projects that we're able to do, and so obviously, and you know this, the sooner we're able to catch up, which is what you're working on, the better, but if it's going to take years, and I'm guessing three to five years for everything that's there, and that's not including any of the other stuff that's coming up right now, hopefully we're able to keep that up to date as well, it's just, it would be nice to raise that funding revenue as
Yeah.
Close to the right amount as possible, so then there are no surprises for those who get a multi-year, so I know there's some complications with that, but I'd love to re-review that and bring it back to the board for discussion and seeing if we can, what are the benefits, what are the, what are the pros and cons?
Yeah, and so, let me speak to that just at least for a few seconds, is, and that comes up, honestly, almost every single year, the same topic, it's come up almost ever since I started, the problem you have with it is the state certifications for the appraisers has to be done through testing, and that certification has to be there, so there's not really outside agencies that hold that certification that can come in and do it, if there was, because I've investigated multiple times across the 58 counties to see if anybody's using anything like that, and there's no agencies out there that have the certification that can use it, partly because the way the regulations are set up is you have to work at an assessor's office to keep your certification current, so it's kind of.
And maybe it's just working with another assessor's office from another county who might have the capacity to come over to Lake County and help us out.
We've looked at some of that also in earlier years, and to be perfect honest, at least on the earlier years when we looked, they didn't have a lot of capacity, they weren't in a lot of the same boat we were, partly because of the timing, now we might have a little bit more go, and I'm going to an annual conference in about a month and a half, I can bring that up to the roundtable at that point and see if anybody has any other ideas on it, but that's, that's the investigation I've had in the past, and we can definitely follow through with the, for the conversation on that, because, yeah, if, if that happened and that was there, that'd be easy, our way of handling it is we're going to come up with a system we've already started to try and streamline the smallers, the pergolas, the concrete work, all of that stuff, if we can clear that out faster on a regular basis, set up a, a protocol for that to get that through, that will enable us to spend more time on the houses, which is the big, you know, the big number, in doing that, we've done some work with the cities, which is trying to get their plans and their permit information directly to us, so we've established a shared folder, basically with the city of Clearlake, we're working with the city of Lakeport, and I've tried a couple times with upstairs, but the department keeps changing, so I feel like I'm the kiss of death with that, I'll start the conversation, it feels like within six months the department has moved on, so I'm hoping to reestablish that because that will speed our processing faster, because we get paper files as far as plans from these agencies, and literally they take up a whole cubicle for us downstairs, we go through, we map them out for proper tax purposes, and then they go back to the agency, what we have established is Clearlake eliminates some of that back and forth of paper, and the goal eventually is that they will scan, the agencies will scan it, we'll be eliminating one complete step in our processing, which is apexing the actual property, so we've already started that, and we're at the step with Lakeport in discussion, they agree with it, they just don't have their stuff ready yet, but we're closer, and then we'll be making the discussion again upstairs.
And I appreciate that, that that's happened over the course of the past year, I know that's something that's enhanced the relationship at least between the two.
Yep, yep, I think it's definitely a positive, so going back to the numbers, some of the key pieces, if you look in 2380, we did have a grant across the state.
2380?
2380, professional fees, sorry, I'm calling out the.
Oh, oh, the specific line item.
Yeah, I guess that's how I think about it. We did have grant money in years past, I think you, we've talked about it in prior budgets, there's grant money across the state for assessor's offices, we did apply for it and we did use it to increase our physical characteristics, when I first showed up the data on a lot of the properties, I'll give you an example, we had properties with bedrooms and no bathrooms, or bathrooms with no bedrooms, well, that doesn't really exist, and it creates extra work on the operational side of the appraiser to actually value, because now you have to spend more time trying to figure out what the property is, and so we've spent a lot of time with that grant trying to increase that, we've not increased as much as we'd like, but we've increased quite a bit of that, and we're continuing with different operations with that, that has got away, so you'll see a change in that, of course, salary increases is the other big, big chunk of that difference, delta between year over year, outside of that, not much different, it's pretty flat, we do have four vacancies, three regular appraisers and one auditor appraiser, we have different internal kind of plans for that, the auditor appraiser, I have somebody getting ready to take the auditor appraiser exam, there's two ways to become an auditor appraiser, which is basically an accounting position in the assessor's office, I'm either have to have a four year degree or close enough with units, or you have to take a statewide exam, the person I'm preparing doesn't have a four year degree as far as an accounting degree, but is being prepared for the exam, I've already had somebody taken to my office and, and that's what we're achieving, so that auditor appraiser is kind of held out for her and the appraiser. And the appraiser, as of yesterday, one of them is my Eric Olson, which is going to be my supervisor who's going to move over as an appraiser. I'll have two left over, but then I'll have the supervisor, DAR on the recorders open. I actually will be handling and preparing some staff for that, applying for that in the future. I will take that over for about six months-ish in preparation for that, because some of them don't have enough time possibly to get through the description of it.
Supervisor Simon, you have your pen up.
You know, we've talked about some modernization that you're planning on doing with the with the plans and other things. Just, you know, want to make sure, I know, as you said, there's 4,000 homes that need to be gone out and looked at. Just keeping an eye out, you know, any artificial intelligence or any type of opportunity there, just to advance, you know, because, you know, with 3D imaging and all this other stuff that's going on, just just want to push technology advances that are out there each year. It's improving, you know, just to cut down the time on it would take to physically go out. Because I really appreciated the opportunities when I came on as a board to go to every department, understand everything that's going on throughout the bills and understanding what needs to be done physically. So just looking at those technology advances, I don't have anything specific, but artificial intelligence has come along more and more with 3D imaging and drones and all this other stuff.
We have, we have implemented since I got there, we've done a couple of things along that side, which is ParcelQuest. We had an original ParcelQuest with a certain version of ParcelQuest. ParcelQuest is basically, has access to the public, but also is used by our department. And it basically is kind of what you're talking about, it's more aerial, as well as we have Google Earth. But the aerial and ParcelQuest allows you to have additional information. So we upgraded our ParcelQuest so that we could use it more fully. So we've been doing that now for years. On top of it, when we've done our scanning documents, we had choices to scan it, but we did this many years ago, almost about seven or eight years ago. When we moved towards our scanning capabilities on the recorder side, because we were required to scan and bring it into the index, we moved into OCR, and OCR in preparation for the adaption of AI. Knowing that AI was kind of as infancy as about eight years ago, we made the adoption about seven years ago, knowing that we had certain scanners Fujitsu that had the capacity but wasn't turned on. So we did some investigation, and now everything that we scan in our department, and we're moving more and more towards that, is OCR-based. And so everything has the, you know, the ability to, when AI catches up, some of these capacities and some of these technologies are starting to catch up, the OCR will then be an open file to be ready to, you know, basically accept that ability for AI against it. So we didn't, because you have to, to explain, you have two choices. You have a flash file, which is basically just like an image, a photo per se, right? Not unlocked, you can't scan against it, you can't ask a question of it. If you do OCR, then it allows you to basically scan the document and pick key words and streamline the process. And so we've streamlined our process substantially on top of some of the other websites, Zillow, Redfin, some of the outside red sites. Because the realtors are doing such a good job of providing information out there and good photos, we can sometimes streamline our information that way. So we've been doing that now for years. So and we're going to continue with that.
OCR, what's that acronym for?
I've been saying this so often, it's optical char- character recognition.
I didn't know, so I
Yeah, sorry, I've been saying it for so long, it's almost secondhand. So unless you have any questions about 1123, do you want me to stop there?
You can go next.
Okay, I'll keep going. 2707, the recorders, as I talked about, the, we basically record legal documents. They're key to the economy. We basically, as you can see, we've been cross-training, we have a substantial amount of new employees there. We are fully staffed on the side. Outside of the one that we just moved, which is going to be supervisor, as I just described. We've been cross-training in the past, we are continuing to cross-train, and we are pushing very hard on the cross-training mode right now with my staff. Everybody, every week, has a new cross-training role they're taking on. In preparation for the new staff getting on board, we call it onboarding, as well as when we get to the year end, to be prepared for when the title companies have their big push. So we're preparing for that, as well as we have a recording system on the horizon. We've been notified in the past that we basically, our recording system chose to leave the state of California. Eight of the counties are in the same boat as we are, was not our choice, but that will be coming on, and we are working on certain things with that, and preparing our staff to get ready for that. In that same vein, when we buy the system, we will be buying an e-recording module that's bought at the same time. That's one of the reasons e-recording doesn't exist, is because we went to our original vendor that we have, which is Halfile. We talked to them for about a year and a half, and they kept pushing us off. And it comes to find out that they never intended to give us a module possibly, because they were intending to leave. So, but you need a module to do e-recording. We don't have the capacity because it is through the existing system. So that's what we're preparing for. You can see from numbers-wise, most of it is pretty flat with the extent of salaries. The one thing I do want to bring up is our fees in the recorder's office. We historically, and this is probably the first year, I think during my time, that we are not fully funded. Before I showed up, we were not fully funded at all. Recording fees are kind of set by regulation. There's a base fee, which is $10, we charge the $10. That $10 base fee, we charge 14 in total, and there's four pieces for the other components. But the $10 base fee has not changed in years. Definitely has not changed through my eight years, and I don't think it's changed for many years before that. As you can see, inflation does occur, and we just brought our salaries just into the middle. And at that point, we're not fully funded. So I'm already starting to kind of lobby on the recorder side, because that goes statewide, to try and get that $10 to at least reflect some additional costs. Because this should always, if everything goes well, unless it's a, it's an unusual year, this should be one of those fully funded departments at all times. It should basically, the cost come in, and the cost is used to basically do what it needs to do. So that is one thing that is different this year, but it's, we can't change it. We have changed everything we can change, it is a statewide regulation. Until we can get them to change that $10 base, I hate to say it, we're going to be at this this road for the next couple of years. I'm hoping it's less than that. So, any questions?
Well, yeah, so just so that we're, we all know, how is the e-recording going to impact your workload?
So the e-recording is going to not honestly impact much of our workload, except for it's going to force us to have a dedicated person towards e-recording. So right now, you have kind of a scenario where everybody's very cross-trained. I will cross-train everybody, but when you have that specific job, like now you have more flexibility in which job you can grab, except for the absolute ones at the counter, which is only about 20% of our work. E-recording is going to have to be done at a very specific time, so very dedicated when it happens. As far as it's speeding up, it's not necessarily going to speed our efficiency up much. It's pretty much doing the exact same thing. The only difference is it's going to go through a third-party scenario called a clearinghouse. They're going to check the document, they're going to send it to us. If it's not in proper order, we'll send it back to the clearinghouse, and they'll be responsible for, you know, doing it. But as far as actual steps, it doesn't streamline any of our steps.
Is it going to be easier for the public?
It depends, because honestly, general public will not use it. And the reason for that is because you have to set up a certain amount of insurance, a certain amount of regulations that's related to it. So the general public, the only time the general public will use it is if they go through a medium to larger size, probably law firm, or a fairly large title company. So like First American or Fidelity, or somebody that's probably nationwide, that's going to have that ability to have the insurance. Every other person is going to be doing what exactly what they do now. So it has no streamlined effect pretty much on the general public. They will get it through going when they sell a property. If they go through one of those avenues, they'll get it, but otherwise, no effect whatsoever.
So what's the benefit?
So what's the benefit? The benefit, I will tell you, is the biggest benefit is probably to the title companies, because we've already had a conversation just recently where they are looking at it. They want to streamline their costs because it will shrink or possibly shrink some costs on their side. But on our side, it won't have any necessarily benefit, except for, I guess, the clearinghouse will do, the clearinghouse will be responsible for checking certain documents, make sure they're in a certain setup. But if they still don't fulfill recording requirements, we'll still reject it. So it's pretty much the same steps, same same concept. It does streamline and of course, get away from paper on the recorder side, meaning the title companies. But the actual recorder side, if you called out the steps, you you present a recorded document, we check it for recording requirements, and we record it, same thing. The only difference is now it's coming through a system, put in a folder, we open it up. If it fulfills recording requirements, we accept it, if not, same steps. So as far as, as far as cost or benefit to us locally, like as an organization, not not many. To help these organizations that actually rely on us, yeah, it'll help them. But as far as us operationally, not much.
It'll be beneficial to the industry?
Yes, yes, to the industry. From what I've heard, it sounds like it will help them on their their cost side, of course, operations. It sounds like they can streamline maybe how many people they have checking, you know, certain things, but for us
Have to run people over.
Exactly, that's what I was going to call it, it's more the probably runner side of it. But that's, I'm not in, on that side of the fence, on our side of the fence, it's pretty much the same steps. Only difference is, comes through in a file, sends me an email, tells me files are available to look at. Any other questions? So that's 2707. If there's no question, I'm just going to go straight on to the the three. 278, 2709, and 2710, these are special revenue funds, or if you want to think about it kind of like a trust fund. They're basically designated, like we just talked about the fees, we talked about the base of 10. The other dollars are related to these. We collect basically on recording $1 for each one of these for certain purposes. I cannot use them for anything but those purposes, they have to be there. That's why if you look on the reserves, they do have quite a bit of reserves, they've been building over the years. But they're, they have to be used for that specific purpose across the state. We do have some big things coming up, like we are going to pay for the recording system out of some of these. We're going to pay for some redaction projects that we've already got started out of these, to go back to the index and make sure certain things are redacted. There are some possibilities with some other possible future redactions, and as well as we'd like to get our microfiche converted over into the index and actually available instead of somebody coming over. When you go to our index, past a certain point, you have to actually go to a microfiche at a certain, you know, date. We'd like to actually eventually get that, we do have that on top of maintaining and making sure the historical documents are protected, not just protected, looking nice in a nice binded book. When I first got here, a lot of the books, some of the books were rebinded and some of them were not, and so we finished a lot of that. But the pages need to be deasified in some cases sealed, so that they exist for perpetuity, because every, they're available to the public, and so like anybody, you have acid in your fingertips. And if you touch the pages, these are historical documents and historical signatures. And so we want to make sure that's preserved, we preserved a chunk of them, Doug before me also preserved a big chunk of them. We still have some more to do. These will be used the next number of years in different projects as I get them through. Can't take out all projects at all time, because I only have so much resource to do that. But that's what you're going to see in 2708, 279, 2710. You know, ones that are related to micrographics, ones related to modernization, and ones that are related to, you know, health and vitals. Health and vitals, the one project we put money in for, but we'd like to get it done, we're not positive we can get it done this year because of the other two projects, as far as just time and energy, is we'd like to scan all the vitals into the system. Right now, they are all paper, and we'd like to get all those scanned in, so that basically, number one, it'll it'll create the paper as a secondary, possibly able to move to a storage, to just reference when the actual scan is not good enough, but we can index it, and so that at the counter, it can be streamlined a lot faster. That's what we're working on. So that's the highlights of all five. I didn't get it down to two minutes, but I tried. Any questions?
My only question, and I think you basically answered it, but I guess my question is timing. I see that you aim high for expending the micrographics, modernization, vitals, and health stat stuff to be completed. But on an annual basis, what you're aiming for and what you actually do is quite contrary and very different. Is there, is there a timeline to use those funds, is there a deadline to use those funds?
Some of these, no, those are basically special revenue funds that are set aside, and basically, they're available to use when needed. In this case, we are closer on, especially the 160 and the 150, or the 250 that you see, we're closer on both of those. We've already got the US imaging contract through, we have already sent our first packet over there for testing. That just happened last week, and we're working back and forth with our existing recording system, because they have to, they have to write a program to get it back into the system. So that is already started. The money, we hope, will be finished before the end of this fiscal year, it's already started, so we anticipate it. The 250, we also anticipate the same, we're at, we're basically at contract level, going back and forth to try and establish contract of the recording system. And then we're just going to be on a timeline of when they're implementing. We've got eight counties across the state that are affected by this change of this Halfile system, that they decided to leave the state. So we're just going to be a little bit at the mercy of whatever the vendor, how fast they can do it, really. They have to implement systems through eight, that's quite a bit. So hopefully, but that's on those two, which is the biggest amount of money. The one I think would be a little bit more gray, as far as going to get it done, is the vitals. I'm not positive, I'm not going to have enough resource, if I can get the other two done, they're going to take a lot of resources. Can I get the vitals done too? I don't know, honest answer, but I will, if I don't get it done this year, you'll see it next year. So you make a note, and we can just get to that point and be like, you're blessed.
Thank you.
Open it up to the public, see if there's any questions from anyone on Zoom. Not seeing any, I'll bring you back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, move to approve budget units 1123, 2707 through 2710, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and motion carries. Thank you very much for that budget presentation.
Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right. Are we going to push through, or?
She's sitting right there.
Let's push through.
Let's make it happen.
All right, next up is District Attorney, Budget Unit 2110, found on page D74. And they are requesting appropriations of the amount $4,543,331. And I will turn it over to the District Attorney, Ms. Crohn's.
Well, thank you, and I, I know I'm a lawyer, but I'm going to be brief, because
How does that lawyer speak?
So, but answer any questions that you have, and thanks to Doris for being here. She's the brains of the operation, really, especially coming into, when you talk about numbers. So for the District Attorney's Office, 2110, staffing continues to be an issue. We have, obviously, this is the same in every department, and, you know, because of the higher wages surrounding counties and elsewhere in California. This budget year, we have 10 deputy DEAs, plus myself and the chief, so Mr. Henscliff. So we have 12 total deputies and DA and the chief. We are, we were able to hire two attorneys this fiscal year with one new misdemeanor attorney, who started in January 2022. And we also have a felony attorney who just started August 1st. So I'm very happy that we have those two individuals started this fiscal year. The salary increase and the incentive bonus has been very helpful. And we still have, however, three vacant positions for deputy district attorneys on any level we can get. That being said, we currently only have eight trial attorneys. And that is because we have one part-time deputy that's basically doing charging. And we also have another full-time deputy, senior deputy, that's only doing charging at this point. We have a huge backlog of trials every week. On average, each attorney has two to three trials to prepare for for the next week. Plus, they may have preliminary hearings, so that's basically an overlap, they have to prepare for two trials. They have to prepare for two trials, two or three trials plus prelims, and then we have to scramble if, if they're in trial and they, we have to have somebody else do the prelim. So it's, it's very hectic and stressful. We have an, we've had an open recruitment, I believe, for deputy DEAs for about six months, I think. Yes. And we've had applications, but we've only been able to hire one felony deputy from that recruitment. We have had, I believe, two individuals that we started backgrounds on, but they went somewhere else due to more pay somewhere else. We have at least two senior deputy DEAs planning on retiring next year. And I think that includes Rich Henschcliff. I'm, I'm still working on him, so to stay a little bit longer. And I continue to do trials because of those shortages. So I actually have a heavy caseload. I have two trials set next week. We have been able to hire two new investigators this fiscal year. We currently have no vacancies, but we do have one investigator that's on extended and has been on extended leave. Our office staff, we currently have one vacancy and we do have a senior clerk retiring next spring. So we're going to be in bad shape when she leaves because she has so much experience. For the upcoming fiscal year, I expect at least two senior attorneys to retire, as I, I think I said. And I, and I've talked about the backlog. We're still recovering from the backlog because of COVID. We are seeing, and this is just my observation, seeing what's coming in, in terms of new charges, but we are seeing with misdemeanor and felonies that an increase of new charges before we can even get to their old charge. So for example, we have cases from a year or two ago during COVID that never made it to trial. And because of the reduced bail laws and the Humphreys decision that allows individuals to be, be on zero bail so they can get out with terms to try to keep them from committing new crimes, we see them all the time coming back into our office, reports. And so it's hard to, it's hard to get to the first crime that they committed to go to trial when they keep bringing in new cases. I am happy to say the court has recently started a dedicated mental health court. And this is in the early stages, but it should help with the congestion of the other calendars. And there are more individuals getting a mental health diversion for felonies as well as misdemeanors. And we also have court diversion for misdemeanors. That's happening more and more. So that's taking the pressure off of some of these low-level misdemeanor cases. However, the mental health diversion for the court is, is a lengthy process where the individual has to be evaluated by an expert and that does take some time. So the challenges going forward, there are many new laws that are allowing individuals to challenge their convictions. This has been going on for several years now, but, and it's retroactive. So for example, it used to be, there's changes in the felony murder rule. It used to apply to only murder, murder cases. Now it applies to attempted murder as well as attempted, as well as manslaughter and attempted manslaughter. So we're seeing all of these new petitions coming in to the office that, that some cases they go back, they can go back 10, 20, 30 years. I have a case right now that's 20 years old that they're contesting, asking for resentencing and contesting that they were the actual killer. And in addition, there are other petitions that we're seeing that are for resentencing on, on various reasons. And this is obviously taking up a lot of time from the current cases. And we, we do not, even though the legislature knew, of course, that this was going to cost additional time and, and time and money for our, every DA's office, they did not, they did not. It's basically a unfunded requirement. We don't get any reimbursement from the state. Also looming on the horizon in kind of the same vein, there is legislation currently in regards to, for DA's offices to be required to track certain information for every case that we prosecute. There is 18 separate data points that they want for each case. These include obviously, you know, data, male, female, or, or other, you know, race, all of those data points. However, they want more, they want even more, us to keep track of even more whether or not they were allowed, given diversion or offered diversion. And lots of data points that we won't be able to do because we're mainly right now, we do have a case management system, but that case management system does not have a database for those, all the points that they want, the state wants. So in the next, right now, the, there is legislation that, that would require this and it hasn't been signed yet. So it would require this by 2027, I believe. However, that's not that far away. And this is going to require an overhaul of our current system, database, data system, because we would have to get a system that is able to collect that amount of data so we can easily process it and provide it to the state. This is, the one thing about that legislation is, is that it is saying that the state has to provide the money for those new data systems. We'll see if they say that and then sign, if it's signed and if they actually provide that money to us, that, that is an issue. Anything else to add for that? Doris? Okay. Any questions on that?
I do have a question about your, the liability line on your expenditures. Quite a jump.
That would be controlled by risk management.
Okay.
So they, I'm, I don't know the details of what was assessed and what the change was to make it jump so much.
And maybe without the details, is there something that occurred that needed to be filed that increased that amount or is it just in preparation for?
I, I, I don't know if maybe Stephen has a more.
Which account are you talking about?
2110. If you looked at the actual of 2021, it's like 15 grand or 16 grand.
15-12.
Then the anticipated for last year was about 60 grand and now it jumps up to 235.
Public liability, yeah. That's a calculation that I can't go too far into, but it's 70% exposure, 30% base. And if it went up, that means there was some exposure.
Okay. Like I said, no need for details, just.
That was, it is risk now that there's someone, that Anita has risk analyst, it'll move up there, but we admin calculated that this year.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
I, I do. How many cases are you backlogged right now? Because I mean, to, to be honest, I, I'm not a big fan of the absolutely no bail type of situation. I think that, that creates a potential problem, but at the same time, you can't keep people in jail for two years waiting for their court case.
Right.
There's a problem with that. So what is yours? So I, I'm, I'm not, it sucks that people are reoccurring, but at the same time, we've created a situation for ourselves that we need to get ourselves out of. How many back, how many cases are you backlogged?
Well, right now, I don't have exact figures.
Just around about.
But, oh, no, it's, I don't know if it would be easy to say backlog. And, and it's, it's all dictated by the courts. So nothing, backlog could go back as far as 10 years because they failed to appear.
If you can speak in the microphone, please.
Backlog had, can come, can arise from cases where the defendant has failed to appear. So we've got those back to 10 years, 10 years plus. So that's a, maybe a small portion. The majority having come from the COVID where they were not able to, they had to cite people out, give them a ticket, tell them to come back at a later time. And we weren't able to prosecute them right away.
And then because of the fact that you have that time period where no court cases were occurring, and I know that you have a timeline for filing, now that you're dealing with the backlog and still dealing with the current situation, how's that working out with the filings and stuff? Because I know you have a limited deadline for felonies at the very least that I'm aware of. I think there's also a longer deadline for misdemeanors.
Vice versa. So shorter deadline for misdemeanors, one year.
That's one year. Gotcha.
Well, we actually, one thing that is helpful is we have one felony attorney who's only doing charging. And also the, the other deputies do charging as well, but the one deputy that's only doing charging is helping to do the in-custizes and taking the load off of some of the other deputies. Also, in terms of a backlog, this is just an example. I just counted up our schedule for felony trials or felony trials only. This does not include misdemeanor trials for the next, basically to the end of the year. And there's currently about 70 cases, trials that are pending. And we're only able to do one trial, basically one trial a week. And if you have, and several of these trials are going to be multiple days. So it's, it's, we, we are, these are cases that are set for trial in the next few months. Every week, we also try to settle as many cases as we can realistically without giving away the farm, basically. We, you know, we have a point where we say, no, that's not sufficient disposition, so then it's going to have to go to trial. But we are trying to reduce the, the backlog of trials.
Right. And obviously this is not a Lake County problem. This is a nationwide, if not worldwide problem. I know in Seattle, in that county, there's something like 350 suspected murder cases that they still haven't gone through. It's insane. So, but I worry that there's lack of consequences because it's taking so long to get to that, which means that there's reoccurring issues which impacts our community and so on and so forth, so.
Well, the, on the bright side, kind of, you know, at some point, we get individuals who have, only has started off with one case and now they have five and say, okay, let's do a package deal. And by that time, they're kind of like, okay.
All right. There's no other questions? Let's move on to 2113, I think it is, right?
Okay. So 2113 is a victim witness office. Well, one of the main functions of the victim witness office is to do interview, interviews for child victims, child sexual assault mostly. And those interviews have increased obviously because we were not, we were doing those interviews during the pandemic, but obviously there were less reporting of these cases. It's interesting, a lot of individuals say that's due to the kids weren't going to school, where a lot of them, of these cases are reported at school or told to friends. And then it gets started that way. We do have a trained forensic interviewer who's doing an excellent job. And it's so vital to have this interviewer in our office, in our victim witness office, so that we don't have to scramble to get an interviewer to come in from somewhere else. And she's trained and doing these interviews in a certain way so that they are very good to present to court, in court. The whole concept is it's not leading the, the victim or anything, it's just a way of interviewing a child. We are awaiting word from the state if our child advocacy grant, which includes the forensic interviewer, will be approved as it was competitive for the first time this year. So if we don't get that grant, that's going to be pretty devastating. So our victim witness office depends on this grant and it will be very challenging if we don't get this grant. So I'm very hopeful that we will. Currently, we have two grants. Does that include, that doesn't, does that include the child advocacy? Yes. That support 89% of our victim witness costs. And we have been able to hire an extra help receptionist at victim witness and that's made a big difference in the office. And obviously with the increase of jury trials this year, the victim witness, witness advocates have been a tremendous help and they're very busy. They help coordinate witnesses. They inform witnesses of what's going on in their case. And because of the backlog, they, many cases get continued over and over again. So they are very helpful in talking to witnesses and victims and explaining to them what, why it had to be continued. And we do have one victim witness advocate position open that we have not been able to fill. So the, they, you know, the victim witness office does so many great things during the year, holiday time, they send, you know, they gather presents for kids in the system who have been through, you know, criminal cases. And they obviously do outreach in the community at local fairs and events to put out information about what's available at victim witness for the community. So if there are any questions?
Continue on to 2116.
Okay. Asset forfeiture, this is so exciting. Well, our, we have an upcoming distribution that will be at least $290,000, but that doesn't go to us. We only get a small percentage. So asset forfeiture money is basically money, individuals who are arrested or contacted or charged with various drug cases. Then if they have cash or money in the bank or whatever that we can tie to the criminal activity, then we can, there's authority for us to seize it. It also includes property, mostly vehicles. So this money is shared by the league agency. Once it's forfeited, if it is forfeited, and there is a process, of course, then 65% of the money goes to the seizing agency, whether it be the sheriff's department or Clear Lake Police Department, whatever. 15% goes to the gang and drug suppression. 24% goes to the state. 10% goes to the DA's office. And 1% goes to training to organizations that train asset forfeiture throughout California. So that's the breakdown of where this money goes. So we do have currently money in the asset forfeiture budget and, and we have, we have a lot of cases pending that, that we try to, we, because there's a backlog in some of the trials because of various reasons, we cannot dispose. we cannot dispose of the asset forfeiture case until after the trial in most cases. We cannot negotiate the asset forfeiture in terms of the trial. We can't say if you forfeit the money, then we'll give you, you know, this deal. They're separate. It's a civil, it's a civil case. So it's function, it's separate. And it can lead to, however, if the case goes to jury trial for the criminal conviction, then the asset forfeiture case would immediately follow. So that's why we have to wait until the criminal case is resolved in most, most cases before we can, um, determine if we can forfeit the money. So any questions?
All right. Not seeing any. I'll, uh, open it up to the public, uh, see if there's anyone online that has a question. Seeing none, bring it back to board for action.
Mr. Chair, move to approve budget unit 2110, 2113, and 2116 as presented.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Okay. And now lunch. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. So, uh, lunch break. Uh, it looks like we'll come back at, uh, 1:35. Sound good? All right. See you then.
Sounds good.
All right. Welcome back from our lunch break and, uh, we will now continue on with the rest of the, uh, budget items. And I'll give the floor to Stephen.
Thank you, Chair. So the last budget units up are the administration office. And we would like to start with human resources, budget unit 1341, found on page D28. And we are requesting appropriations of, to be determined as I get to that page. 1,664,540, and I'll turn it over to the human resources director, Pam.
I, Pam Samick, Human Resources Director. We also have Diana Rico, Deputy Director, with us today. Human Resources, um, we deliver workforce planning, employee recruitment, benefits administration, performance management, policy development, training, union, employee relations, and anything else that comes our way. Uh, we have eight full-time allocations and we are currently fully staffed. Uh, last year, our major accomplishments is we maintained integrated, uh, service delivery for all of HR. We finalized or helped finalize the implementation of class and comp. We helped complete the union negotiations, um, and got three years of, uh, MOUs done. We, uh, updated the recruitment rules. Um, we streamlined the hiring process by looking at 15 years of workers' comp data and recommending that 50 jobs move from physicals to just a questionnaire, which helped streamline the hiring process. We helped coordinate hiring of 180 full-time employees. We updated our interactive process. We created a new performance management system and evaluation forms. Uh, we created a red, record retention policy and cleaned up 45 years of old data. We also, um, kept up with the ever-changing COVID protocol. Challenges that we're looking at over the next coming year include still hiring and retention. In 2122, we input 416 recs, which resulted in 180 hires. This doesn't include extra help employees. Uh, retention's still an issue for us. We had 147 terminations during the fiscal year, resulting with 46% of new hires leaving in the first year of employment. So most of those reasonings for leaving in the first year, um, 10%, um, the county asked them to leave. 10%, they took new jobs. 7% they relocated. Uh, 5% job satisfaction and 10% were unspecified and then some peppering there. We also had 18% um, that retired last year during the last fiscal year. Our turnover for the 2021, 22, 22 year was 17.66%. According to the BLS, government was right around 18% for the same time period. But nationwide, we're not doing too bad. Last year during the great resignation was 57%. So when you look at that, we're not faring quite as bad. We actually, this year for the first time in the last three years, retained some employees. Um, the last three years, we tended to lose everybody, not everybody we hired, but the same amount of people we hired. So we're, we're making a little bit of progress, which I am thinking the class and comp has had, um, helped with that success. Next year, we hope to focus on hiring and retention, um, and a lot of training. We still need to update policy and forms to get things more automated. And we hope to do management training with, um, interviewing and recruitment, effective onboarding, coaching, communication and conflict resolution, um, evaluation and performance management and leaves. And then we also want to train to the interactive process. Any questions?
Don't see any.
I won't say too much about it, but again, obviously we need to, uh, figure out how to, uh, do better than seeing those increases on our, uh, public liability. Uh, because that's a huge hit on this specific, uh, uh, budget. But you also went from 110,000 to 360,000 for professional and specialized services. Kind of curious as to what those services might be. I know we've done a lot of recruiting and I'm wondering if it has something to do with that.
It will have some to do with that, but 100K is the scanning project that we're currently undertaking. Um, we asked for 25,000 to hire a programmer to help us with some reporting out of Cognos. Um, 100K towards training. Um, and we asked for 25,000 to help increase recruiting outreach and advertising. So that's 250. Um, the liability claim, I believe that was just one incident or two incidents. So not 100% in our control. Um, mishap, um, and it was a significant injury. Um, and the other one, I think you guys know about.
And I'm not looking for those details.
Yeah.
But I think that it's, it's something to keep in mind, uh, because it's just money that goes out and, and it doesn't provide anything back in return. Where does the, the CSAC, uh, stuff fall into? Is that administration or is that HR?
That's under training, but actually gets charged back to the departments. Each department undertakes their own. Um, the program that we did last year won't be available this year because they're moving it to the Sacramento area. So it'd be, it would require a lot of tri, uh, travel. So I am looking for something to replace that, but also some staff level training. Um, we hope to bring back, um, the MHN training that we utilized, um, and did here in chambers with staff. Now that COVID, oh, knock on wood, seems to be diminishing a little bit. I think we can start, um, in-person training again. And I think that's going to be really important.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Sticking with the HR theme, move, we're moving on to budget unit 9917, Employee Wellness Program, found on page D385. And the requested budget there appropriations is 276,721.
And that is, um, Fund 918. And that is the self-funded, um, oh, nope, am I, um?
It's 917.
917. Oh, I grabbed the wrong one. Sorry. 917 is our self-funded dental and vision, health and wellness. That's pretty consistent with what we've done. Of course, there are increases in, um, dental, um, health and wellness. We hope to focus a little bit more on health and wellness over the next coming year in incorporating some programs, working with Blue Zones, um, to look at overall health and wellness. Dental and vision are consistent with, um, what we've done in the past.
All right.
All right. Next one is budget unit 9918, unemployment, found on page D387. And the requested appropriations are 808,706.
And this is, um, unemployment claims have been pretty consistent. They've been higher in the last two years, uh, due to COVID, um, and, and turnover. Not much to say about that one. Questions?
Won't see any.
Just seems like it's that new theme of whatever you say, due to COVID. It's, it's impacted.
Unfortunately.
It's impacted so many things.
Yeah, it really has.
All right. So thank you, Pam and Diana. Next up, uh, Patrick will present budget unit 1072, which is cannabis. Yeah, he's on Zoom. Oh, I texted him. Um, found on page D9.
Good afternoon, Board. Patrick Sullivan, uh, County Tax Administrator. I was asked to do sort of a higher level review of some of the history of tax and revenue in this unit. So if it would please your Board, I can begin with that.
Sure.
Yes.
All right. I'll show the screen. All right. So this sheet shows some of the statistics behind the cannabis program. Uh, if you're looking here.
We still have a file folder open?
Oh.
Perfect. No, oh, sorry. It wasn't you. It was us.
Oh. Let me try that again then. Are you seeing?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So this is just a history of revenue in the cannabis tax program. Um, first year was that 267,000, up to 526,000, 486,000. 2021, we had that much larger jump to, uh, just a little over 8.3 million. 2121, or 2122, we were trending upwards at that point. We had more projects coming online. And let me, I'll zoom in a little bit, just hopefully this makes it clear. We had more projects coming online, but as your Board will recall, uh, there was that 50% tax reduction, uh, across the board for cannabis cultivation tax. And there was also the adjustments to the canopy area, um, that instead of taxing the cultivation area, we began taxing the canopy area, which on average resulted in another 15% reduction. So even though we had that upward trend in total amount of square footage or acreage, um, being utilized in the county, we still saw that drop in tax down to just over 6.4 million. The other category of revenue in this that's probably worth mentioning is the state aid. This is, these are the various grants that we received. The Public Health and Safety Grant, cannabis equity grants, and, uh, let's see, the Local Jurisdiction Assistance Grant. So we received a little over a million 2021, 2122, we, uh, received 3.8, 8 million. There's, some of this is reimbursable, some of it's, uh, paid in advance. But that gives an idea of where that revenue stream is coming. And that's all made up ultimately of state cannabis tax dollars that are being redirected to Lake County. I understand there are questions about expenses, just what it's gone through. Um, because there is that difference in this category between what's allocated and what has actually been expended. So the history of expenses here, if you look at, uh, 1819, it was 40,000. Then up to 64,000 in 1920, well over 300,000 2021, and then, uh, 1.3 million in 2122. Uh, just so if you're trying to get, and the idea of what that difference was each year, um, this is revenue. This is including penalties and interest and some other factors. But that tax minus expense, this is where this stands. There's this on a yearly basis and then there's this cumulative basis over here. So when you look at the total, um, the total here, that's, that's where it's at. If you take all the revenue that's come in and subtract those expenses from it over the, the life of the program. And that's highlighted down here too, just if anyone's looking for that. So, and this represents a moment in time in our system. Um, I've been trying to put this together over the last week or two, but there have been constant updates. So these numbers are still subject to change. It's just trying to give a rough idea of where things stand. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them on this page.
I, I'm slightly confused on the numbers that are different. So I see the 267,59304 on the very top line for 10-95 and then under the tax revenue combined. But then the 548 doesn't match the 526, the 40, I'm not quite sure. What's the difference between tax revenue and the top line that says 10-95?
That's because there's, um, penalties and interest that are included later. And there's also refunds at play in some of these numbers. So all of these are, are sort of in flux. That's the best that I could give right now.
So like 1095 was our budgeted amount that we anticipated to, uh, like the raw amount that we received? Nothing more, nothing less?
Yeah, up here, exactly. These, these basically represents the true tax payments, uh, that were made without any of those other adjustments that came later.
Okay. And then for the, uh, first column under tax expenses, that's what we actually spent?
Correct.
And the tax expense fiscal year, that's what we allocated to spend but didn't spend?
Yeah, this, what this column represents was just these, this minus the revenue that came in minus the expense of that year.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. So that's like the, the carryover balance from that fiscal year?
Yeah, you could think of it that way. Uh, and I know we've changed the policy. We've adjusted the policy during this time. So that, since there have been changes of policy, it's a little hard to reconcile all of that. But yeah, if you're looking at just the gross revenue versus total revenues versus total, um, expenses, that's what that column's trying to do.
Okay.
Any other questions on this?
Not at the moment.
Okay. And then I can run through the cannabis tax policy, um, policy and procedures as last approved by your Board. A moment here. So this is our current County of Lake cannabis tax usage and expenditure policies and procedures. If you recall, there are various categories in here. This is covering both Measure C and Measure K taxes, the cultivation tax and the business tax. The major adjustments that were made last time regarding just the procedures behind this, um, because it was varying whether a department head was requesting funding or whether a board member was bringing forth a, a project and funding request. Let's see. So then here is the allocation of funds and I'll run through this. So there's 30% allotted, well, actually I'll skip ahead. There are some predefined sets in here, um, which include the can grant section. That was at 500,000. Uh, that's what was set as the last allocation. Previously, the can grant allocation was used to, uh, actually, we had that application program here where departments could put in for the money. Um, that process became somewhat, uh, burdensome on some departments. And during that last policy change, uh, this was left in place for anything that came forward through either of those pathways above, whether through a department head request or a board member request, that didn't really fit one of the other categories. So this allocation would be used to fund projects that are not encompassed by one of the existing allocations. And the grants would still be awarded through that same process. Um, but really that turns into more of a, a line item in the budget at this point. So that's why that still exists and that's something that your Board could consider in the future, how they want to handle that. The workforce retention development was put in, um, and the allocation suggested at the time was 3.25 million. That was to support, um, departments across the board. There's a Board of Supervisors Discretionary Spending Fund at 500,000 with a hundred There was a Board of Supervisors Discretionary Spending Fund at 500,000 with 100,000 allocation, split across each of the five districts. There was the Capital Improvement and Deferred Maintenance Fund at 1 million, and that was discussed during Public Services. Roadmap Task Force, that has an annual allocation of a million, although that's what was set last time. I understand that it may not actually utilize that, but that is what was set in the policy. The remainder is split across these other areas. Planning, code enforcement, water resources, environmental health gets 30% of the remainder. Law enforcement, 30% of the remainder. Economic development, housing risk reduction, 30% of that remainder. And youth programs would receive 10% of that remainder. Probably the only thing worth highlighting in youth programs was that a lot of the, a lot of the background that went into that revolved around the state discretionary spending of cannabis tax revenue, which was set at 60% of their discretionary revenue. Those programs have been pretty targeted towards a lot of behavioral health concerns with juveniles, interactions with the criminal justice system. And we have taken advantage of some of the grant programs. That's where, for instance, the Public Health and Safety Grant is partially allocated, where we're providing that 500,000 to the Office of Education to run that RAP program with probation. The remaining category is the stabilization fund, and that's where minimum of a year of ongoing expenses was what the suggestion was. And that's so, want to have enough money set aside in there to cover that. Because this policy only really started last year, it's new. This is the first year that we're really doing this review. So if there are any questions on this sheet, I'm happy to take them now, otherwise I can move on.
Go ahead.
I'm just curious, with all the big numbers being taken out and what's already been spent, if there's about 14 million left, I'm not sure how much the stabilization has in there, but I'm kind of counting that there might be between 5 and 7 million dollars still left that's allocated to the percentages, is that correct?
Yeah, if you'd like, I have another sheet where I can get into that a little bit more, where I can put up those different categories and show you different scenarios of where those numbers come in.
I was just looking for a global response. I didn't need to get the details, but that's up to if the Board wants to see that or not.
From what I understood, the stabilization fund was already filled eventually, because that's what we were waiting for, not sta-
The stabilization part, yes, is filled.
That's what I thought.
And it does need to stay filled, because any expense you have during that year is straight out of there until we receive revenue in the earliest January. So that's what-
And how much is in the stabilization fund?
Patrick will have to answer that one, but it should be, it's supposed to be one year of the salary, so it should be probably about four and a half. What is it, Patrick?
Yeah, and I actually had a few questions about that, depending on how we interpret that stabilization fund, because there are those other allocations that were made over time that didn't fit into other categories. So the employment part could make up that four and a half million, but depending on how we consider those other categories, it really could be more like 9 million that would be in there. But I guess that depends on how we're reviewing carrying over funds in these other categories, and I'm not sure how the Board wants to proceed on that.
The reason why he's bringing that up is last year, we talked about where last year was going to be the start of carrying forward, everything else was going to be dumped into the stabilization to be utilized.
Do you, I can put up that other screen if it's helpful, or if there are questions about any of these categories, I can answer them before we go on to that.
I personally think that sheet would be helpful.
Yeah, let's put up-
Okay. So this shows as an example of what went in last year, just treating last year as a standalone, if all the remaining money was to just be held in the stabilization fund for the moment, this is what the allocation would have looked like after you break out those various pieces. The decision is, I don't know how the Board wants to view what carries over in each of these, if we're, if you compare expenses versus allocation. Thing is, there's been a lot of money allocated, and there's actually, this number needs some updating, because there are other projects that have both gone up and down in cost, but this serves as a pretty good ballpark, where about 9 million dollars has been allocated. But if you recall, only the 1.7 million or so has actually been expended. So there's a pretty wide gap between what we've actually, between what we've allocated and what has actually been spent so far. Do you want me to run through these categories? I'm not sure I-
And I'm sorry if it's, I'm just not understanding. The 9.4 stabilization fund, the 9.4 or 5 million, that's for things that have been requested but not spent, so we're putting it in the stabilization fund so that it's still available for those that have had that allocation made, that they can still access it?
So what happened, and at least my understanding was that at the end of, last year is the first year that we're essentially tracking in this policy. So all the remaining allocation temporarily sat in that stabilization fund at the end of last year, because we weren't doing carryover. So this is the first year that we're looking at it, where the revenue that came in and where it went.
So from that, what I get is that anything prior to last year that was allocated, yes, would come out of that stabilization?
So we've allocated, basically promised specific departments, 9.4 or 5 million from what's been approved?
I wouldn't say the whole amount is that, because that also does house the actual stabilization. It was supposed to be about 4 million. So-
That gets confusing when there's a bunch of different things that make up that, because I mean, I see the total at the bottom is 6 million, and that doesn't make sense to me when there's a $9 million number in the middle of it too. Because I don't think, if we didn't allocate the 30-
Yeah, I can basically take that out for the moment. That was just to show, this was just to give an idea of how last year looks, because this is the first year that we're doing that tracking since the policy changed.
Because, for example, 30% law enforcement, I don't think we got a request from law enforcement to grab any of that 30% last year, or let's just say that we didn't get anything to request any of that. To me, that doesn't need to be in a stabilization fund, that just rolls back over into a fund carryover balance.
In that example, yes.
And then you get another percentage the following year.
That is exactly true for the 30% starting last year. There were law enforcement expenditures out of there, though.
Okay.
There just wasn't law enforcement coming specifically, can I please have cannabis? Things like FLOC, those readers, those license plate readers-
Okay.
-are part of this. There's 200,000 set aside for the two deputies, if they ever get down to that level and hire them, that was promised two or three years ago. And there's also sergeant and a couple other positions, at least one more, I believe, that are fully paid out of here, reimbursed. So there are some, it's just not every year coming back with a request, some of those are ongoing.
We're going to have to figure out how to change that over to a departmental coverage, because we really need to see this as a diminishing one-time fund that I just don't, I mean, we'll see. But the expectation, as we're seeing in our budget projections, is that we're going to receive less and less and less. And hopefully, we can move over any salaries that are within this into a more ongoing capability to afford it.
I understand that. I do believe that this is eventually going to turn into, once everything stabilizes, wherever that is, it's going to be considered ongoing revenue at that point. Right now, it is doing too much of-
Right.
-a curve to be considered straight.
And I guess what number I'm looking for is, what have we not set aside, such as the 500,000 for can grants of the past, where we have approved those things? 500,000 per year for the Board of Supervisors Discretionary Funds, the 1 million, all of those, what have we, what is that plus other approved and promised, this is your money because it's come to the Board and we've approved it? What's left over as far as right now, start, what's the carryover balance?
And you want to know per section, because there's not going to be a pot that is literally unallocated, because anything that is theoretically unallocated like that would go into the 30-30-10.
Well, I mean, I could do the math for the 30-30-10, but what's the overall leftover once you make sure that the numbers are filled in for retention and all that other stuff? What's the carryover balance that then falls into the percentages?
Patrick should have that information on the sheet.
Yeah, so if, this is a different sheet, this is what, looking more like a global total of all the revenue that's come in over time. And again, it was hard, because the policy was somewhat nebulous on some of this, how we wanted to go forward. But I did attempt to use this set of numbers to play with it, but I guess I'm not sure about workforce retention. That's a huge block, 3.25 million. Sheet that might actually be better, this is, this is a sheet that basically shows everything that we've done so far, trying to figure out the total that's been allocated. This includes that 3.25 million from workforce retention, and if you look at that, it's just over 10 million. So if you take it out, we're looking at something between 6 and 7 million that theoretically hasn't been allocated yet. But again, this year, we aren't going to receive any revenue until January. We had a lot of cultivators tell us that they were not going to grow, that they did not intend to operate further. But then when it actually came down to receiving the forms stating that they were no longer going to operate or they were reducing, not that many did that. I mean, I believe the total square footage taken out of circulation, the last I saw would be about 3 million, although that's not final yet. So we haven't experienced the drop off that was anticipated. I don't know whether that will remain true next year or not, though.
I have some question.
Yeah, go ahead.
And that also doesn't consider the grows that we had that have had their permits appealed, that they were growing in early activation and now they won't be. And we had a few of those over last year, and some of them pretty significant. So I'm trying to remember last year when we were talking about the allocations, and there was 30% for risk reduction, but I think I remember that we were being very conservative last year, so that ended up in stabilization?
Well, essentially, the way it was left last year, at least my understanding, was that we were starting this policy fresh. So yeah, anything from the past was sort of temporarily holding in a stabilization fund.
Right. That's what I thought.
And then this year, the other concern is that in terms of trying to forecast revenue was the tax reduction, the changeover from canopy area, which, you know, the 50% plus that 15% on average reduction, coupled with the later payment due dates, and also coupled with all the information that so many businesses are going to stop operating, which so far appears to not be as dramatic as we were anticipating. But again, we don't have those final figures.
You were going to ask another question?
And so again, I'm asking the same question, and I'm not getting an answer. Do we have 4 million dollars at this moment of fund carryover balance after everything has been filled up as far as from last year, 4 million were part of the percentages that were not spent, that carried over and now get to be split up again with the anticipation to obtain more of these funds as of January and then later in May for the first and second payment? Approximately 4 million dollars?
I'm going to partially kick that to Stephen, because my understanding, Stephen, would be, under the current policy, that's for the Board to decide. The policy is not written with, you know, a certain outcome on that. Each year, your Board can decide how to proceed with that. This is the end of the first year of this incarnation of the policy. So if your Board chooses to have that carryover as a fund balance going forward, you could, or you could choose to start each year fresh, that's sort of up to you right now, because that's the, this is the end of the first year of the policy.
I understand your question, I'm trying to figure out how to answer it. So when we're looking at 1072, when you look at the actual budget that is here, we have 5,761,000 in the budget to transfer to other departments already. That includes things like the 800,000 for water resources for Army Corps. I would, when I look at the Form 5, I do think that 4 million probably would be a good solid number to put in there, and it would be available, yes, with keeping the stabilization where it needs to be as well. The part we need to remember when you look at Budget Unit 1072, it's not just cannabis tax in there. There's also the Prop 64 grants and things. But yes, from the information I'm looking at, I would say 4 million would be good to put into the 30-30-10 for this year.
And I got the 4 million from, we have 14 million based on tax revenue, and Patrick just said 10 million potentially that is allocated or spent, and again, it's an average. And personally, I don't want to make any decisions on what we could collect, because I think that's really up in the air.
It is.
And since we're collecting all of that by the end of May, I think it's a perfect thing to wait till July to say, okay, this is what we collected, now we can spend that, let's wait till we recollect the following year. But I know that there's some major things happening in this county that require funding, and understanding what our carryover balance is, is going to be really important in the conversation that's about to happen here.
And I'll have Patrick, from what you're saying, what, the way we had it is, my understanding was, starting at the beginning of last year was fresh, anything of the 30-30-10 left would carry over, and we need to calculate that specifically for you, so you know what that number is. There is about 4 million, but which category, we'd have to let you know.
Right. Because I'm looking at the reserve, the fund summary, final recommended, and that one just gives me a big old number where this is telling me, no, that's not there, no, that's not there, no, you can't touch that because of what we've approved and agreed.
If you're looking at 1072, and you see that big reserve that is partially the Prop 64 money as well as the cultivation, but the reason why is I don't, it's not budgetarily good to have the entire amount out there, because then you're overstating our overall budget by quite a bit. So this is pared down to what might be reality, is what 1072 looks like, and that's why the reserve's there.
What might be reality?
Well, a lot of things can happen, including right now.
And also say, next month, we will have a lot more certainty. CDD has finished their inspections, as far as I understand. We'll be able to go through all those final results, dig through the files, create the actual tax bills. Hopefully, we'll have the final answer on refunds and other credits, and we'll have a clearer picture. It's just that right now, we don't have that yet about this year's revenue.
Right. And as I stated earlier, I'm not too concerned about this year's revenues. I think we need to make sure we have them before we start planning to spend it. That would be the smarter way to go, in my opinion. I think you said 13 million square feet is still what the canopy total is at this moment in time?
Yeah, the last information I have from update with CDD was that there's about 13 million authorized that would be taxable under our ordinance, but about 3 million of that was taken out of circulation. So if you think about it, that's 10 million.
Divided by 2.
Some of it was mixed light, which would charge more, but then there's that 50% reduction on top of it. So it's still going to be greatly reduced because of that reduction in tax base.
Okay.
I have a quick question for you, Patrick. Does the 10 million include the workforce funds?
It does.
Okay, thank you. The reason why I'm bringing that up is we need at least 4 million to be FBA next year to make sure that whatever revenue comes in this year, we have the money to cover the ongoing expenses that have already been approved in this budget unit, which include like FLOC. that have already been approved in this budget unit, which include like flock and a couple of those positions, which I know you want to switch over as soon as we can, but at this stage.
It's not that I want, I think we, we probably should, uh, eventually, but I don't think it can happen right now.
Not ongoing financially, one time, different.
I got the answer I was looking for.
All right, are there any other questions about the cannabis tax policy or this budget unit?
I'm not hearing any. So I think, uh, what's the next one, eighteen ninety-two?
Next up will also be Patrick, budget unit eighteen ninety-two, found on page D fifty-five.
TID.
And the requested appropriations for that one are, is one million, two hundred and sixty thousand even.
All right, so this budget unit is, uh, marketing and economic development. Uh, this encompasses all the spending related to the transient occupancy tax policy that your board has. Uh, there's the tourism improvement district that's also funded out of this unit, um, through a direct contribution. Um, but again, primarily the majority of the revenue comes from their own assessment. That's separate from the occupancy tax. Um, and again, the occupancy tax this year, the actual was of one million, uh, just over a million. So if there are any specific questions about this unit, I'm happy to answer them. If your board wishes, I can run through the policy as it stands now.
Um, so I will say this is one of the ones that I've kind of been waiting on. Um, we have a marketing and economic development department or budget unit. Um, but there's nobody working in that department. Um, we are working with the TID, which is very specific about bringing tourism. Um, but not about developing and, uh, providing economic development here directly in Lake County, meaning, uh, building houses, bringing in new, uh, industries or new retail. I know both cities have a contract with retail, uh, I forget what the right term is, but basically a contractor that reaches out to all types of retail industries out there to try to bring them into vacant, like, I'm sure that's what they're doing for the old Kmart or have been doing for the old Kmart, things like that. Um, we are not doing any of those things. We are waiting for people to come to us rather than forcing us to be a part of that conversation with people. Um, we used to have that kind of department, I hear that. We used to have that kind of department, uh, where we had staffing and we were doing economic development and that is no longer the case. And I think that we cannot wait for the organic growth to happen. I think we need to create our own methodical growth based on a strategy and based on a plan that increases our property taxes, that increases our sales tax, and that's long-term revenue that we could be seeing, but we're not because those types of things are not happening. Um, I'm looking for the ability to create a team that can do that, um, because we need it. We, we, we gave away eight million dollars to the city of Lakeport and the, uh, city of Clear Lake to help them with their housing when we should have a team that's able to do that ourselves here. Uh, and so I think that if we want to see continuous growth rather than cross our fingers and hope for growth, uh, because cannabis was good growth, but it's now plunging and it's not going to be that, uh, uh, for, for much longer than it was. I think we hit the peak and we're never going to see anything close to that. Um, and so I want to see, uh, I, I, I don't know what the amount is, but I would like to see our administrative staff come back with a, uh, budget idea on what that would look like in order to be able to carry out the, uh, goals that we would set out for them. Uh, there's so many different types of elements in economic development that can occur. Another one is film commission, uh, where people can actually be reaching out to film productions who have been struggling, especially during COVID, to find locations to be able to make their films happen. That's economic development and advertising of our communities by putting our scenery on film and our, uh, area on film that doesn't happen even close to enough. Uh, so there's just, to me, that's something that we should be very proactive in doing, uh, not waiting for it to happen, uh, without the effort of making it happen.
Mr. Piesga?
I, I think there might be a plan in place, uh, because I agree and I've had conversations with our CAO about that. And when we get to maybe your budget unit, we can discuss that further.
Yes, it's just, it can't really occur until after the first of the year. And I think that, um, uh, Bruno would like it to start sooner. So maybe we can discuss that when we get to ten, twelve and further. And I'll, I'll share with everyone what my thoughts are in moving forward on our economic development, housing strategy.
So that's housing, you're talking about business?
I'm, I'm speaking all the above.
All the above, sorry, all the above.
And as much as I like that idea, um, I think it's important. I also think, uh, I know with some businesses, they've tried to start and have implanted, got there and then came up with challenges and stopped. So, um, those are, I wouldn't say internal issues, but we're, we're working on those by stabilizing departments and ensuring some of our administrative fines, things like that are in place. Um, because that'll help stabilize, give them the opportunity to make the, or make these adjustments so that their business can flourish. And I've noticed that especially in, in my district, um, quite frequently. Um, so, but I do like the idea of having a simultaneous economic development, uh, you know, procurement type of, you know, committee or something like that, but I just wanted to highlight that, um, so.
Thank you.
So I think you definitely agree with telling our own story, you know, and, uh, building an apartment like that. I, I would definitely, but I, but I agree with, you know, mid-year budget or conversations we're going to have later a, as we look into those things because we all know what we have here, obviously marketing it out to everybody, looking for other hotels to come in, uh, to get those tax dollars. We love them to come here and visit, but then they can head back to wherever they're at. So, uh, looking at that tourism opportunity, because we've done such a great job with the ag industry, cannabis industry, everything that we're, you know, we've been building on all these years, but people don't have a place to say, when I ask you to come to Lake County, you can't come up and drink wine all day and then drive out of Lake County. So, uh, I completely agree with the conversation, what it looks like, I'm not sure, but I'd be happy to hear later on when we're talking about it. So in support of that, absolutely. Uh, some of those conversations we had with the Economic Development Task Force and how we do that, not only here at the county level, but in, cage in both cities and private business owners to be a part of that conversation as we're selling ourselves. So, yeah, I, I, I like the conversation, let's see where it goes, so.
Did you have something?
He just reminded me about number.
I guess I'll, I'll, I'll say it in public, too. There's also ARPA funds specifically for housing and department, et cetera. So there, it's not that this wouldn't be funded, it's about organizing it.
All right. See any other questions on this, Patrick?
All right, well, if there's no other questions, then thank you, board.
Thank you, Pat.
All right, next up will be budget unit ten eleven, Board of Supervisors, found on page D one. And the proposed appropriations are one million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-four. Now I'll turn it over to the CAO, Susan Parker.
Yes, could you, um, please explain before I let you go, the increase in the BOS budget and why? Which is the cannabis discretionary?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So the massive, I'll call it massive just because it's a good word. The large increase of about just over a million dollars in the appropriations for the board is all related to the remaining cannabis discretionary funds already being in budget unit ten eleven so that you guys can have your request and we can pay it instead of every time have to come back to the boards specifically for that item. And the revenue associated with that is also budgeted and that's in eighty-one, twenty-two. So it's an offset to where there is no actual general fund in your budget unit, but the appropriations do show a million dollars higher.
Does that mean, and I didn't ask it during the cannabis one, but does that mean that there was no discretionary funds added for this year?
That is, yes, there was. That's what's remaining, though. Like each district, we have an actual sheet of each district. You, your district has not spent any, but like District, um, District Four.
Some in mind, District Four has spent, yeah.
District Four has spent some, District Five has spent all but a hundred grand, so two hundred thousand. So it's the remaining balance after all the funds that have already been spent.
I think Tina did some Lightar stuff, right? I know she did that.
And she sent a hundred and sixty-five thousand over for Scotts Valley Creek project of some kind, right before she left. So that's, that is what actually is the remaining balance. It's with Water Resources currently.
Have we just not seen that?
I don't believe there's enough funding to make it fully go forward.
Okay, so that's why we, I, I was like, we don't, I don't remember seeing that.
She, yeah, that was her last wish, was to make sure that funding went over there to help fund that project. And I was told by Water Resources, it wasn't completely funded yet, but that money is going to be there.
It's like the restoration funding that's sitting there waiting for that project, right?
And as soon as they have enough, it'll move forward, yes.
Okay. Well, thank you, Chair. Uh, your board serves as executive and legislative governing body for the county of Lake. The board establishes county priorities and operating policies, adopts ordinances and ensures mandated functions are properly discharged. The board directs financial resources through the adoption of the annual county budget, selects and supervises non-elected county department heads, makes important land use decisions and provides an informed framework to prepare the county's future. Some of the accomplishments, and I'll be brief, uh, is to continue focusing on the amended Vision 2028, reimagining Lake County. You've also focused on economic development, cleaned up neighborhoods with code enforcement, fostered a business-friendly environment, pursued funding to strengthen communities, marketed Lake County as a premier California outdoor recreation destination and advocated for the county's needs through targeted political action. What isn't in the budget, which is what I want to highlight for the community's information, is that with your board's direction, we applied for three CDBG grants for one point three million for low-income loans for businesses to retain and create jobs. Currently, ten applications are under review, underwriting, or have been finalized. Industries include retail, hospitality service, ag and construction. And if all approved, forty-seven jobs will have been retained or created. There is a remaining amount of this funding for a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, so I wanted to get that out there in case there are other businesses interested in pursuing these, uh, grants or loans. Broadband, we did apply for the funding, uh, for the broadband master plan update and which the EDA recently approved, um, the Golden Connect Grant application. We also applied for half a million dollar for the broadband fiber design network and recently released the RFP for broadband, which did just close for the broadband implementation consultant. We did receive six responses and we'll be reviewing those shortly and hopefully come back to the board, uh, with a recommendation, uh, to perform those duties. Uh, federal earmarks, uh, in addition to the Kelseyville Sidewalk Project and the Full Circle Project, your board also approved for submission to Congressman Thompson for inclusion into the president's budget, the nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars for the Armory repurposing project and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Middle Creek Restoration Project. Uh, this has been referenced, but I want to reference it once more, which is the Cal OES Jump Start California Grant, the Chief Climate Resiliency Officer. That grant was worth six hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars. It's a five-year grant to award for this position. The importance of this position is that it will conduct a vulnerability assessment, which will provide data for the resiliency plan and ultimately create the general plan safety element we desperately need and hopefully the climate protection plan we also desperately need. Those are the main highlights. I wasn't going to go into the cannabis discretionary grant, but we can put that on, in a, in a press release if you'd like, since, since there's so, so many. Let's see, he already, yes?
I do want to say those CDBG grants will come up again when we, when I talk about budget unit seventeen ninety-six.
Yeah, but I presented. Oh, and I have one more thing I just have to mention and, um, you actually have a twenty percent vacancy rate.
Yes, we do. I was noticing that we're not helping our county, uh, numbers.
About the average, Dan.
It's a light moment, I just wanted to mention that. Did you have any questions or have any, uh, any additional information you'd like me to provide?
Um, I have something to bring up and I don't know, um, which budget unit it would come out of this one. Okay. So, um, looking around our board chambers, I feel like we need a little spruce up here. We've got VCR and some, a lot of that weird clock on the wall.
It's got a DVD player to it, though.
Okay, so, you know, because of COVID, the seats were taken out and I know the seats are on, on back order and will eventually get here, but as a source of pride for our county seat, I, I think we just need a little, you know, take down everything that's not necessary, old technology, maybe some paint. I'm not saying a major renovation, I'm just saying maybe some new art.
Spruce.
I think it's time, you know, I want to, when we're entertaining, um, people from out of the county or our electeds or, or we're bringing in PG&E, you know, I, I feel like this, um, this chamber's, uh, we should maybe have a little more pride in.
What amount were you looking at, Matt?
I don't know, I just kind of brought it up with Susan and I don't think it's anything major, but it's definitely needed for subjects.
Uh, other than the piece of plywood, I can see that the TV is on. I, I, I don't have many problems, I love the new additions that have been added. Um, I, I don't think it's, I, I want Abe back. I love, where's Abe? We took Abe off of that one, uh, love to have him back. Uh, but, um, I don't disagree with having more pictures, but I don't think that costs anything. I think that's working with the, uh, Art Alliance or the, uh, Lake County Art, uh, uh, I forget the exact name, it's not the Rural Arts Initiative, but there's another arts group. Um, I love all the pictures that we have all around on the courthouse and I think that would be a simple thing to just request more, uh, and maybe swap them and, and, and mix it up from time to time. I definitely have no problems with clearing out the VCR. I think that could be done, uh, today before we leave. Um, but, okay, I got a big no, and we're going to wreck everything that Sam does.
The VCR is for HR.
Okay.
Maybe we should be talking about updating HRs. Um, I, I'd love to know what exactly the cost would be.
And I did ask Susan about that.
Yes, it would, um, if we wanted to paint, replace like the clock.
That weird shelf thing that used to hold a monitor.
And this gentleman is right here.
Yeah, largely in Public Services Director at the.
I think, uh, something that might fit with this is the capital improvement, uh, plan process that has, uh, scoring criteria that will identify what, uh, you know, what, what overall benefits would, uh, uh, a, a project like this generate in, in comparison to others. So I, I think we could, we could put together a, a scope out of project, um, and then just have it ranked among others. But I'll defer to, certainly to the board. I mean, any, any improvements that we've done in this are, they're, they're not buildings and grounds or public services driven. Um, uh, you know, they're, they're, they're largely, um, you know, preferences of, of, of the board, the direction from the board and, and from county administrative office. So, um, I'll, I'll end it there and, and simply say that, that we're, we're here to help. Um, I, I will not end it there, I will say that there's, there's certainly an impact. We can't come in here without there being an impact to, um, uh, to board meetings. Uh, we, we try to fit it in, um, but it's not just Board of Supervisors meetings that occur in here. And so, uh, inevitably, to be perfectly blunt, projects in here are very challenging. Um, uh, and, and we get pulled off of other projects when we can fit the time in here. So, uh, so if we do something like that, I just, I want that to be factored in.
That's fine and, you know, a little at a time is fine, too. I know it's going to be a big difference when the chairs come, um, but I, I think it's been a long time since some of these things were addressed.
Yeah, I'll defer. Yeah, I'll defer to the Board and, and County Admin for a, you know, a project that, that they might want to develop, and I'm happy to participate in that.
I, I like the idea that you suggested, Lars, that you'd put something together, a proposal, you know, and, you know, we can weigh it against other ones. So there are some little things, though, like, you know, just was pointing, we could take that camera base down. You know, something just little, yeah, well, that's where an old camera was, right, or something? So anyway, just little things like that. I know we've done some work, this is all new, right, within the last twelve months? Even our, our stuff here, some of the carpet, our new step, you know, all those little things, the safety barrier, so don't disagree, but yeah, I'd like to see what it looks like when we do get the chairs back.
All right.
And we do got new ones coming, right?
I, to be honest, I have no idea, that, that isn't a facilities.
Okay, all right.
I ordered the chairs in March, they have finally shipped. Now, I will say they're, they're going to be similar to these blue ones, but just a different color and brand new, so fresh, because.
Oh, it's not like the old bolted-down seating?
No.
Okay.
The old, the previous, not old, the previous CAO did not want to move in that direction. Wanted it to be more flexibility with the room. So that's the kind of, ninety-five of that style of chair are on their way.
I think, too, that, just some other thoughts while we're talking about this, is things like ADA-type of stuff. And what I mean by that is someone that's watching the meeting or in the meeting, I could say anything in Spanish, but I wouldn't be good at it. So like if we had another something showing the words of what we're saying or even in, in place it onto Zoom or, or even just on this side over there, if we had another TV that did something like that, or if that makes any sense. Also, I think, I think we're, we should be okay on ADA-type of stuff, right? I mean, they can just pull like right up front or?
Well, yeah, I mean, ADA is a, is a, is a big-picture perspective, but from, from a facilities perspective of ADA, I, I would, I would suggest that, that we are compliant. Absolutely, but, but there's more than, than simple facilities issues with ADA.
We can put something together, submit it to Lars, and hopefully we can bring something back by mid-year or sooner.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do you have yours up?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I, I think a simple cleanup is an easy thing to do. I don't know about painting, but.
Well, I just, if you take all this stuff off the wall, there's going to be holes, that's, I'm, I'm not saying paint the wood or anything, it's just, that clock is going to leave a mark.
Oh, we just put some hands on that thing.
Go back to the eighties.
Hey, don't, don't.
That thing was modern back then, I'm sure.
I like it.
I, I, I'll just say that, I, I think that I've never heard a single complaint about this chamber. Can it be better? Yes. But I would prefer spending money on services and other things than necessarily just aesthetics, because I don't think it looks bad. Can it look better? Yes. So I, I'm very, in my opinion, limited to what that dollar amount would look like when something comes back.
Yeah, just, just consider when you go to the Clear Lake City Hall and the Lakeport City Hall and, and how fresh and lovely those spaces are compared to this one. And it does, your, you know, your environment impacts performance and your, you know, how it feels in a room, and you know, I'm not asking for a lot, I don't even know what it is, but I think a refresh is in order and, and you know, when you're in Clear Lake City Hall, you notice, it's, it's beautiful, it's lovely, it feels wonderful, the art is wonderful. And I'm just looking for some, some relevance and a spruce up, that's all.
I think, too, like one of the, like, I know the clock's there, and I don't, we haven't used it in a while, you know? But at the same time, it's subjective. If I'm a citizen and I'm out there and I'm looking at three minutes, you can easily assume that I'm either manipulating the clock or someone else is, even though they're not. But it's, but if there's something there that's tangible that they see, even if it's that clock or another one, they could say, okay, well, I know he stopped me for a reason, he's not, not just trying to shut me up.
Oh, you're talking about that clock?
Yeah, that.
I'm talking about this.
No, 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 not the eighties one, but that one's kind of eighties, too, though, if you think about it, so. But either way, like if, if something's there that.
That's only two years old, sir, it just is dead.
Oh, okay.
It's dead?
Apparently it doesn't work right now.
Doesn't work, then get it out of here.
That used to be the actual timer, where three minutes would show and it would count down.
Well, and that's what I'm referring to, those type of services are important for, you know, for people that can make comments and, you know, things like that. So I just, I just highlight that, if that makes any sense, so.
I'd be happy to get a new clock like that. Surprisingly enough, those ugly clocks, like two hundred dollars. But if that's what you guys would like, no problem.
Kitchen timer, we could bring the kitchen timer back.
There is one, but I, yeah. And just, just for the record, there's no kill switch either, so just.
It's a panic button.
So just, if you.
Yes, Lars, please.
We'll put something, put a, a project scope together and come back to Admin and, just, just so we can, you know, not point out every single, we'll, we'll, we'll put something together for you.
Thanks, Lars.
Thanks, Lars.
If you get a bigger TV, you'll hide a lot of that stuff.
And obviously, you know, I just want to say, we have had a revamp since I've been on the Board. When I came on in twenty seventeen, I mean, like I said, all, all of this desk, all this stuff, some of the things up behind us and, you know, so Public Services, you guys came in and did some things that were requested by Admin or whoever, I know we replaced the carpet, we did a bunch of good stuff, so, yeah, I'd be willing to look at something, but boy, we, compared to what it used to be, boy, this is modern. So from my point of view, just with some of the, the coverings and everything, so we've made a lot of changes, so.
Wasn't it a blue carpet that Jim tripped over?
Oh, there was, yeah, there was definitely some issues that we had, so anyway.
We even had the plastic glass during COVID, so.
Just want to make it very clear, our Public Service Department, they did some great in-house work that, that has upgraded us.
All right. There's no more questions on that or comments that, oh, Supervisor Spocky.
I'd like to move on. We said we would wait until the administrative budget in order to discuss economic development, housing development, and just kind of want to open it up with, I've already made my statements, but I believe CAO Parker wanted to at least provide some words, so.
Would you like me just to begin there? Okay.
It's a great segue.
How do you like that? Well, I've been given this a lot of thought, especially once Patrick will be moving up to the second floor. And so my thought was that we would convert his position and Ms. Scully's former position into a full DCAO. And my thought then was that it would be for economic development and housing strategy. But I think what we really need is, is, that person would be here, but if you're talking about a team, because you need worker bees, you need those who can, who can complete or understand underwriting for loans, grants, actually assessments of housing needs, assessments of economic needs, doing the outreach, going to the conferences, searching or seeking out, or even understanding what it takes to attract a business as far as foot traffic, vehicular traffic, the amenities that you're willing to offer, what the capacity, what, what, when you draw from a certain area, what they're willing to pay, what they're looking for. I mean, that, that does take a team to develop that type of plan. So that was my initial thought, and then Bruno and I talked, and I said, I think we do need more. I was going to rely heavily on consultants, but I think we need to also have a really strong team internally to liaison with the local businesses, the departments, and build that cohesive economic development team that works looking at maybe, in order to promote housing, to look at water and sewer hookups. I'm not going to say too much more than that, because I know she's, her eyebrow will raise. Or look at ways, ways we can incentivize not only investment, but reinvestment in our community and what, what would that look like? So you have this, I always compare it to a cog. You have this wheel, there's a center, and your focus is the economic development, but within that is parks and rec, arts and culture, businesses, retention, attraction, school systems. I mean, I'm making, I'm putting out the broader thing, but what we need to do is understand that whole cog of bringing economic development and retaining it into our community. But you need a dedicated group to do it, someone that, when they, you know, when they arrive here at eight, when they leave here, whenever that is, that's their focus. They're not being pulled off to do the armory swap, Collier Avenue, like me. And all those other projects, digitizing records. I mean, we do, I mean, we interact so much with all these different departments and all these projects, but it, it, I think it, for me, it feels it takes, takes away from us focusing on, what I do know is a priority for this Board, which is economic development for our community. And there's just different elements of it. We're just starting with the broadband, those are the first steps. It's not going to be an overnight fix, but it's a start. And then once we, with your approval, of course, and direction, start really focusing on housing, workforce housing, would be an area that I would like to focus on, but of course, it would be the Board, but we won't know until we do an assessment, what do we have, what's our inventory to work with? What land do we have to work with? What are the impediments to doing that housing? And then finding partners. You know, development doesn't necessarily recognize that line between a city and a county. So it's really good when you start thinking about this, the synergy between what they're doing and what we're doing, and the partnerships that you need in order to succeed. So transportation's another element of economic development. So those are my thoughts. I don't have a graph to show you yet, but again, I think that's, I think that's something. Once we fill Stephen's position on the fiscal side, then we'll have more capacity to actually develop all this, you know, a housing strategic plan and an economic strategic plan. Also, funding or even a housing trust fund. There's a lot of things that we can do, but we, it needs to be a focus. Instead of being reactive to what has presented itself, we need to be aggressive, proactive, and grab it. That's just my thought or my opinion. It's just what I've done before. I'm not very patient, I'm not very patient, I'd rather go out and, and see what I, we can bring in.
Another description of, of work, and this may go in ten fourteen, or it probably should have went in the first budget that was even started in this whole thing, is Public Request Act, how much energy and, and work does the department spend on that? I know the County Council deals with, and actually, I should have asked every single director how much manpower has been spent on that in comparative to like project development. I know at times, some directors have told me the fact that they've spent that time on there, they weren't able to complete anything else.
It's significant, and, and when you're looking through, because now it includes emails. And so you get thousands of emails that you have to go through to make sure there's no attorney-client privilege or medical information. You just, you just can't press a button and print up all the emails related to that subject. You have to go through them all, and then you have to, if, because we're not fully digitized, you have to go through files. If they haven't scanned it, you have to hand, you know, go through the file, it just takes a lot of time.
Redact? Or is that in coordination with recorders redacting, or is that something totally different? No?
No, we, yeah, it's.
Sorry. That's all I had about that.
No, but it is a, and I can, just from my own interaction and dealing with it, I mean, in my previous job, I may get five, ten a year. Here it's five, ten a week, it feels like, so.
Supervisor Spocky?
So I have a question for Mr. Carter. We have approximately one thousand forty, one hundred forty? What is it?
Overall FTEs?
Uh, ten sixty is what I see, ten sixty point six.
Not bodies, uh, what, ten fifty-five, sixty point six?
Okay, close, sorry, ten fifty-five point sixty. We have.
Three limited terms, so ten fifty-eight.
Okay, thank you. We have, from my Monday report that I received from Human Resources, a twenty-one percent vacancy rate. We've been saying twenty, twenty-one, sometimes all the way up to twenty-five since I got here four years ago. We've done a raise, a hefty raise, two years ago, just about. It started, I believe, in November of twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty. And then we did another one, not as large, but still another increase, a decent increase, last year that again started in November twenty twenty-one. We're still at that same level. And so one of the reasons I say that is we're struggling to make headway. I think housing is a part of that issue. I don't know too many new incoming employees that I've talked to that have not complained about the issues of finding housing. So I think that, that is why I want to quickly move forward on that rather than wait until midterm, because then that means we approve it on February at the very latest, and then it takes time to get it started. Just because it's approved today doesn't mean it's happening tomorrow, but at least it makes it available and eligible for us to start it when the ability to happens. Another reason I bring this up is, and this is a question, again, directed towards Mr. Carter. If we hired all one thousand fifty-eight, fifty-nine, whatever it was that you said, point six, we had a lot of carryover last year, and it looks to me, when I look through all of the budgets, that there's a lot of borrowing from the carryovers to ensure that we're full on our salaries and able to make that happen. We use the carryover versus using the cannabis money, because we did use the cannabis money on the previous half a year to fulfill the requirements of the budget for salaries. So can we afford to hire a hundred percent of our FTEs with our ongoing revenues that we have currently?
So that is not a simple yes-no question, but what I will say is, yes. And the, that, what that means, though, is our ongoing revenues do cover all of those positions being filled. But that means that there won't be any extra carryover or FBA for the next year to do special projects. So there is technically right about flush. That's where, in the beginning, I presented where how much one-time money was involved. That brings it down to structurally balanced. And to be structurally balanced, all of those positions have to be budgeted for with ongoing revenue. Now, we know that they aren't always, there's quite a few not filled. That would be a slippery slope to where, because we're so even, it would start to decline over time.
But it's tight.
Very, very tight.
And last time in June, you talked about potentially in three years, if we keep spending the way we are with, and we're adding positions, that we may have an issue if cannabis doesn't continue to accrue, and.
Correct, and the main reason for that is because any of the extras other than staff start to decline to where you can't buy that extra vehicle or anything along those capital project lines, because that is what is purchased with the one-time money that would simply go away because everything is utilized for positions and just staying afloat with services and supplies. That's the kind of thing that would go away.
Right, thank you. And so the reason I bring it up is I want us to be able to progress and do better. I want us to not have that situation where we're tight. I think economic development is of the utmost importance, but how do we even build the team now? Again, vacancy rates have remained the same, they're about twenty-one percent. We did something after the first salary increases, which I completely agree with, but in hindsight, I think it was partially right, partially wrong. We cut out the idea that we're in a fiscal crisis management plan, because it didn't make sense. We gave a large salary increase, which was a necessary thing to do for retention and for being even with the rest of our surrounding counties, but we didn't finish out our plan. And part of that plan was to reduce our position allocation, not to lay anybody off, but to reduce the open vacancy allocations that we have. If we do that now, that would give us not only a little bit more wiggle room, but the ability to build that department or division or whatever it is to be able to say, look, it's budgeted, it makes sense, and it's also to help us grow our future revenues. And so that is what I'd like to offer to the Board is to, I don't have anything specific, because I think it needs to be done methodically, but to look at a reduction. I don't know if that's a two percent reduction, a five percent reduction. but to look at a reduction, I don't know if that's a 2% reduction, a 5% reduction. Again, only looking at the open vacancies and which ones historically have been constantly vacant. We just heard today that, granted, it was a, not a general fund budget that we were looking at, which was public health, that right now we're not looking to fill those positions. What, what we need to have a better understanding of, if we have open positions that we're not looking to fill in their general fund or historically we're just struggling to get them filled in, do we have an opportunity where that final step of the fiscal crisis management plan that we didn't take can happen, provide us the level of revenue that we need to be able to build that department? And then maybe three months from now, we can be flying for the positions to be able to hire the people that can get those things started. So that's my thought process. And what I would like to see, just because that right there is revenue generation, because that's what that specific division, which I think it should be a division, not a department, would be focused on constantly.
Yes, I do, I agree, actually agree with Bruno in it being a division. I think it should be part of admin. And the reason being is CDD, normally you would have your economic development and your CDD group together. However, I don't think CDD has that capacity now or will have it in the near future. It would, I think it's years out. Yeah, so I think that it, the great, the good fit would be in the admin office, unless Lars volunteers for another division. So yes, that, that's my opinion now. I'll also defer to-
Steven.
Well, I do also want to make sure that it is clear again that there is funding through at least the end of 2024 to where it wouldn't even touch our ongoing revenue until that point in time. Because we have so much set aside in ARPA, it can easily pay for two, three positions a year through that time period with supplies even, if that is the wish of the board. We wouldn't have any general fund draw until at that point.
And the reason I look at that is that it, that would be almost like a one-year, one-time with the amount I think that we set aside for that.
In ARPA?
Yeah.
So the ARPA is about 2 million set aside for that and it goes through-
For housing?
No, it's for, yeah, Housing Department slash Contract.
I thought it was like 700.
I will look it up right this second.
I could be absolutely mistaken, most likely you are right.
I'm not going there until I see it.
Just like to make a comment too, you know, as we move forward with that, you know, I definitely think it is something that we need to continue the conversation with. I think the ARPA funds too, I think realistically that it will be extended out. I, I know 2024 is the deadline, it's, it's right around the corner. I know that most agencies are kind of looking at it like that too, you know, for the future. So almost everything that's come out, whether it's CARESAC money, everything, there's been some type of extension each time those, those deadlines are coming down. So, you know, it could be 2026 realistically or someone, something like that in that, in that area. I know we had that conversation too, and we're just talking, you're just talking general fund positions, right? Just general fund positions is all you're talking about. Because I know you were talking about, you know, public, different things. So getting that analysis, yeah, we did have that discussion on that big portion about, but we also heard from a lot of our, you know, almost every director of, you know, that once you let that position go, it may never come back. And I know that's something we balance. We want to make sure that we're not only promoting as we did with the raises and other things, but we're also supporting our directors and looking that hopefully the vision is to fill them. But I, but I think it would be fiscally responsible for us to look at that at mid-year budget, say, hey, you know, five, 10 or 15, because I was trying to figure that out in my mind. Is it a 50% reduction what we were anticipating during our budget crisis plan that we had? And I'm using the wrong noun now, fiscal crisis plan. So I definitely think that conversation needs to go because if we keep trying to climb that hill and we ain't getting nowhere, then we need to make some adjustments and bring those folks on board that we can and create some other divisions, just as you brought up Supervisor Spatia, to help us move forward. So I think mid-year, from my point, is where that's at. One other thing I'm looking at too, by then, we've got five of us having this conversation. So to look at that maybe with some fresh new eyes, whoever ends up being in that District Four position.
So definitely before mid-year, we can look at, and it would actually have to be on a monthly basis because the positions change that often. Where I can get the, my staff can get the report from HR, like the report that Supervisor Spatia is working off of right now. We are structurally sound and right now. So it's a matter of because we can't fill the 20%, it turns into FBA for the next year. And is that relatively what we're trying to cut down on?
I see it as money that's trapped.
As FBA for the next year for one-time expenses like trucks.
Of course, you can't eliminate all, but-
Yeah. One more comment-
Go ahead, go ahead.
On marketing and economic development.
I'm beginning to make it more complicated.
Yeah, so with the two cities too, and I think they have, they are both using that marketing firm. I think it may be the same one, it may, may not be. But looking at that, I, I think any energy being put into the counties through both the cities, we should, yeah, I, I just think we should all do it. We're not always going to agree on everything, not saying that. But working together and using that synergy, I mean, you know, it just, that makes sense. And I don't know the name of the group, but I do know there's that group out there. We've seen some of the studies or at least read it in the newspaper on how they're moving forward to look at those things. As you can tell, my, my big push is for hotel rooms. You know, around the lake to really do that, because that is just going to take that next step for our marketing and tourism. And the industries we have already built here in the county that just need, you know, to need to keep them from 24-hour visit to a 48 or 72-hour visit, that's just going to benefit everybody.
Agreed.
So I'm going to complicate this conversation by bringing up the benefits that we have for employees and the healthcare that is likely contributing to this. Because if you're, you know, we want to encourage single people to move here, start, start their family. The minute they get married, it costs them a lot of money if they're going to carry them on their insurance. And then the minute they have a child, they're likely looking for another job. And I don't know if I'm the only one here that has my family on the health plan, but with the increases going up 10%, it's going to cost me $1,500 a month. And that's 30% of my gross salary. And, you know, I just give myself as an example, you know, I, I, we have to do better for our staff. I did speak with HR. Actually, that's one of the things that the correctional officers put. And I reached out to Sheriff Martin and, and texted him about it during lunch. That's one of the things the correctional officers cited as well during their exit interviews, is the insurance, they don't have 80/20. So I, you know, we've done the raises, we're on a good track. But I think this is the part of the conversation where we have to continue that work and that investment and, in our people and, and how do we get them to stay here and, you know, be covered and, and not have this job be a burden for them and their families.
You, you mean a financial burden?
A financial burden, yeah.
And that's customary, not only just us, it's, I know the fire districts are dealing with the same thing. It's a Lake County issue. Soon as they have a family, they're gone, especially in this area because of our benefits.
Well, and our $1,000 stipend with the increases this year is barely covering, covering an individual. So we have a 10% increase or pretty much any increase next year, the individuals are going to have to start paying too.
Well, my, my, my only comment is that I, I, yes, we want to help, but I don't know that this conversation should be done publicly just because that's a negotiating term.
Well, I think we give direction to have staff look at it more, look into it more. It's no, it's, we're not going to solve it right now.
Don't, don't we have a committee? Insurance committee?
I do know that this item will be added to the department heads quarterly just for discussion amongst the department heads.
Are you on the insurance?
Yeah, I'm on the insurance committee and, uh, what's the other committee? Class and Comp or- CCR, yeah. Both those. And I know these conversations are always ongoing, but absolutely. And, and, and we did the conversations about getting the raises and stuff. So this is just the continuation. So I, I completely agree with the insurance costs of that admin coming back, you know, CEO coming back and looking at these opportunities because, yeah, what a challenge. And it's not only us, it's the school, it's everywhere. It's the school districts, everyone that's dealing with this, the housing and the benefits. I mean, those are the huge things for recruitment, retention and other opportunities for everyone. So yeah, I'm on board with that conversation of what is realistic. But we know, we did make some changes in the past that got us to that $1,000. And yeah, we need to have a further conversation.
I knew you wanted that.
If you would humor me for a moment and I'll make a couple of comments. Going back to your metrics and your data on your allocated positions, when you're looking at those, another component you need to look at on that, it's not just that vacancy rate, it's the value of those individual positions. So I'm going to give you some examples of when you look at a 20% vacancy rate. When I look at your appropriations, what you actually, and what you actually spent for those positions, you're, you, last year it was, the year we just closed, 7% was left on the table, so to speak. So you're not at a 20%, you were at 7% of what your actual costs were. So you have to look at what it really costs you for those. So one position is not equal to the other. So just wanted to throw that out. That's something, the county as a whole, you know, the lowest I've ever seen us is like at 89% of appropriations spent. So 11% was left. What happens with these appropriations and what happens throughout the year is departments move money around. They use it in other ways. So they are not coming back and asking for additional money, but they're using it in other ways. So I think you have to also look at that. And I have the, the metrics on that if you ever want to see it, Supervisor Spatia.
More numbers.
The other thing is on the insurance. I'll just add that when you go to an 80/20, what you do to your single people is then they pay more. And when I look at an 80/20, what we're currently doing, a, a single person's going to go from paying $60 to paying 212. So you're going to impact that majority of your folks right off the bat. And when I do back-of-the-napkin math on this, it's about a $2 million ongoing that I would estimate. And that's a minimum. And that's ongoing. So those are some numbers I just wanted to share.
Yeah, but we've got 10 or 11% of our staff with families on plans. That, that's, that's pretty low. If we want to be an environment where we can, you know, offer employment that supports families, that, that's low. And I'll just use myself as an example again. We, my husband's self-employed, so we don't have another option. So a lot of people, their spouses, you can get insurance another way. But there's, there's other staff that are in this situation too, because your employer is offering low-cost healthcare. That takes away any other options that you can go, go out and find comparable healthcare. So it's, it's a difficult situation.
I, I, I don't mind the conversation. I think that it's important that our employees get taken care of, but I, I am absolutely worried about what that number's going to look like when it comes back. But if we don't have the conversation, we won't know exactly what we're looking at. But yeah, I, I, I agree with Ms. Sederlin that it's probably going to be something large and that that's, actually comes back to why exactly we need to build this economic development thing.
If I could, simply because I'm sitting here, Lars, you're the Public Services Director. I'll just add one other department head's perspective, just because yesterday I sat with, with staff from one of my divisions and had this exact conversation, received this exact, those exact complaints. And, and I'm glad to hear that we will be, as I knew, that we would be discussing it at the department head level because it's important. It, it's, there's a huge impact at, at staff who, you know, one other example, one individual who told me he's, he's better off as an extra help individual without benefits because of what he could get with Covered California than he is as a permanent employee working here with the benefits. So that's, that's just, that's sad to hear. So I, I, I don't say that to, you know, beat it down. I, I, I say it to, to say that I'm happy to hear that, that it's on the table for discussion. So thank you.
Thank you, Lars. Steven.
And I would also like to say that is a very large number where it would be just back-of-the-napkin, at least $2 million. We do not currently have $2 million ongoing available, so there would have to be something else cut. Just have to keep that in mind, whether it be vacancies like we've been talking about or something else. So it has to be a give-take and that's part of the conversation. Just want that to be in your head as well.
Guess we're not painting. Every penny counts.
Were there any other questions on this?
Hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Were you going to say something else on this?
Yeah, I just want to offer one other suggestion for change on our, the, I, I want to go back to the Board of Supervisors budget. It's been a conversation that we've been having over at PEG TV. There's been a lot of requests for help from town halls to do videos, to provide sometimes. I know that Sam, Mr. Houston, goes out to some of these town halls in order to do the videography. And he's not always able to do so, but we do have the opportunity to create transparency and to create a more robust system within our town halls. And I say this without the experience because I don't have a town hall, even though I've been thinking about creating one for District Two to have the ability to voice their concerns about county issues rather than city issues. But I was looking to see if there was a way to provide a budget to each town hall so they can spend it on correspondence with the community, whether that's a survey or an invitation, some kind of outreach, and also the possibility for buying new equipment. I've been to, sorry, Chair Crandall, but I've been to some of Chair Crandall's venues and the PA system was more than desirable, less than desirable. I was being sarcastic, maybe I should have been specific. And so I think that having those opportunities, granted with the policy on exactly what it can be spent on and what it can't be spent on, the tracking, so that we can make sure that it is appropriately used. But I would like to offer that each town hall have the ability to have $5,000 each per year to be able to be a more robust body for that specific community.
And I know that we talked with Sam about this and I didn't know it was something like that. I thought it was more along the lines as they were going to work to buy the equipment and we were going to provide that amount that you're talking about-
Training is always possible.
To, to pay for the position for someone to do that. I also had a contingency of looking at, because I have three and I don't know if everyone wants to use the same thing as an extra help that would cover the timeframe during that time. So that's just a contingency for me. But I, I do, we did have the discussion and then I had the discussion with Sam as well, so, yeah. Next chair.
Yeah, I, I think offering the municipal advisory council is the service where they don't have to go and purchase equipment, where, where, where someone could come and do that service for them. And it could be a rotating person who went to all the different municipal advisory councils. I'm, I, I don't know if Middletown math is the same, but they were very adamant about not having money for a long time.
They're still the same.
Okay, so every municipal advisory council is different. And so I think if we were going to do something like this, it would be providing that service so that each meeting could be broadcast in the same way and there's consistency there. But I think there's going to be a lot of oversight issues if we just hand the money and like math, we may not be prepared for it, may not want it. I don't know, that's my thought on that.
That's exactly what we were just discussing as well. How, how could even possibly happen?
And so just as an offer, because I was trying to make it more open for what the needs could be, but if it's really just about the videography and the transparency and the- the access to these meetings, maybe an M O U with PEG TV is something that I can bring back to the board for discussion.
That's what I thought we talked about a while back with Sam, but Sam, yeah, could please come up and, and help us with this. The other thing was, is I was with my, with my discussion and thought was also to have someone that helps them coordinate. These are volunteers. So, and I know Carolyn and I know Johanna and I know Kimberly and Shannon, they helped them, you know, but along with everything else. And so that's why I was looking at also the extra help or the idea that Sam had about, you know, working on that. So it was just someone that would help as well. And then rather than me being the guy that does Zoom and having to, there was someone that can come and coordinate that, but I'll let Sam go ahead.
Well, okay, Sam Houston, I'm just a videographer here. What the, the original proposal was, one is that PEG has, has a capital budget, but they don't, they do not have an operating budget. But they are, PEG is, is one of their roles is to supply content, governmental content, public content, education content. So what would, what, and the communities around here, we have seen and we have proven evidence with, with how our, how the county has used social media to engage the community so that there is not this diversity like there was. It has, it has subsided considerably. And part of that is because we have, we have developed more transparency. And so allowing the, or having that opportunity for the communities to be able to engage in their, in their town halls and Cobb has, has, at least Elliot and those, the people there have really asked if we could do something because, and from what my experience of the other town halls, you know, I'll bring this back together, but I just think that there's this foundation needs to be seen first, that having an, an organized way that they can communicate their meetings to their, or to their members, and to be able to have that voice is really important. We've seen that because of the, just because the community, Lake County is just, it's, as somebody said the other day, there's this huge lake and there's all these areas around the lake, but there's no way to bring that back. Well, having this town hall system in place so that all the town halls, but, and I'll explain that I think it can be even more than that, can have this system in place that is operated by PEG, that is owned by PEG. And they, this could be a way to help not only PEG Television, it can also be a way to help our Lake County community. And so that was the premise of this. And so being able, if there is a way that a PEG could be paid as an independent contractor or we could.
Sam, I, I feel like we're verging onto a agenda item that's not on the agenda.
Right, okay.
I think this needs to come back as an agenda item for a deeper discussion. In order for us to look at the details rather than speaking budget-wise right now.
Right.
Because we're not talking specific dollars at this moment. We're going into the details of what a service would look like. So I think that's what I'll do is I'll bring this back as an agenda item, make sure that it's eligible for us to really discuss in depth and for the public to also engage in that discussion as well, which could include.
I was interested in hearing you wrap it up.
I'm sorry. No, well, no, the, the only, the thing is, is if we could do this, if there is a way to do this and add it, and add it as an item to the budget for, for the county to be able to fund part of it, I don't think that they should fund all of it, then I think that would be, that could be very useful. I think the, my vision of it is that the towns or the, the cities involved should also be participating in it as well, if they want to, if they want that kind of service. Because I see it not just town halls, I see it other, I see other items, city council or schools, school board meetings, things like that. So I see it as a little bit broader than that. So, okay, so I'll end it with that.
Thank you, Sam. And then I think, did you ever come up to?
Nope.
Good. I'm sorry I didn't.
I'll wait for it to come back, some other item, not today.
Yeah, I think some administrative support. I'd like to see a page where we can consistently have the, a webpage where we consistently have agendas and minutes posted. I know not all.
It's up to the advisory boards to work with.
To get them, yeah, to bring them in.
Get with the clerk and to put their agendas and to get the minutes. I mean, just be very clear. The Midtown, every town hall makes very clear, county does run this. First thing was told when I come on the board. They still have that, you know, that conversation. So I don't know what's going on in your guys', but at least I'm very clear and, you know, some, my take it is, you're not going to tell us what to do. This is a community area, our boundaries are drawn, you know, so very clear at math, county doesn't run this. This is an advisory committee of the community.
Well, I, they may have needs from time to time, administrative needs, and, you know, they are all volunteers, so if they did have those needs.
Right.
Do, do your town halls need, have those needs?
Well, there's just, and as has been stated, there's been complaints about the sound quality, especially with Zoom. And if that was to ever go away, the sound system would be an ideal thing to have and then some entity like them or another situation where they can just record the meetings at where they're there. There is a website right now that on our, on our, I think it's boards and committees and whatnot, each town hall does have a space where they can post their agendas and minutes. There's also different pages that they make for their social media as well, and they work with the staff to get those up. So that's, that's, all I was looking at is something that served, someone that served all six if need be, and if some didn't want it, they don't need it. It's, it's just, but it's upon, it's upon that. But, but again, this could be something we talk about later.
Any other questions on these first two items?
Well, there's also a hand up, but before the, I call on the hand, I realize it's probably about the Public Request Act, and I may have, it may have sounded like I was being, I wasn't being negative about it. I was actually commenting about the amount of work it takes and more or less accentuating that it might be a, a good plan to have something in place to take care of that. That way it doesn't affect staff and whatnot, but I'll go ahead and open it up for Betsy, if you'd like to unmute and.
That's the way I understood it. It's very time consuming.
Mr. Chair, thank you Board of Supervisors, thank you all of the administrative staff. You have covered so much material since the beginning of this item that I've almost lost track of the several different parts that I wanted to ask about or comment on. But going back to the very beginning where you were talking about public services and the amount of time that it takes for you to handle those, I wonder, this is question number one, how many actual formal complaints have you received using the administrative complaint system that was put in place a couple of years ago? I mean, real solid complaints that you had to devote more than a minute or two of telephone answering time, you know, that kind of thing?
I think all of them, more than a minute.
A lot. We respond.
Okay, this is a real, you, all, all of you, I believe, know that I am probably the most dedicated public citizen who tries very hard to keep up with all of your meetings and all of the town halls and all of the other things going on except for the school boards. But, but when you're talking about, you know, the burden on your government to serve the public, you have no idea how, how insulting that is, because that's what we count on is your help, and we come to you in good faith for that. To skip over that, I just want to mention something about the hacking and economic development issue. This county, I've watched it for 22 years now, go through iteration after iteration after iteration of how we should develop more economic development assistance programs, and we go through that constantly. In the housing element of this county's general plan, there are many areas where we have identified locations to do infill, and infill is the preferred development strategy. I think you should concentrate on that and not go into the new, you know, attraction business. We have enough of that, we have a chamber of commerce for that. But the last thing I want to talk about is that, is that public support for the town Municipal advisory councils are formed under state statutory regulations, and they have to be approved of and supported by the Board of Supervisors. And I would like to say that I believe you would invest yourself wisely if you put a little bit of time and money into providing services for all of those committees, boards and commissions that you create. The volunteers have to take responsibility for all of their own records, because there isn't any place that those records are kept. With the digitization of everything, I think that could be easily remedied, but you owe it to these commissions, boards and committees. They're trying to do a public service for you, and I believe they deserve a whole lot better support. And thank you for letting me speak my mind.
Thank you, Betsy. And just wanted to add to the, was not trying to say it's a burden. I mentioned that before it was spoken. The other thing I'd like to say is there are some people that purposely conduct a Freedom of Information Act type of request to slow down the process of things. And so that is frustrating, even though it is something we need to do to serve the public. And I'm only saying that because it does happen frequently. So I don't know if someone else has anything or.
And the complaint process is more than just a few minutes. It, it's important, but it, it is time consuming and I, just an acknowledgement of that process, that it is, it is more than just a few minutes of anyone's time. It's an investigation really that goes to the department head, then there's a response. So it's, it's important, but it's, it's not something that can be handled very quickly and easily.
Right. My, my thought to bring it up was just to think about, develop an idea how to plan for it, to provide that service, regardless of its purpose driven or if it's really trying to find out information like stated by Betsy, because that is important, so. I don't have anything else to add, it, that's the last public comment. Supervisor Simon. I want to make it very clear that, you know, the municipal advisory committees, I greatly appreciate all the volunteer works there, attend the meetings every month, and it's our job to carry messages forward on projects they want to bring into our communities as we're moving forward. Heck, now we even have people from other areas coming to our area town halls and, you know, those types of things, but, you know, they're, they're put together to communicate for myself, to bring messages to the board that are in our, our district as we do that. I greatly appreciate with the cleanup days, garbage, all the events that happen, you know, the movies in the park, all these things that go on, completely support our math, our Middletown Area Town Hall, at least in my district, and I hear everybody else attending the meetings too, as we're going forward. Ain't always got easy answers for them, but being available, being there to support them, I clearly do that. So I want to make that very clear. As a supervisor, that's one meeting I make sure to attend. If I can't, I do communicate with them on that, but completely support, because that's how we're going to get something done in the park. That's how we're going to get Trailside Park back. That's how we're going to get multi-use pad, that, all these things that they have already done at his municipal area town hall, at least on, in Middletown for the 29 corridor study, you know, all these other things have been done back in 13, 14, 12, you know, just great work. So I appreciate everything they do. And yeah, there are a lot of little things we could always support them on, but I think there's different areas. That's why the cannabis discretionary funds for our areas, I think is so important, because there's ways to support them in things where we don't have to wait for the budget, because being on the board since I've been here for six years, going on six years now, you go to apartment, nope, can't, no funds. Okay, well, I do have the funds. So let's talk about how we help our community specifically for community advantage opportunities there. So, you know, I just, I just want to say that. As far as supporting advisory councils, I definitely make that a priority.
I agree. That is where the organic work happens in our community, and I started by developing a municipal advisory council, and so I, I understand the workload, I appreciate every single one of those volunteers that do it. And you're right, the cannabis funds is the fastest way that we can support them. And I've, I've funneled money in for mailings, when they, when they need help sending out a flyer, I got it for them. I can get that really quickly. If they need, if they're firewise neighborhoods, need looking up addresses, guess who's doing it for them? I'll do whatever they want. You know, $10,000 just to the Calvary Councils, forced advisory, forest stewardship committee for the air curtain burner that goes through South Lake Fire Protection District, those are all complicated projects. But if you have some money for them when they ask and we can get it to them quickly, that's how we support them, and that's how that work gets done quickly. And, and, and it is not something that you can just say that you want built. You know, like Kelseyville, I would love for Kelseyville to have a municipal advisory council, but it has to be organic. They have to build it themselves and then we support them. It doesn't work any other way.
Right. Well, and that's, it's good when you have one. I have three, and now I'm taking care of Scotts Valley too, so just adding that to the discussion there. But yes, they have their growing pains as well. A lot of them are getting past that, and these meetings are starting to go more smoother, and that's a good thing. But every government or any entity or committee has growing pains, and so just want to make sure, support them so that the way they can move forward. And I hear you all loud and clear, we'll move forward with, with the next discussion item.
That's settling it.
Unless you had something else.
I just have a question of C O Parker. We did talk about economic development, there was some agreeance, there was some mention of the $2 million in ARPA. Just kind of curious what a timeline might look like, or if maybe we're coming back with a discussion in the near future to discuss what that timeline might look like. Just kind of wanted to know what the next step was, rather than saying, okay, we talked about it and then walk away, because I'm not sure as to what the next step is. I know I heard mid, mid-year budget, but I also wanted to kind of get a little better idea.
Well, my thought is that if, if we ever finish this hearing, is that, is that I would bring it back probably mid-October for discussion amongst the board, possible options to move forward and funding options.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So Mr. Chair, I believe you've gone through the public comment portion of this. I move to approve.
Oh, we still have more.
We have more.
We're just.
A lot more.
Oh, no, we have like 10 more.
We've only done three.
I was going.
The next one up is budget unit 1014, clerk of the board, and I'll switch it straight to the.
Great, thank you very much. Clerk, the clerk of the board is a statutory, statutory officer responsible to maintain the official records of the Board of Supervisors, prepare the board's agenda, take minutes at each board meeting, maintain the county ordinance code, publish legal notices mandated for many types of board hearings, and perform many related duties. The clerk of the board assists all county departments and extensively interacts with county staff and other governmental and non-governmental agencies and members of the general public. The amount of this fund is 219, 833. Am I correct?
No.
Well, that's what I got. 221, 533. There was little or no change, and before I go on to the next item, unless, if there's questions, is that I would like to thank all of our staff and admin and H R for their dedication and support, not only to this board, but to each other and all the other departments before we move on, before I forget. So are there any questions regarding this item?
Moving on. Next one up is budget unit 2111, three ones, 2111, found on page D 77. And this is public defender.
Yep, thank you Chair, thank you Steven. Pursuant to the state and federal law, legal representation must be provided to all indigent defendants who, in the opinion of the court, do not have the financial resources to retain the services of a private attorney. In addition to the legal proceedings, this budget unit also funds court-ordered services to provide ancillary services, including expert witnesses, verbatim transcription, interpreter services, polygraph testing, psychological evaluation. polygraph testing, psychological evaluations, forensic testing, and the cost of court appointed attorneys that are legally mandated when the contract public defenders cannot serve because they have a conflict of interest in the case. This, go back, this recommended budget is 2,082 and $200. I'm sorry for laughing. I'm trying to do this expeditiously. The contract will terminate this December. It is a contract for $135,000 monthly flat fee and the contract amount is $1,620,000. I do have an update. As you may recall, the board approved funding for an analysis of how we provide indigent services. I hope to bring that before the board with options in October also.
Sorry to have a question. I know that we've been told this is never ending. Is the budget anticipating whatever changes those options may offer us? Because I have a feeling this is kind of going to be like jail medical.
Depending on the option that this board chooses, it may have some impact, additional impact to the budget.
Okay, thank you.
However, again, this is one of those, just like jail medical is unfunded mandate.
Yeah.
I just can't give you the amount. I don't know yet.
I have a bad joke, but I'll just keep it to myself.
Stephen.
Moving on. Budget unit 71778 capital projects. This budget unit is utilized for the purposes of appropriating capital projects that for general fund purposes. Mainly, it's just the general funds capital, capital asset list that public services is mainly involved with. So that's all I'm going to say for that one, other than list the main capital assets because that's where all the funding is. Lars, is there any one you specifically want to talk about other?
There is quite a few.
So, yeah, Lars, you're in public services director and that this budget unit as well as 1781 is primarily while I'm here, though I'm glad that I have been here. You know, really, I didn't come with any presentation for these projects. I'm happy to.
Yeah.
But I'll just say that a variety of these are already in progress because during recommended budget hearings, you gave advance authorization for those. And that's about half of these. So I will, I'll just defer to the board to ask any questions and happy to to attempt to answer those. Some of those, I may not have the specific details on the status of each project, but on a high level, I certainly have an awareness of it.
The main thing here is there's a ton of projects that aren't exactly in Lars's budget. They're here, but there's still public services, quite a few of them.
Right, like Blue Seren Harbor. And we've already given updates about that to the town hall. It's basically the same. So.
Which that that is the only one that is not in 1778.
Oh, it's in 1781, sorry.
So if we want to come back to that.
So I thought you were talking about 1781.
Understood.
So while we're going there, budget unit 1781 is special projects for the general fund where if it doesn't fit in any other department or if the board has a special project that they want to move forward, that's the kind of item that would be budgeted here. And this is mostly funded actually by FBA. There's no real ongoing expenses in here.
Um, yeah, I have something for this project or for this budget unit. And this is, so I use my discretionary money to engage with Tuckman Geospatial for building an application to do a LiDAR, new LiDAR data set for our county. The last data set that we had was in 2016, right after the valley fire. So ours is, we're in need of an updated LiDAR data set. So Tuckman and Mark Tuckman and Cass Green have been engaged to prepare the application and they're going to USGS. And USGS wants a co-funding commitment of 145,000 because this is a $600,000 project. And what we're doing, and sorry Supervisor Simon, this was at Risk Correction Authority on Monday, preparing the application, they want the commitment. There's a commitment. If USGS sees a commitment, then we have a higher likelihood of getting the funding from them. Now, we're writing, Clerk is going to write in their next fire protection grant or forest health grant. I'm not sure which, one of the Cal Fire Grants, this piece of 145,000. But, you know, they're very successful with their grants. Hopefully, they'll get it. But if they don't, I don't want to miss this opportunity because LiDAR is incredibly useful. I was supposed to let Kevin Ingram know we were talking about this because he still uses the 2016 LiDAR data set regularly. And so what it does is if you don't know what LiDAR is, a plane flies all over the county. And so we can build our fuels, data mapping, watershed mapping. There's a lot that goes into it. And then if you have successive data sets, then that's even better because then you've got data you could refer back to and monitor changes. So I would ask that we put 145,000 as an earmark, but in the likelihood that we won't spend it, but just to make our application stronger. Oh, and there's the other part of this is that the the state could also likely fund it too because they they recognize our need. So if this is like a third backup from Will's, Will Evans' application with Clerk, and then if if the state wants to help co-fund. But if everything fails, we won't lose out on this year's worth of USGS funding.
So basically contingency, but there.
Yes. But I want, we have to, the application is is due in October. And so if we can say with assurance that we that that portion will be co-funded by the county or, you know, a minimum by the county, it's going to make, it's going to put us in a much stronger place for when when those applications are reviewed.
Is this countywide?
Yeah, it's it's all jurisdictions. So county, cities, tribes, all, every inch of the county.
I'm looking at Stephen.
Well, it's doable. I need to know what the the board thinks about it.
Obviously, you know, I've been involved with these conversations throughout there. We've, you know, we've hit hurdles when we're looking at going for this. There was a round that happened last year. Then there was a northern, and I'm going to mess the name up. There was like a northern group of counties that did it. And of course, Lake County was left out because we're not coastal region, we're not. And so there's a gap there. We, you know, we've attempted, we've had conversations many different times of trying to piggyback on, you know, are there the grant opportunity? And this, it just has not come to fruition. So I think that request here is, you know, more than reasonable. Obviously, I support it. I think it's it's something that, you know, everybody can use. Cal Fire, everybody is looking for that information, especially with the tree mortality, the vegetation abatement, everything we're looking to do in the future. Yeah. So I'm, I'm obviously in support of it.
Well, and not only that, the public will be able to access the data sets for their parcels too.
And just as Supervisor Piscott said, you know, the conversations are happening, you know, we just need to have it earmarked. You know, we're working diligently to have it funded. And everybody's working very hard on that. But having that backup is, would be prudent, I think, for us, you know, it should last for about five years. So if we, you know, by the time we're moving forward with this, we have our climate resiliency officer on, we have all these other things that'll be falling into place between now and when it needs to be updated again, hopefully, you know, as we move forward to make sure that we have that funding in place or we're prepared to have it updated at the right time. LiDAR is something I had to educate myself on and, you know, get the information, read through it, understand it. You know, so anyway, that's, I'm in support of it.
And it's, yeah, it's a 2023 project. So if it's something that we didn't take advantage of this year, then we're pushed out even further. So, you know, we were left out of the North Coast Regional Collaborative. We've been left out of every collaborative there is. So we're just pushing as hard as we can to get the work done that we need. But I am feeling really confident that the other partners are going to come in and help with the support of this.
You mean like the cities and whatnot?
Well, no, the state.
Okay.
And also Cal Fire Grant.
Okay. And so is this, this is covering the whole thing or is the cities?
This is 25%. So in our conversation on Monday, both cities were, you know, really interested, really want this. Lakeport did have a LiDAR data data set a while ago. But but we're also asking them to chip in for the RRA right now. And, and, you know, the city of Lakeport, Kevin, as the director of the RRA, said, you know, we need this, I want this. I don't think that I have it in the budget to to support it. So that's why we're looking at these other alternatives.
If it's added to the, what is it, capital projects or capital improvements?
It'd be the special projects.
It's not, it has not been approved because it still would need to come to a further conversation to the board. At that point, I'm okay with that. And I will say something that I hope doesn't trigger any negative feelings, but we need to balance between prohibiting things from happening versus making things happen. There's a lot of focus on those types of activities and I understand it because we're dealing with more extreme weather and more extreme climate. But I want to make sure that we don't spend our resources on prohibiting things from happening and not having enough resources to make things happen. And we need to make sure that we balance that act. And so again, okay with moving forward as is with this because then it requires a further discussion at a later time. So.
I'm just going to add, you know, people can't develop fuel projects without having this data. If you don't have this data, then you have to go out and march up and down every single hill you have to 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 look at it yourself and analyze it yourself. If you have the data, then you can build the fuels projects without having to go into that work. So it is part of the process of mitigation. It's just, it makes it a lot easier and it's, we can do more. We can develop projects faster. Clerk can develop these projects from their office instead of stomping around in the woods all the time.
So it sounds like there's a consensus that will increase 2380 for specialized services for 145,000 that would become out of FBA and this would not be spent before it comes to the board for another item. And that's when you'd have the discussions.
Right.
Anything else in 1781? Next one I'll go with, since Lars is here, I'll go with geothermal resource royalties, budget unit 1918, found on page D 65 because you might have a question. And the requested appropriations are 1,670,042. So this is geothermal royalties where we receive some from the state that has, is supposed to be utilized to mitigate the impacts of geothermal activities. And then we also receive about 50% from the federal government, which does not quite have the same strings attached. The standard allocate appropriations here go to like $400,000 for parks and pays for resource planner and CDD, those kind of activities. This is also where we just recently paid for, I think it is Anderson Springs.
Yeah.
For in-
Their infrastructure, their water infrastructure.
And we're considering that direct mitigation. And this is also where we have something budgeted for Supervisor Piscott through Lars's department for a Cobb area.
That is for the park area?
That's for the trails and parks.
Park slash trails project yet to be determined.
One of the questions I had, because I've always thought this is specific to the two districts that we're talking about. There's been a, someone mentioned something in my district about these, this budget item and unit about department for algae or transferring budget to for algae and aquatic weed.
Pays for about half of aquatic weed spring.
In that district or the whole?
About half of the whole.
Yeah, that was, that was a question. I always assumed it was just for those districts. I didn't know it was for the whole lake. So.
I'm not aware of any district restrictions. But how do you even contemplate mitigating geothermal?
In non-geothermal areas. But the lake is part of that because.
In the watershed.
Yeah, it's in the watershed, you know.
Correct.
We have an agreement, you know, Calpine does draw water off of it, you know, all there, there's that tie there with the lake for sure.
And the reason it was brought up because of the primrose and the Clear Lake Keys. So that's, that's, that's the whole reason why it was brought up. So just, that was my question.
Understood.
Lars, you're in public services director. Simply because I was referenced, I'm coming up here with the, the project that was referenced earlier was, was raised or addressed during budget 711 yesterday. So I think at this point, really, it's, it's just on the revenue side. I discussed it yesterday as it relates to the appropriation side. So again, if there's any questions specifically to that, I can, I can address them now. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Lars.
I was just making sure we went through all those as quick as we could. So there's none of them. Next up would be budget unit 1120, non-departmental revenues, found on page D 11. So the best explanation of this is this accounts for the various general discretionary revenues. They cannot be initially assigned to any specific department of county government. So when you see the general fund revenues stated in the presentation at the very beginning, like property tax, sales tax, TOT, not TOT, those main sources of revenue are stored, brought in to this account. And then that's the funding for general fund departments. So this is 99.99% revenues and there's only $84,300 in appropriations. And that is basically just in case a certain kind of contract comes through that can't be associated to a different budget unit. Do we want to go over any of the revenues and whether we think they're good projections or not? We will update that as a mid-year once we have some information further in this year. I will say that.
All right. I see any questions?
All right. Next up would be central services, budget unit 1124. That is found on page D 24. So there is 0.75 of an employee in there. That is our mail clerk. This is where we also, the Canon copier agreement flows.
Don't pause after Canon. Canon what?
Trying to figure out what that is out there.
Big tractor.
Yeah. And then this is also where the entire, the main Cal Card bill for the whole county is paid and then reimbursed by the departments. Those are the two main functions is mail, mail clerk and mailroom. The Canon copier charges, yeah, I won't stop there again. And the Cal Card clearing account is basically what I'll say. So it's a pretty basic budget, no real change. And the reason why you see the 100,000 increase year over year, which has come up in other budget units, is because that account that's the, for the Cal Card clearing, it's $100,000 that has to be in there to pay the bill, but the departments pay it back. So it'll always show, it's just there for accounting purposes and never will be truly utilized by the end of the year. Yes, I'm going. CDBG program income, budget unit 1794. This one is not quite as straightforward as it usually is. So this is where any payments or that have been made from low CDBG loans, et cetera, for either business or personal. If the county receives less than $35,000, it just gets transferred into general fund or housing down in social services. If it's, oh, if it's over 35,000- If it's, if it's over $35,000, it turns, changes colors into what's called program income, and is then transferred to Budget Unit 1796, that is our CDBG capital asset budget unit. And the reason why I'm segueing there is last year was the first year in quite a while that it's been over 35,000. We're transferring about 53,000 over to Budget Unit 1796, because it is now program income that has to be utilized for those, any CPG project coming up, and probably will have to be utilized for the specific CDBG projects that CAO Parker mentioned earlier. So moving on to 1796, that's where those CDBG projects are, and that's where we will claim what we have spent to the state and reimburse, and we'll pay it to the vendor. That's how, you know, basically a capital asset account works for CDBG. And that's all we do in that account, Cobb Water went through there, et cetera. Really trying to go quick, okay. Trial Courts, Budget Unit 2101, found on D70. So this is where the revenues received are collection of court and post fines and fees, and a large portion of that is then paid back to the state as required by state law, and then the remaining amount left over is, turns into discretionary general fund. And that is the whole function of this budget unit. I saw a frown over there. Okay. Moving on, Grand Jury, Budget Unit 2106, so we are required by law to pay for the Grand Jury. We budget about 67,000 a year, and all of their expenses from their internet all the way down to printing their report are housed in this budget unit, and there really is no change year over year, because there's no payroll or anything like that. So it's kind of a ditto budget, if you would, if you want to look at it that way. Next up, Domestic Violence Programs, Budget Unit 2115, found on page D85. This one is fairly simple and straight, it's a pass-through from, we contract out our domestic violence, crisis intervention shelter to Lake Family Resource Center, sorry, we contract with them for that service. So the revenues that come from marriage licenses and domestic violence fines, we funnel 100% over through the contract to LFRC to take care of those services for the county. Next, if I could talk, next up is Criminal Justice Program Facilities, Budget Unit 2305, found on page D135. This is also a pass-through, and, but this time it is passed through to the jail, Budget It's, I was trying to look at some, sorry. It's also court and post fines, but every penny that comes in, we then transfer over to Budget Unit 2301 Sheriff Jail to help support that. Going fast doesn't always work for contingencies, Budget Unit 7999, found on page D278. We are requesting no changes to the contingencies to keep it at the same amount that we had the last couple of years, just over 4.5 million. All right. The last two, Redevelopment Obligations, Budget Unit 8826, found on page D372. So this one requires a little bit of talking, but not a whole lot. So this is where RDA, where there's property taxes that come in, and RDA is received, receives a portion, and it is distributed to this budget unit to pay off the county loans from back when we had RDA. There were 10 or 11 different loans. There still are, I believe, four or five that have not been paid. So money comes into this budget unit to pay loans, 80% goes to general fund, 20% goes to Budget Unit 8894, and there's your transition to, we're moving on to 8894, because that's all this budget unit does, is repay the loans. And this goes through about 2032, I believe, is when we finally pay everything off. 8894 is redevelopment housing. This, the 20% that comes in from the general fund loans repay, 20% goes here, and we basically are waiting until we have a project that meets the criteria to utilize these funds. Bowtie, done.
All right, I'll open it up for the public. I don't see any hands up, but I will give a couple of seconds. All right, I'll close public input and bring it back to the board.
Just one last question. In reviewing, I know there's a lot of, and I spoke with Ms. Sederlin about it, and she told me to ask the next person in her position. There's, there's a lot of ins and outs of both in the revenues and in the appropriation, and it gets a little confusing in order to be able to look at trends, like you see one budget from last year that was 200,000, and you look at this year, and it's 500,000, and it has some stuff going in and some stuff going out, and it, it just, the numbers look inflated, but at the same time, there's an explanation when you do a deep dive.
Correct.
And so when you just look at the revenue amount, it gets really difficult to look for trends without really dissecting what that amount is made up of, because we gave cannabis dollars to that department this year, but it's not ongoing revenues, it's just one time that was submitted in. I just wanted to at least provide my, what I've seen, and, and hoping that there's, you could provide an explanation, or maybe Ms. Sederlin can also provide an explanation. So in the past years, we've seen our revenues going up, looking at the actuals as well as last year's estimated, went from 50 million, 60 million, last year's estimated are 72 million, and granted, there's a whole lot of other things that we received that were one-time funds, and we know that ARPA was 12 million, and there's others as well. But then I look at this year's final recommended, and it's 48 million, which is, and I'm looking at general funds only, which is even lower than our 1920 actuals. Again, there may be some ins and outs that aren't being seen here. And then I'm looking at the actuals for expenditures, and we had 140, 140, and then our estimated for 21, 22 is 180, and we're looking at potentially, I'm sorry, 46, 47, 51, and then estimated a 53, and then we're looking at this year, 75. And it's just like, it feels like we aimed low on our revenues and aimed high on our appropriations, and wondering, is there, does that help create a larger fund balance carryover, and is there wiggle room? Because that's what I'm seeing, at least in those numbers, but again, I'd have to dissect each and every single one of them to better understand where the transfers are, and it makes it difficult when I'm looking at the whole numbers.
So let me give you a quick breakdown of some of that. The reason why the 48 million would show instead of a higher number is the 9 million being transferred out to a reserve. That automatically cuts out from your revenues, and is being transferred over to reserves. So that, if you add 9 million, if we weren't pushing it over to reserves, your revenues would be 9 million higher. So it's all, not semantics, but how you look at the number. And also during recommended time, there were transfers in from cannabis, which would have increased your revenues for general fund. That was removed when it was found that we had enough FBA, et cetera, so that also would lower your revenues by 4.5 million, even though that just means cannabis isn't coming over. It's a simple explanation, but it is a large number, because we can afford those without doing that. And right now, the large gap in the increase in appropriations is simply because there is FBA, and now you have a $3.5 million project that can move forward. Well, that comes in as an appropriation and not as a revenue, because it was over here as an FBA. So FBA and your revenues, that's what equals your appropriations. So if there's an abnormally high or low FBA, well, your appropriations will fluctuate according to how those look.
And we put the entirety of the 35 into the appropriations, or minus the 3 million for the reserves?
It's all, okay, 9 million wouldn't be in the, let me see, the appropriations-wise, that'd be in Fund 151 and 153, the reserves. It would show as a negative revenue only.
Okay. Well, I'm still learning and trying to better understand it.
Be happy to go over it with you.
It, it gets complicated, but at the same time, I know that I've seen, and I know that there's certain explanations, I've seen our fund balance carryover slowly growing, and I think I need to do a better job of scrutinizing it, especially during mid-year, where we have a little bit more of a better understanding of where we are, and hopefully not be so conservative as we have been in the last maybe two years, and maybe we need to continue, but just.
Some of the conservative.
Such large fund carry balances, they, they don't sit well for me, because that's, and I'm sure they don't for you as well, then that's not what you expect, but it's just something that I, I'm concerned with.
Yeah, Kathy, Auditor Controller, and I are extremely uncomfortable with the amount of FBA that has occurred the last two years, to the point where we, I wouldn't even say quadruple-checked it, is enough. We didn't believe it until we started breaking down certain things, like cares act like you have no control over in that regard, or the teeter, because it is what it ends up being in the 12 and 1/2 for ARPA, just those three things are 3/4 of what your new FBA was this year. So it's very abnormal, if you, once you pull those things that are far outside of anybody's control of possibly spending in the year, because it didn't even come into the general fund until August or September, it was pushed back to June, so there was no possibility. There was only about 3 to 4 million dollars of FBA generated from standard vacancies and unspent appropriations, which is still higher than normal, but not extraordinary. The extraordinary was outside of our control, and this budget unit, uh, budget unit, this year, we're utilizing those funds where it helps us for the future, since we, how much we need this year for certain projects like solar, but then for the future, that's why the reserves are in there. So a lot of it was built now, but we're taking care of our future and our current is, was the goal.
Yeah, I, I mean, this is an extraordinary time, this is never going to happen again, we're probably never going to see this, and, and it is time to, it is prudent to be conservative and plan for the future, and, and take care of what needs to be managed now, make sure that we're set up for who knows what, because we're living in some really wild times. And, you know, this is, like I was telling Stephen, like, put a pin in this day, because we're not ever going to see this again, and this is how we secure our future.
I just have to make that final comment.
All right.
I know I've talked to both you.
Well, no, there are no more, so I don't know what to say.
I've spoken to you, Mr. Carter, and Ms. Sederlin, and it's still difficult for me to be able to capture all of it, so.
That is very hard, no matter how long you've been on a board, to be honest. Be happy to meet with any of you guys on the board, like usually for mid-year, and see if we can foster some more understanding.
So with that, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Move to approve. Budget units, don't stop me. 1011, 1012, 1014, 1072, 1120, 1124, 1341, 1778, 1781, 1794, 1796, I'm, I'll get there, I know what you want, I missed it. 1892, 1918, 2101, 2106, 2111, 2115, 2305, 7999, 8826, 8894, 9917, 9918, with amendments to 1778 as suggested.
1781.
1781, and amendments to 1781 as suggested, I was on a roll, I'm sorry.
You're going.
That's my motion.
Second.
Do I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, and.
Okay.
There are some more, actually.
There is some more, yeah, there's, go ahead, Stephen.
Unfortunately, I would like you guys to reopen Budget Unit 4011. There was a position allocation change that I was just made aware of, so actually, it's really just when you accept the, the new position allocation with these changes, and I'll replace the attachment.
Where's 4011?
So what?
Public Health?
Yes, sorry. Where did it go? So what it was, was remove one health program support specialist 12, but add one staff services analyst 12, so it's just changing what the title's called.
And since we approved all of those together, I think I have to reopen them all and then re.
Well, there's no budgetary change, it's just a position allocation, though.
Oh, that's part of the resolution, right?
Yeah, it says.
Two different resolutions, though.
But we haven't approved a resolution?
Agreed.
Okay. So we don't have to reopen anything?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
The third and fourth.
It's just fix it as, when you're saying the resolution.
Okay.
Anita.
No. They didn't do resolutions.
Well, no, they didn't.
Yeah, but they didn't do resolutions.
They didn't do them yet.
No, we have not done them yet.
You're right, yeah.
So should we, you guys want us to get started on that, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I was looking to them.
Someone had their hand up?
All right.
Okay, I'll, I'll give one a shot here and get started, I guess.
Right.
I move, offer the resolution for, for final recommended budget 2022, 23?
Amended with all the changes made during these hearings, and I will provide, as amended in these hearings, and I will make all these changes and get you a new one to sign.
Okay.
Oh, show me that, that's scary.
All right, resolution has been offered. Please conduct the roll call.
Yes.
Supervisor.
Aye.
Thank you. Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
I hope, I got that one, that covers everything, I want to make sure I didn't miss nothing, so. Go to number two, adopt the resolution establishing new classification, the effective date thereof, and amending the position allocation chart for fiscal year 22, 23 to conform to the adopted budget. Would this be where, with the revisions?
As amended.
Or as amended?
Correct.
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the position allocation table for FY 22, 23. Do I need to do that, or is that covered under the resolution?
Isn't that what he just did?
That's what, I'm done, I don't need to do that one?
Oh, okay. Those were just written under, it looks like there's a task list to keep.
Oh, those are attachments, okay, all right.
That's an attachment list.
Okay.
Okay, so then that doesn't matter, okay, bam, 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 gone. And so the resolutions took care of everything. All right.
There's just one final comment I'd like to make, obviously, three long days, I think some great discussion happening, but I want to thank admin, all of our directors, everyone that worked so diligently to keep this county moving forward. We know the hard work, they're not easy conversations as we're moving forward, but I just want to thank all of our employees, you know, working through this process. I know it's mandatory, you do it every year, but it just needs to be said that, thank you, thank you very much for all that hard work and dedication.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Board, for your patience and understanding to this process.
Vice versa, thank you for your patience with us, too. All right, with that, it looks like we can adjourn. All right, meeting's adjourned.